Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Boulder City Council Meeting of September 3, 2019. Lynette, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Brockett.
Present.
Carlisle.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Morzelle.
Present.
Nagel.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Present.
Young.
Present.
We have a quorum here.
Excellent. Just a couple items before we get to the fun stuff. We need to amend our agenda. One is to add Item 1C, a declaration honoring Dr. Charles Cambridge. And then the second is to add on Item 8B, with F time allows, a discussion regarding scheduling of large homes, large lots. And the subsequent reordering... Oh, sorry. We also reordered the order of the public hearings tonight. So it will go Knollwood Area Annexation, Forest Glen Eco Pass and Property Addition, Open Space Master Plan, and then we'll get to Opportunity Zones and Use Tables. So with that, can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion about the agenda? All those in favor? It is unanimous. And with that, we are going to start with three wonderful declarations. And first up is Councilwoman Morzelle. Morzelle.
Please.
We will speak first, and then you can read the declaration.
Yeah? Please do.
Boulder's Pollinator Appreciation Month is filled with all kinds of fun and informative events, including pollinator-themed storytimes and workshops at the library, a talk by Dr. Adrian Carper about native bees at the CU Museum of Natural History. And the crowning and ending of it is the Bee Boulder Family Festival. Everyone's welcome, and all events are free, and details are available at bee.beeboulder.org. And a few of our residents would like to just quickly share why pollinator conservation's important to them.
My name is Izzy, and I'm really looking forward to celebrating pollinators this month because pollinators help us have yummy local and homegrown food. Without pollinators, we couldn't have any food, so we need to protect them. Butterflies, sweatbeads, honeybees, solitary bees, moths, ants, and even mosquitoes are all important. What can we do to help these friendly pollinators? I'm only 10, and I can come up with some ideas. We can make some of the parks with just plain grass have flower beds. We could stop using pesticides, or we could educate people what pollinators do. These are only a few ideas, and I can think of many more. Can you?
Yes. Thank you.
My name is Ojin, and I'm currently a senior at Fairview High School. So I have a great appreciation for the natural world, as I've lived most of my life in Colorado, and I've had the great privilege of spending a lot of time in the outdoors. I have also pursued various research projects about the changing environment, and I've come to realize how critical a healthy environment is. So a lot of recent developments in our world are deeply disturbing for me, and I've been trying my best to explore different avenues to help in all the ways I can. For instance, I'm currently working on a pollinator project at Fairview in an attempt to address the rapid decline in biodiversity at a local scale. I've been researching native species and ways to cultivate plants to better support our pollinators. Regarding the broader community, I think that the 2030 Climate Mobilization Action Plan is a big point of hope for me. I also think that one of the most impactful drivers of change in general is education. So I sincerely hope that schools and the city of Boulder can work together to educate students as a step towards implementing better systems and strategies for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrea Montoya, and I'd like to first address you, if I may, in Spanish and with its brief, and then the brief translation as well. Mi nombre es Andrea Montoya y gracias. Culturamente soy chicana. Como amor soy una madre, abuela y amiga. Como profesión soy una científica. Como comunidad soy una ambientalista devoto comprometidos con el desarrollo de habitats de pollinadores. No es una pasatiempo. Es un esfuerzo serio para ayudar a una tierra enferma. Para mis hijas y para sus hijos debemos permanecer unidos ahora más de nunca. By culture, I am chicana. By love, I am a mother, grandmother, and friend. By profession, a scientist and medical provider. And by community, I stand as a devoted environmentalist committed to building pollinator habitats. It's not just a pastime. It is a serious effort to help an ailing earth. For my children and for your children, we must stand together now more than ever. Gracias.
And before we have Councilmember Morzelle read the declaration, I just want to quickly fill you in on some of the really exciting work that's happening at the city right now. So we've begun work on a comprehensive pollinator strategy across city departments and working with the community. And Andrea, who just spoke, is leading the first pollinator corridor neighborhood in the city, which is we're planning to become part of a wider district that will connect the civic area through the Gosgrove neighborhood, across the Nropa and CU campuses to the Creek system. And the Library Foundation is working with the Bee Chicas and People and Pollinators Action Network to create hubs at all of the main library and all of the branches, pollinator hubs, and connect those with corridors. So although the biodiversity and climate crisis are upsetting and serious, we feel hopeful that working with our local, regional, and national partners, that we're going to make a difference and really turn things around.
Yay! So I don't know how I can follow up all those great speeches, but it is with the great honor that I am declaring with my council the Pollinator Appreciation Month, September Boulder's 550 native bee species, butterflies, hummingbirds, beetles, flies, dragonflies, damselflies, and other pollinators, provide an essential service. Together, they maintain the health and beauty of our grasslands, forests, meadows, and other natural areas. Native pollinators and honeybees are indispensable partners in the production of our food supply. Pollinators are essential for the diverse and thriving ecosystems that support all life. Around the world, pollinators, as well as the majority of insects, are declining precipitously and at an exceedingly fast rate. This is placing our food security, natural environment, and human well-being in peril. Urgent action is required by all communities. We must respond to the biodiversity crisis, and this means all of us. We must develop innovative and equitable solutions to transform our food system. We must provide high-quality wildlife habitat in both urban and natural lands, and we must all act now. As our community enjoys the bountiful autumn harvest, and as we see the regeneration of our natural lands from the tireless work of pollinators, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado declares September 2019 Pollinator Appreciation Month, and commits to taking action by collaborating with Boulder's residents, businesses, and institutions to join together to protect pollinators and all biodiversity for current and future generations. So I just want to end by saying I brought a little pollinator plant from my yard, and Adam Swetlik gave me pollen that is produced in Boulder and Boulder County. So the fact is, we can do this. We can do it without pesticides, herbicides. We can do it, and we have to do it. And it's not just the city of Boulder that does it, but it's every single one of us. Each one of our actions makes a huge difference to this incredible insect population that is rapidly declining, and if we don't do anything, it will spell out our doom. So I really thank the speakers who spoke tonight, and I really am proud of our future. And I look forward to these young people taking the helm of leadership and making sure we continue in this action. So thank you, and thank you for coming and being here and speaking. Maybe we should turn Hogan Pancost into a pollinator garden.
Yeah.
Thank you, all you bees. All right, next up, Cindy Carlisle will do our next declaration.
So I am Cindy Carlisle, here to declare September 3 to 8, 2019, LGBTQ Pride Week. It is my great pride to read this declaration on behalf of my council members. Katie, do you want to come up here?
You can come stand up here.
For more than 20 years, the city of Boulder has supported Out Boulder County in its work to create a more just and fair community for its lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community members. Diversity is a community asset that enhances and enriches the lives of all community members. During the month of September, residents of Boulder joined together to celebrate and honor the history, diversity, and resilience of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender communities through Out Boulder County's Pride Fest and other events. Boulder has led the way in the nation on many civil rights issues, fostering acceptance and preventing discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Diversity is a community asset that enhances and enriches Boulder's LGBTQ community that includes people of many races, ethnicities, religions, professions, and ages. The city of Boulder reaffirms its commitment to the promotion and protection of the human rights of LGBTQ residents of its community. The City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado declares that September 3 through 8, 2019, is Boulder's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Week, and urges all residents to respect and honor our diverse community, and celebrate, and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Thank you for this proclamation, which means so much to us in our community. We have a variety of events happening this week. There's one happening right now at the Dairy with our great partners at the Dairy showing a movie. Tomorrow night, there are two events. We have a new LGBTQ chamber in town. They're doing a happy hour, and then we're doing a family-building seminar. So you can learn about adoption, fostering, cryobank, and working with a doctor. On Thursday night, we're having a happy hour for old dykes like me, 50-plus, at Under the Sun. Friday night, we're having a really fun dance party called Riot, because this is the 50th anniversary of Stonewall, and with our great partners at the Boulderato. And then on Sunday, Pride Fest happens, along with the Rainbow Run. So show up at any of those. Everything's at outboulder.org, and you can find it. But I do want to take a moment to say, separate from this proclamation, the work that the city of Boulder... Set it down, maybe.
Just a little further away.
The work that the city of Boulder continues to do for LGBTQ people is very important. It's more important than the proclamation. The importance of our city manager reaching out to me in 2013 and saying, "We need to do more. Can you help us?" Which has resulted in police liaisons at the city of Boulder Police Department, which with the increase of hate crimes and hate incidents happening in our community is imperative to the safety of our community. To the work you've done at the city of Boulder's library, to have bathrooms that everyone can use. To...yeah, give that up for that. That is like, that's groundbreaking. To painting the crosswalks. That was...that paint has lasted forever. I appreciate that so much. And I can't tell you how many emails I have received or text messages about how people feel included by a simple act. The money, the change that you have made from your general fund to make diversity and inclusion part of your funding means that we can now hire childcare, we can provide bus passes, we can have interpreters and translators. That work is opening us up into communities that we've never been able to serve before because of lack of resources. And the passage last week of the new rules around vaping, which is a crisis in our youth population, in particular LGBTQ youth, use vaping more than their straight and cisgender peers, is imperative to their health. And so I thank you for the proclamation, and thank you for the daily work. And the last piece I want to say, I almost forgot, but I saw Jane's face, is adding a liaison, an LGBT liaison, in the city manager's office has made all the difference. So thank you for all the work you do, and thank you for this proclamation.
Marty, we can't thank you enough for your leadership. Really appreciate it. And now we have a third declaration by Councilmember Weaver.
Well, hello there. We are going to do a declaration today in honor of Dr. Charles Cambridge and Yoshiko Elaine Takahashi. And joining me up here on the stage from the University of Colorado is David Aragon, who is the Assistant Vice Chancellor for Diversity, Learning, and Student Success. So I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we will have a few words from David. I do want to say it is a great honor to be able to honor these folks and what they've done at the University of Colorado. And this is a bit of history I did not know until I read this. So here we go. Dr. Charles Cambridge and Yoshiko Elaine Takahashi Day, September 14, 2019. Dr. Charles Cambridge is a member of the Navajo tribe, who has a BA, MA, and PhD in anthropology from the University of Colorado Boulder, and who was the only American Indian enrolled at CU Boulder 50 years ago in 1969. Yoshiko Elaine Takahashi is a sansei, third-generation Japanese-American and descendant of family members who were interned in California's Manzanar Concentration Camp, earned a Bachelor of Music degree from the University of Colorado Boulder. Dr. Cambridge made a significant contribution to creating a more diverse and inclusive community when in 1969 he led a partnership together with Ms. Takahashi that successfully launched the first American Indian and Asian-American educational opportunity programs at the CU Boulder campus. That success was rooted in a vision to assist high-risk students and/or students with financial need, particularly those in the American Indian and Asian-American communities. Dr. Cambridge and Ms. Takahashi and their supporters' collaborative research approach was successful in obtaining the initial university funding for the two distinct programs. Dr. Cambridge was the first American Indian Educational Opportunity Director, and Elaine Takahashi was the first Asian-American Educational Opportunity Director appointed by the president of the university in 1970. Under Dr. Cambridge's leadership, 112 American Indian students were recruited and enrolled at CU Boulder by fall 1971. And under Ms. Takahashi's leadership, the first course on Asian-American history was offered at CU Boulder in 1970. They went on to help establish similar programs on the CU Denver campus by 1972. High-risk individuals and/or students with financial need, when given an opportunity with these programs, have moved on to become successful artists, attorneys, government employees, engineers, civic leaders, physicians, and doctoral graduates who have given back to their communities and maintained lifelong friendships and community partnerships. The members of these programs are reuniting for a 50-year anniversary on Saturday, September 14, to honor Dr. Charles Cambridge, an exceptional and inspirational person, and to thank Ms. Elaine Takahashi for her leadership, both of whom created opportunities and forged relationships between people who likely would not have met under normal circumstances. The city of Boulder continually works to increase support and recognize opportunities for diverse populations, including welcoming diverse student populations at the university. In acknowledgement of these contributions to a more diverse and inclusive community, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado declares September 14, 2019, Dr. Charles Cambridge and Yoshiko Elaine Takahashi Day.
I'd like to thank the council for considering this declaration, and just say a couple of words. My role at the university spans many years as a staff member and administrator in support of diversity and inclusion and student success. It's important to acknowledge our histories, both at the university but also in the Boulder community. And Dr. Charles Cambridge and Elaine Takahashi played a key role, very similar to what many students today are experiencing as they work to seek out their own success and accomplish their dreams through a college education. Fifty years ago in 1969, there was a scarcity of individuals from ethnically and racially diverse backgrounds. Today, over one-quarter of the student population at CU Boulder is made up of U.S. students from these underrepresented backgrounds. The reunion on September 14 will include over 60 alumni, most of whom are part of the Boulder-Denver communities, but many are coming in from New York and from Los Angeles and places in between. I first got the opportunity to meet with this group three years ago in 2016. I'm going to just slide this little photo down the way. And I found it remarkable, the lifelong friendships that were formed out of those early experiences and student leadership that took place. I am completely touched, and it would be a special honor to have this declaration at their celebration on September 14. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here. Okay. Now that we're done celebrating, we've got some work to do. So with that, we are going to go to open comment. I think most of you know...you're free to speak to us about any topic except for the four items that are the subject of our open hearings, our public hearings tonight. And those topics are the Knollwood Area Annexation, the Forest Glen Eco Pass and Property Addition, the Open Space Master Plan, and items related to Opportunity Zones and Use Tables. If you want to speak to those, you can sign up separately for the public hearings that are coming a little later tonight. And with that, if folks who are signed up could start with their name and address and be ready to be queued up, ready to go, that would be great. So Cheryl Hall, you're first up, and if Stephen Heidel could be ready to go. Is one of you Cheryl Hall? Oh, okay.
Hi.
Hello.
I speak on behalf of the 709 other residents in the RE and RR.
Sorry, can you start by introducing yourself?
I'm Cheryl Hall. I live in Carroll and Heights.
Thanks.
And I speak on behalf of the 709 other residents in the RE and RR zone districts that signed this petition opposing the proposed zoning changes in our area. There are surely more people who in scant weeks leading up to your October 1 deadline to vote remain completely in the dark regarding these changes. The Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan states that the city will work with neighborhoods to protect and enhance neighborhood character. Our petition shows that there are 709 residents who do not think that increasing density in the RE and RR zones will protect or enhance neighborhoods' character. In fact, we feel this plan has not been researched thoroughly enough to foresee anything about the impact it will have. I was at the August 22 Planning Committee meeting when the creators of the proposal admitted that they had not conducted any scientific studies or surveys determining the impact. The Planning Board chose not to endorse increasing density in RE and RR zones. In fact, they didn't even get a second on the motion to vote on this issue. They were confused by the plan as it seeks to provide affordable housing for families with multiple sons of parents, of shared children, to live inside multiple structures upon the same zoned plot. I ask you, where is the research showing that this will enhance the character of our neighborhoods or make them more affordable? You do not have the studies or surveys to answer that question. Something... Something is indeed already being done to create more affordable housing. According to a recent Daily Camera article, there are currently 1,026 living units under construction in Boulder with another 679 in the design and zoning approval stages, equalling 1,700 units right now. This is merely a fraction of the number within the developments we see being erected. Many, if not all, of these units are slated to be affordable. And not only does this mean that increasing the density in our area may yet be unnecessary, it is also being rushed. The city's zoning regulations have been a lot longer than the 2017 revisions to the Boulder Comprehensive Plan, and we counted on solid zoning documents when planning one of the biggest purchases of our lives, the buying of our homes. If this proposal is approved, we toss out regulations that we can rely on. Why? Apparently because when it comes to zoning, this is something that you can gamble on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Stephen, and then Joshua.
Stephen Heidel, Goscoa Neighborhood, part of the B Highway. So I'd like just to give a thanks out for last week whoever put the plungers up on 30th Street. They really exposed how bad our protected, unprotected bike lanes are. Okay. Of course, these don't work again.
Here, just hand it to her. She'll forward it.
Yeah.
There you go.
If it's anybody else ridden on these, on 30th Street, Moorhead, Folsom, these aren't really bike lanes or bike gutters. And the picture from somebody from last week, just showing how bad the Close Pass passes are. You do it in Close Pass and Inquire Boulder, they go, oh, somebody felt unsafe. But it's actually illegal and the design makes it illegal. So our current plan that we came up with last year was, the top priority was to maintain vehicular travel time. That's from the city. With addition some other things. Safety of cyclists, pedestrians, that's lower. Paid half a million dollars to consultants. It's a 20-30-year project. It'll cost 50 million to 100 million to do 30th in Colorado. Here's a video of me. This is the first time I've ridden on Colorado since after the flood. I had to use that road for a while when everything was flooded. We could do a road diet alternative. It costs one two-hundredth the cost. It'd be 95% of our safe street goals. It costs $200,000 versus 40 million. We could do it in two weeks instead of two decades. We just need some political will. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Are you referencing buying lots more plungers? What is the proposal?
A road diet is when you take.
I know what it is, but what are you proposing?
That we actually do a road diet on there.
And get rid of the lanes? Okay.
Yeah. Instead of waiting two decades. I have a grandkid coming up next year and she'll be, or he will be in college by the time we get 30th safe.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Stephen, thank you and thank you for continuing to beat the drum. Can you send us the, your presentation?
Yeah, I can send that.
I really like the road plunger.
Yes, thank you.
Captain Plunger. Great, thank you. Joshua, and then Patrick Murphy.
My name is Joshua Harrison. I live in Community Gardens and I am here representing the Museum of Boulder. I'm a new board member at the museum and I'm here simply to keep everyone updated on what's going on and hopefully get some people to show up. So the first point, we have a new executive director. We're very excited to welcome her. Her name's Lori Preston. She has an extensive record of leadership at schools and nonprofits in Texas and Colorado, and she has strong ties to the Boulder community. Everyone at the museum is very excited to be working with her. The museum itself has had a very busy summer with lots of locals and visitors and tourists. There have been several summer camps and our free days have been a smashing success. Hundreds of visitors, more than 300 usually, with every one of our free days. Our newest exhibit, Wild Buffalo, in Boulder opens this Friday and features photography, artwork, poems, and more about our national mammal. We're presenting this exhibit in partnership with the Buffalo Field Campaign and local artist Thea Martin. Also, next Friday, the 13th, come play vintage video games at the museum. We're partnering with the Media Archaeology Lab to do a retro game night. See if you can complete the Oregon Trail before dying of dysentery. And lastly, we'll be celebrating the 75th anniversary of the Boulder Historical Society in October with an exhibit focused on artifacts from our collection. Archive 75 opens on October 11th. Thank you all very much for your support and for your time.
Thank you, Joshua. Patrick?
My name is Patrick Murphy. I live in Boulder. The muni vote, full truth. Claims that Boulder has supported the muni with votes exceeding 70% are false. Here's what really happened. The first vote in 2010 with 68% support was to replace the franchise fee with a tax so we wouldn't be shooting ourselves in the foot. It is not a vote directly for the muni. The 2011 2B vote with only 50.4% support was an increase to the carbon tax to directly support the muni exploration and barely passed. The muni could have ended in 2011. Only 105 votes out of over 26,000 would have ended it. The 2011 2C vote with 51.9% support also barely passed and provided Boulder with the authority to create a muni with restrictions. The 2013 vote with 66% support piled on muni restrictions. Boulder is not highly supportive of the muni but is highly supportive of restrictions on the muni. The 2015 vote with 71% support was another vote to not shoot ourselves in the foot. Not really a vote for the muni. It just continued the carbon tax that is not directly used for carbon reduction. The 2017 vote with 51.7% support also barely passed but was also tarnished. Only 524 votes out of over 30,000 could have ended the muni. So the full truth is that Boulder is not highly supportive of the muni, is highly supportive of restrictions on the muni, and has not yet figured out that we are highly supportive of a carbon tax that is not directly used for carbon reduction. There is no real direct vote for the muni that has ever, ever achieved 52%.
Thank you. Patrick, Margaret, and after Margaret we have Rosie.
I'm Margaret LaCompte and I live at 290 Ponni. I want to thank you for your recent support of putting a 20-year tax supporting our open space program on the November ballot. I and Save South Boulder, the organization I represent, oppose any efforts to reduce the proposed open space tax either by shortening its duration or decreasing the amount of money it would raise. I also endorse using one year of those funds for a conservation easement to protect Long's Iris Farm from any development other than what it already is, an urban farm, that's hosting educational and community activities. The revised open space master plan before you clearly spells out the dire condition of our open space lands, which is the result of over 20 years of being underfunded. It also clearly describes what the funds are needed for and how they'd be used. Given that more than 6.5 million people use the open space every year and that those numbers are exponentially increasing, the need for passage of the 20-year tax increase is critical. It would be foolish to support anything other than a 20-year tax measure. The money requested would not even wipe out the current 30-year loss of revenue, but it would go a long way towards a sustainable effort to keep our open space, the jewel in Boulder's crown, from deteriorating. A 10-year measure would only mean going back to the voters in a decade to fulfill needs we already know are critical. Without its open space program, Boulder would cease to be a model for sustainable development, protection of endangered species, a healthful environment for all, agricultural lands that support small farmers and organic products, carbon sequestration, and a way of life that might help us survive in the face of climate change. Please support the 20-year tax supporting our open space lands and programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie, and then Ginger Tanner.
Hello, I'm Rosie Vaida. I'm a tenant and property manager of nine years at 459 Arapo Avenue in Boulder. For the record, I was born at 721 Pearl Street 44 years ago. I recognize I've been, provided a very unique arrangement slash perspective. I attribute this deeply valued situation to my landlady's commitment to preservation, history, the arts, and academia, my household's professions. With this relative perspective, I am witness to the challenging, long, of the challenging, challenges of longtime, some longtime owners of Boulder, that what they are facing. Yes, I am aware of the benefits as well. Buying in early awarded great gain if the goal was, was to profit. My concerns are with those landlords who are committed and value, and whose commitment and values reside elsewhere from the instant, from, for instance, providing housing opportunities for broader, for a broader range of income earners with the attention, not just the wealthy, with the attention grabbing $1 million price of a median home in Boulder and incredible financial strains being placed on the middle-class homeowners. I want to point out, when contesting the increasing unmanageable increase in property taxes, you're provided little to no examples of affordable comparison properties. This is required to justify your stance to the Board of Equalization. Another incredible challenge these owners faced was to comply with the city's wide smart rig ordinance. The deadline was December 2018. In my understanding, in order to comply, some owners incurred costs in hundreds, in hundreds of thousands. For a select few already strapped individuals, the sensible choice was to sell. I saw numerous property.
Ah, go ahead and finish your sentence, Rosie.
I, I saw numerous properties like this being scraped to accommodate a lot line of multimillion-dollar single-family homes. These slips ultimately contributed to the exorbitant hike in the surrounding property value assessments. To culminate my question, what benefits are being afforded to existing situations like my landladies? Why is the emphasis and plans to meet Boulder's 15% goal of affordable housing centered around development rather than existing structures?
Thank you. Rosie, Rosie, thank you for coming. And could you send that to us?
I sure will.
That would be really appreciated.
I'd appreciate that, too.
And we're just council@boldercolorado.gov.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Hey, I need to remind the audience about clapping after people speak or booing or anything like that, just so that everyone feels safe to express themselves. You can do this if you agree. Hello, Ginger.
Good evening again, council. Ginger Tanner, Boulder Vaporhouse. Black market products in the vaping industry have already proven dangerous. The FDA has made a public statement that there is a high potential that black market THC products are the possible blame for hundreds of individuals that have been sickened. The FDA currently regulates the production and manufacture of all e-liquids and devices I sell in my business. I like to quote Bob Yates. Of course, we recognize the limits of our jurisdiction and we know that some kids will probably still get their hands on vaping products through online vendors in the black market and by going to a neighboring town. But by acting now, Boulder can be a leader in encouraging other cities and the entire state to reduce teen vaping. If it works, Boulder might be able to claim a title that we can be proud of, the most vape-free city in the US. Councilmembers, are you looking to be proud of banning vapor products, closing small businesses, and losing local revenue, knowing that there's going to be a black market and that kids are still going to get their hands on vapor products? Why are you not creating a licensing regulatory agency prior to making these regulations? I quote Richard Mariano, Sir retired Assistant Director with the ATF. "Without proper resources, Boulder could face a new black market. You will have to have code inspectors employed. You will have to use ordinance inspectors. You will have to pay them wages and benefits," Mariano says. And you'll be taxing your current resources and having to add more to investigate what's going on in your black market. This isn't a situation of, well, maybe, or what if, he says. It will, and that's the scariest part. Look, if council wants to make regulations with vaping, make regulations that you can enforce with an agency that will enforce. If this tax passes, there will be very little money that creates a regulatory agency. Zero revenue equals zero taxes. Boulder PD currently does not enforce shops deliberately selling to minors. How are they going to enforce these new regulations you're aiming to pass? Boulder PD's lack of enforcement in the last three years proves these regulations will only cause huge consequences within our city limits. Increase to 21-plus, leave flavors to be sold in 21-plus licensed businesses and tax products accordingly.
Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you for your time again.
Yeah. Appreciate you coming. Diana, and then Amanda.
Good evening. My name is Diana. I'm not a Boulder resident, but I spend a lot of time here. I'm going to speak in support of the motion to adopt by emergency measure, Ordinance 8346. The funds generated would allow the 25-acre Long's Gardens property to become protected in perpetuity under a conservation easement. This would act as an agreement between the landowner and Boulder County, which promises that the land will always be preserved. Typically, conservation easements run with the land, which means that the agreement sticks even if the landowner may change. By agreeing to these terms, a private landowner is voluntarily giving up some of their rights, like the ability to subdivide or develop the land, which could lead to great financial gain, were they to keep those rights. In addition to the flower-growing work of the Long's family, 11 acres of the property are leased to Growing Gardens Nonprofit, which uses the land for community garden plots, a CSA program, beehives, children's education, and food donations. Additionally, the Mountain Flower Goat Dairy is located on this land and is the only local dairy farm within Boulder city limits. They offer milkshares as well as community experiences to foster land stewardship, agricultural education, and local food initiatives. The Long's Gardens easement would be very unique in that it is land centrally located that the community can interact with and reap the benefits of for generations to come. I urge community members to research this great community asset, not only to better understand the importance of the proposed motion, but also to see how you could personally utilize the property now and into the future. Additionally, the City of Boulder has a great explanation of what conservation easement is on their website, along with examples of the provisions that are likely to be found in this type of agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Darren, Amanda. It started so early in this, in the meeting. I've already forgotten where I am.
I'm Amanda Bickel. I live at 1339 Hawthorne Avenue. A pleasure to see you this evening. I am here about the open space tax extension. First of all, I just, on behalf of the collaborative effort to protect the Long Family Farm, I want to thank you so much for your action on August 20th. We were so thrilled to see you do that 20-year open space extension with a one-year, first year for the Long Family Farm. We just think that that was a wonderful move and really appreciate it. And I would just, again, on behalf of the collaborative, ask that you ensure that you actually send a measure to the ballot tonight, right? We really want to see you get something to the ballot that deals with both open space and the Long Family Farm. Secondly, speaking for myself as opposed to the collaborative, please keep the open space tax at 20 years. I just really think that that is the right thing to do. First of all, procedurally, you made a decision on August 20th based on a lot of public testimony and it simply doesn't seem to me that you should make a major change like this at this stage in the game. We would really like to see you proceed, I would really like to see you proceed, with the decision you made on August 20th. Our, kind of, value of our communities is so enriched by open space. It's really imperative that you protect it. You have thus far supported extending the .5 tax. You have thus far supported extending the .5 tax, based on evidence that open space needs have not declined, right? There was some expectation that there might be a decline. It hasn't happened. Indeed, visitation is double what it was in 1996, a number that I find just phenomenal. It's unlikely that's going to decline anytime soon. We're looking at a statewide population increase of about 30% in the next 20 years. There will be a lot in this area where people can access open space. Open space has been cut before. It's scheduled to be cut again in 2035. Let's not cut it in 2020. And let's not do it again in 10 years, this sort of vote. Please extend for 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren, now we're ready.
Hello. Darren O'Connor, 25-year resident at Boulder. I'm here tonight to talk about one of the successes attributed to retired Chief of Police Greg Testa is the creation of the Homeless Outreach Team. Currently, that team is inactive, and I'm here to encourage re-establishing it immediately. Presently, people experiencing homelessness are reporting troubling contacts with officers who are known within the community to be problematic. One of those officers, Officer Lord, is the subject of a lawsuit for violating the rights of people to film in public space. In March, Lord wrote an email to City Manager Browdegum in which he described other cities dealing with homeless populations as veritable cesspools of rot and decay. This is hardly the appropriate belief of an officer dealing with one of our most vulnerable populations, an attitude I've personally observed, filmed, and shared with you here at council on video. Another officer who is interacting with homeless folks is Officer Lolatai, who is also the subject of litigation for assaulting a small 40-year-old woman for observing an arrest. As much as our hot team members Ramos and Paddock are respected within our homeless community, offers Lord, Lolatai, and others who are now problematically interacting with people experiencing homelessness are distrusted. Officers devoted to building relationships and trust with our homeless community are immediately needed to re-establish the Homeless Outreach Team. I'm running out of time, but I also want to speak to residency requirements, durational requirements for people getting shelter services in this upcoming winter. It's been brought to my attention that this is being considered. Rather than go through the two Supreme Court cases that basically say the 14th Amendment does not provide for and does not allow for degrees of citizenship based on length of residence, I encourage you to follow the Constitution, to follow Supreme Court rulings, and not extend those requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Elizabeth. And then Peter Mayer.
Hi, Elizabeth Black, 4340 North 13th Street. In my next installment of our pretend scenario where each of you council members dug an irrigation ditch with a priority date, the Carlisle Ditch has the very best senior water rights with the longest season. That means Carlisle can grow any water-hungry crop she wants, organic vegetables, fruit, hops for local breweries, or sugarbeets. Endless possibilities. But because her water rights are so reliable and valuable, cities from Boulder to Frederick have bought up her neighbor's water, and only a few farmers remain on her ditch to maintain it. Carlisle now is ditch rider plus president of her ditch, maintaining the entire ditch with her own backhoe, while also running her farm, serving on the Water District Board, and running the fair's mutton bustin' rodeo. There are just fewer hands now to do all the same old work. The Morzell Ditch has water from April to August. So Morzell decided long ago to grow organic veggies. But Morzell's late-season veggies need more water in September and October. So Morzell has leased CBT water to finish off her highest-value crops. She figures she can still outbid cities and hemp growers for scarce CBT water, at least for a little while longer. Morzell wants to plant a fall cover crop to improve her soil. But she needs to buy extra CBT water for that, plus install a pond, pump, and big sprinkler system to establish the cover crop. Her farm manager just lost his housing, so she must raise his pay to keep him in Boulder. The thousands of dollars for her soil improvement and extra water will just have to wait. Next time, I'll tell you about the Jones, Young, and Weaver Ditch in our next exciting installment of As the Headgate Turns. Thank you.
Sorry, just for the humor.
We don't get to hear that much humor. All right. Peter.
Good evening. Peter Mayer, 1339 Hawthorne Avenue, Boulder. I am co-chair of PLAN Boulder, and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the PLAN Boulder Board. First of all, thank you so much for your support for the Longs Gardens Conservation Easement and for making that part of any open space tax extension that you approved tonight. This is something the community is eager to support, and we're truly delighted that the council has had the foresight to work to preserve Longs Gardens. We also thank you for your work on the open space master plan that you're considering this evening. Tonight, PLAN is requesting that council stick with the 20-year extension for the open space ballot initiative. 10 years is simply not long enough, given the obvious needs for maintenance across the system. Open space is the singular thing that makes Boulder as great as it is, and is up to us, the stewards of this land, to make sure it does not deteriorate. Please don't pull a last-minute switcheroo on us. When this room was full of supporters last month, there was unanimous vote for a 20-year open space extension. Please don't make us come back and do this again in 10 years. Your own polling numbers tell you how important open space is to the citizens of Boulder and our willingness to support dedicated open space. When the support is so obvious and clear and unlikely to change now or into the future, it was, I believe, 90%. It feels disrespectful of the will of the people to offer up a 10-year proposal for voters who are eager for a longer-term solution. Yes, there are other important funding priorities, such as transportation and the library and the firehouse. And Boulderites will support these when solid and sensible proposals are brought forward. City Council did unanimously the right thing last month to put the 20-year extension. And please, don't waste our time. Let's not focus on half-measures. Let's get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Ina? And then Leslie.
Ina Robbins, 395 Quail Circle. I'm a member of a community group called Friends of Wonderland Lake, and I'm wanting to have, for the record, some issues that we are still opposing and some things that we're in favor of with regard to the development at Wonderland Lake. We're opposing any waiting at the lake, including a hardened surface waiting beach, any other water play areas at or near the lake. This is especially critical now that Wonderland Lake has already been determined to have some presence of the toxic version of cyanobacteria or blue-green algae. It is predicted by climate scientists that these blooms will only increase with global warming. Any man-made structures on the peninsula, plant trees instead, please. Any new trails or loops into the habitat between Broadway and the dam? Any man-made structures that invite human intrusion into the natural habitat? Any youth education that invites disturbing or disrupting wildlife? We are in favor of maintenance and improvement of existing trails and fences, restoration of lost habitat on and around the peninsula, proactive planting of replacement trees to address the loss of the ash trees around the lake, better signage and education about habitat protection, especially replacing the wildlife sanctuary signage. Please reprioritize enforcement of no off-trail access to sensitive habitats and wildlife corridors. Protect the habitat between Broadway and the dam. Increase ranger patrolling to enforce existing regulations for dog walkers, bikers, and visitors. Leave-no-trace, no-impact approach to youth and education at the lake is a major priority. And please, support the approval of the commemorative name change to Wonderland Lake Wildlife Sanctuary. We have gathered 600 signatures in support of that name change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leslie? And then Lynn Siegel.
Good evening, Council. My name is Leslie Guster. I live in Boulder. Thank you, as always. You have so many things on your plate. But there's also this monstrous global issue, obviously. So, you know, the Red X is where our son was, so we spent a lot of Labor Day weekend and his team's just checking Dorian Track. Dorian Track, looks like Florida won't get a direct hit. But the Bahamas, the latest estimate is almost half of the homes either destroyed or damaged. What will the hurricanes look like 10 years from now and 20 years from now and 30 years from now? So, thank you so much for caring and obviously closer to home. You know, so much for Colorado being that white spot on the map where we don't have 90 and 100 degree day degrees. We, however I said that, days. Obviously, lots of 90-degree days lately and 100 yesterday, so in Denver. So, and again, what's Colorado going to look like 10, 20, 30 years from now? So, back to the basics. Half of our greenhouse gas emissions come from our electricity. Our electricity being supplied by XL is still about 73% fossil fuels, 40% coal, 33% natural gas. And their goal, yes, they're headed in the right direction. At least, they say they're headed in the right direction. We remember when they told us they're also going to make us the smart grid city. But let's assume that they are in the neighborhood of 53% renewable energy. Our request for indicative pricing says the City of Boulder could go much higher than that, much quicker than that, towards 90% renewable energy, save about $40 million a year. I want to talk a little bit about those red bars. I don't think, I guess I had that thing. But when we look at XL's rate increase, it's something I've spent now about 100 hours on. I expect to spend a couple hundred more. About a 5.7% increase. That means about over $6.8 million more from Boulder if it's granted. They won't get that. They're going to get a lot. That's what those spreadsheets look like. I'll send this PowerPoint to you, and I hope Councilman Yates will figure out what's going on here because that's what's behind those red bars. So, let's just not be opposed to immunity. Let's understand what the alternative is and take a hard look at it, not assume how it's going to be perfect electricity for free because it clearly won't be.
We have a question for you.
So, Leslie, you sent out a presentation from Barclays that XL is giving out there. And in it, we see that in 2027, the estimate is kind of the converse of what you said, is that there will be 46% fossil fuel generation in the electricity system even at 2027. And so, it's interesting to me that we have heard a summary that whatever Boulder does, XL might be able to do the same thing by 2027. But it doesn't look like they're expecting to get anywhere near 90% or 95% or 100% renewables by then.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Weaver. And if I could take you all, on top of everything else you do, and take you down to the commission and show you these spreadsheets, I will summarize them when I finally get it all sorted out. They're pouring hundreds of millions of dollars into their old coal and gas plants, which is why they can only go so fast. Though the way I summarize it is their pace and their price are wrong. We have them headed in the right direction. Thank goodness, we've worked our you-know-what's off. But it's still, when it's a crisis, speed matters. And you don't say, "The house is burning down with my children," and it, "No, I guess I'll finish watching the evening news and, you know, have a little before bedtime snack and things like that." It's a crisis. We need to move quickly. XL is moving in the right direction, but very slowly and very much more expensively than it need to be. So, yes, still planning to be well above 40% fossil fuels in 2027. And even if they change that, it's going to cost us a lot of money because they've poured all this money into their fossil fuel assets.
So, if I could make a request, next time you come and talk to us, if you could talk about your $500 million equivalent debt that we will have with XL, that would be great.
I will do that. And, you know, at two minutes a shot, it takes a long time to eat this elephant. But, not that I want to eat elephants, but.
Thank you, Leslie. Yeah. Quit eating elephants. Lynn? Lynn Casey Cook.
Lynn from Boulder. Lynn Siegel. I'm calling up the vaping and the cigarettes. No vaping, no cigarettes. Don't worry, be happy about the black market. For one person that gets off of cigarettes by vaping, there's 80 kids that go on to vaping. And so, it's not okay. I want to also call up the affordable housing, that we shouldn't have this affordable housing thing on the ballot. I think if you want me to vote for something like that, you're going to have to have the developers pay impact fees at the same voting measure. Then I'll vote for it. And the same goes for open space and Iris Gardens. If the developers aren't going to pay for the impact fees, then I'm not going to do it. I can't afford it anymore. I'm taxed out. And I've always voted for open space. I also want to talk about, we've got four city departments that are now interim directors, planning, transportation, open space, and public works. And I recommend that we omit filling those positions and get a climate stabilization, integration, planning authority that everything, all city departments run through. We've got a climate emergency, and we need to rise to the occasion.
Thank you, Lynn. Casey? And then Kirk Cunningham.
Good, excuse me. Good evening. I'm Casey Cook, and I represent Preserve Arizona. The petition that was spread to you guys earlier tonight contained 710 signatures. I'd like to point out that 122 of those were City of Boulder residents who do not live in the RE and RR zones. They don't live in those zones, but they are concerned enough to sign the petition. Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan says a lot of things if you read it. But it does say they will work with neighbors to protect and enhance neighborhood character. Tonight, council made an impassioned plea to save the pollinators. I agree with that. I've been after that for a long time. This is just another case of all these larger lots, these pollinators depend on these yards and flowers. We're going to go and plow more ground under to increase density in these lots, in these neighborhoods, where the residents clearly don't want it? The August 22nd Planning Board meeting, they chose not to endorse increasing density in the RE and RR zones. Boulder's own planning board. I like to think these guys know a lot more than me about this. They did not endorse it. There are thousands of living units currently under construction. Many of those are to be affordable. That's going on right now. This need is being filled as we speak. Maybe not at the rate some want, but it's happening. Please preserve our zoning.
Thank you, Casey. Kirk? And then Ray Bridge.
Kirk Cunningham, 9777th Street. I'm representing the Indian Peaks Group of Sierra Club here tonight. And I brought with me one of the migratory critters that comes through Boulder once in a while when it senses that something is up with respect to open space funding. And I think there's other con specifics here in your audience that might come up. Of course, the Sierra Club has been in favor of open space for, I don't know, since the Pleistocene, I think. But we've always been in favor of aggressive purchasing, aggressive management, you know, maintaining the quality of the land, trails, and things of that nature. We have an opportunity in your 3C on your consent agenda to put that language onto the ballot so that Woodsy here can help to pass the thing once it's on the ballot. Obvious reasons, we have a lot of use, too much use in some respects, and too many people trying to do the same thing on the same property. And the only way that that can really be accommodated is to make sure that we have the staff and the money and the wherewithal to keep the property from degrading even more than it has. So, please, consider just putting that language on 3C on the ballot. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Kirk. Ray? And then Molly Davis.
Good evening. I'm Raymond Bridge, 435 South 38th Street in Boulder, speaking on behalf of Boulder County Audubon Society. We want to thank council for voting to put a 20-year, .15% open space tax on the ballot, and we strongly urge you to pass it on Third Re- and we strongly urge you to pass it on third reading without changes. Open space funding was reduced this year and is scheduled to be reduced again at the beginning of 2020 as a result of the expiration of the general fund transfer, which was intended to cover additional maintenance costs when the open space and mountain parks departments were merged. In addition, in 2013, voters approved a somewhat misleading proposal repurposed 0.15% of sales taxes from open space to other city purposes. The whole story is complicated, and we don't propose to reargue it here. It is clear that the priority strategies laid out in the draft master plan can only be worked on if the decline of 0.15% is replaced by the measure you have on your consent agenda, and if the voters approve it. Note that the first year's revenues would not go to open space but to the purchase of the Long's Garden Conservation Eastman. We agree with that provision, but it still will not be replacing the amount being diverted for transportation in 2020. We urge you to pass the item on the consent agenda, and we hope that Boulder voters will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Molly.
Molly Davis, 5635 Corey Court, speaking for preservingthevision.org, of which I'm the founder of. I did send you my comments tonight. Most of you, I think I did leave one out, and I apologize, I'll follow up with that. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the stuff I sent to you. I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible. You have a long night. But I am going to start with my favorite quote from E.O. Wilson, who was a wonderful biologist, sociobiologist. "What is good for the individual affects the family. What the family does affects the individual and the tribe. What the tribe does affects the individual and the family." I've read numerous books by him, and I firmly believe in his philosophy. Open space now is a large organism. We're symbiotically attached to the open space system in Boulder. It's a dependency. When, in 2013, I saw the effects of the flood, Mayor Jones and I replaced a lot of rock down at Evan Vine Park, which is much heavier than mulch, and we worked together on that. But what I saw was people coming in all the time and saying, "Please, keep the open space system open and back up." It was like a dependency, a need. I was on the board, and I'm just going to ask you one thing at the end here. Please vote for the 20-year extension. We need it for perpetuity. It was a promise that we made to our citizens in '67. We have to keep that promise.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, that ends open comment. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Does staff have any responses?
None for me, thanks.
Normie.
Counsel? Aaron?
Yes, Mr. O'Connor said that the homeless outreach team isn't currently functional in the police department. Do you know what the current status of that is?
One of the members of the team is gravely ill.
I'm very sorry to hear that.
The homeless outreach team.
I can talk with interim chief Weinheimer to find out more about whether or not we can have a temporary hot team, but I need to find out more about that situation.
Okay, well, I'm very sorry to hear about the officer.
Thank you.
Anything else from counsel?
I just wanted to follow up on what Aaron said and hope that the city manager will follow up on this and see. I would hope that our department isn't so depleted that we couldn't fill in during this time.
It's not really a matter of depletion. Those officers are very special in what they do, and not any officer can do it. And they both had, it's a staffing issue, and I know the police department is really interested and very supportive of the homeless outreach team, and I don't think it's been discontinued, as Jane said, she can check. But it is a challenging assignment that those officers do very well.
And I understand that, and one of the other things might be that it would be well to have another person trained, so there could be backup. I mean, I agree that it's a shame that this person is ill, but nevertheless, this is an important thing, particularly at this time of year. So, I'm just asking for that.
Great. Anything else? I'll note that some of the issues that were raised, like 30th Street, we're having an upcoming travel master plan.
Transportation.
Jeez. It's not good when I start the evening this way. Transportation Master Plan is coming up in early October, I believe.
It's actually September 17th.
Okay.
Right? And, you know, they're well aware of the concerns that have been expressed, and it really is a funding issue, but you'll be able to ask them a lot more questions in two weeks.
Great. Okay. Well, then, say?
Oh, go ahead. So, I have a question. Rosie, I didn't write down her last name, who spoke regarding asking the question about why is our development centered, or are affordable housing centered around development as opposed to preservation? So, I had a question about what is the percentage of affordable housing that is, comes from preservation versus from development?
So, obviously, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I definitely know we can find out the answer. Great majority of the funds that we provide to Boulder Housing Partners is to renovate existing units that are, maybe they're not deteriorated, but just we bring them up to a better standard. So, we definitely have a percentage, and I think it's a pretty high percentage of rehabs that are focused on affordable housing. But I will ask the housing department to find out that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is an interesting question, how we can support people that are providing market rate affordability. Yeah, thank you for raising that question.
And following up on that, are there, do we have any funds set aside when people, property managers or property owners are somewhat financially strapped and wanting to go to this, and I guess they've already met the Green Points requirements? But I think Ms. Vada was concerned about that, because these people have no option but to just pass it on to their renters. And so, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of backup plan, so that some of the people who are in this kind of edge position aren't pushed out?
So, I am not aware of any funds, but you will recall that one of the things that was mentioned was Smart Regs. And when Smart Regs first started almost a decade ago, those landlords that kind of signed up early
Right.
Were given discounts and an ability to reach it. And then, as time went on, and we were about to come up to the end of it, those dollars had run out.
Right.
So, but I don't know if there's any dollars existing in the housing fund that helps landlords that are right on the edge. Again, I could find out more.
No, and, you know, we planned it that way.
We did.
It was carrots and sticks.
Yes.
And so, it was, there were a lot of incentives to move
Right.
Quickly. But I think sometimes people get so subsumed with their just everyday lives and their finances and things like that, that maybe there are some people who pushed it out to 2018 and found themselves in that unfortunate position. And people who work and live here are affected. And so, it'd be good if we could just at least look at it and see what's there.
Okay. Thanks.
So, I think I read somewhere that EFA does do that kind of thing, short-term funding. So, that kind of thing is available, and at least, it has been represented that it is available. So, at least in the short term, that's something, the Emergency Family Assistance Program, EFA.
Right, and that's actually for the renters, not the landlords.
Right. It's possible, however, if they knew of the situation, that they may be able to just fill, step into the gap for the moment. So, something to look at.
Something to think about. Okay. With that, I think we're going to turn to our next item.
Your consent agenda tonight contains items A through E.
And so, I'll note that we're basically finalizing our ballot for September, I'm sorry, for November here, including the order, which we don't actually, a lot of choice over the order. Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to item 3C, which is the extension of the open space tax. And I sent out a hotline, which is why a lot of people here are asking for the 20-year extension. I put out a proposal for a 10-year extension. And I'll say, on Saturday, I was speaking with some women who live over in the affordable housing by North Boulder Rec Center. And they were telling me that one of their biggest concerns is how they can't afford to shop here, because taxes are high. So, that's just an example, and something that I concern myself with. And so, tonight, I will say this with them in mind, that I am concerned about the folks. Everybody thinks that we're a rich community, but everybody isn't. And I think we have to be aware of that, and I think we have to be sensitive to that. So, I'll just read a little bit about what I posted, because I presume that not everybody gets the hotline. So, I asked for us to consider 20-year extension instead of 0.15 extension, and I, with the first year still going to Long's Gardens. And I said that, you know, that council has said that it would be irresponsible, and the public has said that, too, not to do that extension, and I agree with that. But I also think that it would be equally as irresponsible not to consider all of the other unfunded ongoing needs, of which there are many, and I selected just a few. Transportation core maintenance at 3.6 million. Transit service expansion support, 5.72 million. And we hear a lot about, in our development plans, about how we need these TDM plans and how we need more transit, and how we're going to make all of these higher-density projects work with less parking, is it's going to work because of transit. And if we're not funding, it's unfunded, so how are we going to do that? Vision Zero, that's 1.3 million that's unfunded. The library master plan, the North Boulder Library, at 3.6. The library master plan at 6.53. And then, the fire EMS service, the annual operating for that, is 3.3 million. That totals 24 million of ongoing unfunded needs. And all I'm asking for is for us to consider the budget as a whole and take a deep dive into it, and look at our budget holistically, so that we're not looking at things in silos. So, tonight, we're looking at the open space master plan in a silo. In a couple of weeks, we'll look at the transportation master plan in a silo, and then we'll see all these unfunded needs then, too. So, all I'm saying is that take some time to do a deep dive and come up with some strategies of how we're going to fund all of this stuff. I'm not saying that we shouldn't fund open space. I'm saying, and I don't disagree, that it's a valuable and important part of this community, but do we want it to be at the expense in hollowing out all the other needs of the city? I don't think we do. So, that's why I'm asking that we consider a 10-year extension and be practical, as Suzanne said a couple of weeks ago, that she was giving up being practical. So, that's what I'm asking, and that's why I brought it up. I may be a lone voice up here, but I had to speak my mind about that.
Thank you, Mary. Aaron?
Yes, so unfortunately, I missed the meeting a couple of weeks ago where we discussed, where the council discussed this the first time, so I had sent a hotline out before. I'm very excited that we're putting the open space tax on the ballot, and particularly that we're including Long's Gardens in the first year. And so, whatever form that tax takes from the councils, we will, the council will support. But, Mary, I appreciate you raising those points, because we do have to balance the different budgetary priorities in the city. And I guess, without talking about it for a long time, just a couple of the areas to highlight that you mentioned. One would be things that have to do with health and human safety. For example, the bringing emergency services into the fire department, which can significantly improve emergency response time. Or the Vision Zero, which gives safety, prioritizes safety for our most vulnerable transportation users. And then, also things that play to equity and inclusion, like the libraries that are free for all and transit service. So, I'm glad we're doing the open space tax, but given the delicate balance that we have to do between all of our different funding priorities, it seems to me like 10 years is a good kind of step to take right now, and would give a future council a chance to check in on how the overall city budget is functioning and potentially continue with the open space tax or direct potentially funding to other places, or not.
Lisa?
So, I appreciate Mary and Aaron, you bringing this up, but on August 20th, the council did unanimously vote for a 20-year extension. And from my perspective, there is a process that we do need to follow. And the first reading was basically from a study session. Tom put together eight different options that we looked at regarding different configurations of the tax. And we went forward unanimously on August 20th to move forward with a 20%, 0.15 open space tax extension. It's not an increase, it's an extension. I also recognize that the tax has been basically taken to other, in the past couple of years, we've taken the point in 2018, we put it to other uses. This year, it's supposed to go to transportation, yet at the same time, as we will be speaking in a few minutes, our open space master plan shows how woefully underfunded open space is. The fact that today, we're actually, it's in 2017, so I think it's probably increased quite a bit. We have over 6.5 million visitors per year, which is far more than either Yellowstone National Park, which has over 2 million acres. We have only 48,000 acres. Rocky Mountain National Park, which is somewhat smaller, but our open space exceeds visitation of both of those two significant taxes. We also know that open space needs over $100 million over the next 20 years to address the top-tier number-one needs in the open space master plan. We need to reduce trail maintenance backlog. We need to increase soil health and resilience, and this isn't just open space. This is carbon sequestration and climate change. We need to preserve and restore important habitat for native plants and our animals, native animals. We need to address the conflicts that currently exist between agriculture and prairie dogs. We need to meet the needs presented by the substantially increasing visitation levels and the management challenges that entails. So, I don't know why we wouldn't move forward and keep our word to the roomful, there must have been hundreds of people here on August 20th asking us to move forward. In my 19-plus years on the city council, I've never seen In my 19-plus years on the city council, I've never seen a switch when the council has approved something unanimously and moved forward, and then the next reading now change it. Right now, we have, if I understand it, Tom, correct, or Lynette, we need to get this ballot measure in the language that we adopt tonight by September 6th, or is it September 5th?
We need to do it tonight.
So that's in two days. And I think the other needs that you point out, Mary, I think can be looked at in our budget, that we will be looking at in the next couple of months, or in the next month. I think we can look at re-appropriating some funds, but I think it would be kind of a betrayal to the people who came out, to the people who have asked, and then we said, sure, we would go forward with this. So, and there are a few changes on this ballot measure that we will need to approve, and we need to do that by an emergency vote. I would ask that we keep faith with the public, and move forward with the 20-year tax extension, and, and also consider some of the issues that you raise in our upcoming budget. But, anyway, I'll just leave it at that, and so I don't know if...
Thanks, we got some other people to speak.
You'd like a motion.
Oh, let's hear from whoever wants to speak first. Cindy? And Sam?
I just wanted to speak really quickly and say, I agree with Mary that there needs to be a deep dive taken into the budget, and maybe some sort of working group can be set up in the coming year to actually take a really good look at this budget that we've got, that, that always seems to move in front of us pretty quickly. However, I'm fully in support of this open space tax with the additional language, and I just wanted to say, and the points that Lisa made, that I have, in the years and the many, many, many meetings and hours that I have spent in this room, I have never seen as much joy and goodwill and good feeling as happened on that evening, August 20th. It was really awesome. So, I would hope that we would keep the faith and move this forward, and continue with that sort of goodwill towards the open space and mountain parks, and all of the people in the community who actually really care about it, want to keep it what it is in all of its many ramifications of beauty.
Sam?
So, yes, Mary, thank you for bringing this up. I think that the points that you raise are legit, and we need to think about them. I'm going to support the 20-year open space extension, because it's not a tax increase, it's just maintaining our commitment to what we have. And I think I have to, I feel compelled to do so also because of the survey results. I mean, this is so wildly popular among the majority of people in Boulder, that it seems to me like it is a core community value, that people have said clearly that they want to support going forward. Like with our affordable housing program, we don't support that very much with sales tax. We support that mostly with exactions from developments, whether they're commercial or whether they're for affordable housing. And vision, something very similar with transportation going forward. We will need to find some other way that is not a sales tax, to be able to increase the funding for transportation, including transit. So not only bike lanes, but also buses. And, you know, as, as you would be probably the first to point out, RTD isn't giving us what we want, even when we pay extra for it. So, we will have to figure that out. I will be there in those discussions to try and figure it out. But this is just preserving a level of funding which is already there, and not rolling it back any further. So for me, I'm going to support a longer extension of this.
And just make a process, could we do like a straw poll on this, so that we can leave the formal voting separate? I'll submit that.
I was just going to make a motion, but you want to do a straw poll, that works too.
I would support a straw poll.
A straw poll?
Because I'm, I'm not voting against a motion, so.
Oh, okay. The folks that haven't spoken want to... Go ahead, Mary, bye.
I'm just, my colleagues raised great points, Mary, you as well, but I won't be supporting the 20-year.
Yeah, first of all, I do want to thank Mary very much for raising the issue, and the issue's been raised before, and, and this is a timing problem we have, I mean, as much as anything. It'd be nice if we had all of our needs in front of us, and we could all sit around a table and figure out what's our first, and second, and third, and fourth priorities, and it'd be great if we could do everything. But we probably can't do everything, so it would be nice if, if things came to us at the same time, rather than in a certain order. And so that's the challenge we face right now. So I really appreciate the issue being raised, I think it's a very legitimate issue, and maybe the next council can figure it out better. I think it's important, with all that said, when we take these three measures that we're going to take to the community, put it in front of them on the ballot, I think it's actually kind of important that council be unanimous, because I think we need to signal to the community that although we had lots of discussions, and we may have had differences of opinion in arriving where we arrived, I think when we go to the ballot, it's basically council standing together saying, voters, this is the best that we could do, do you support this? And so, while I do appreciate what Mary has raised, and, and it would be, in a perfect world, we would have our priorities all in front of us at the same time, I think it's really important that we unanimously support something, it looks like there's votes here to, to do the 20-year tax, and so I would urge everybody to get behind that. There's a lot of things wrong with Tabor, but one thing that, that I like about Tabor is the fact that you all get to decide at any tax measure that we present. And so, we can present you a 20-year tax at 0.15, but, but you get to decide whether that's what you want or not. So, while I appreciate the effort to, to try to do something different, I'm going ultimately to support the majority here, and, in support of 20-year tax.
I think we got our straw poll, so.
I don't get to say anything. Maybe I'll get to make the motion.
So, as, after I put this out there, I did write back to some people and say, and asked them, as they said that they supported the 20-year extension, and I said, even at the expense of core services. And I was amazed that people said yes. And they also said, oh, we'll figure it out. So, let's figure it out.
I think, although some of us won't be around, I think what you're hearing loud and clear is, yep, we need to figure it out. And I do appreciate you raising these issues, and they're not new issues. We know these needs exist, and we know that we've been wrestling with, say, transportation, and how to fund that at a much greater level, and that is not a Boulder-specific issue, that is a Colorado-specific issue, and a Front Range-specific issue. So, that's something that we know we need to be creative about, how to do that at both the local and regional level. And the same with affordable housing, although we are doing a lot on that, and I think we will continue to need to be creative and use the full suite of tools. So, thank you for raising this, thank you for this discussion. I would be pleased to make a motion to pass the consent agenda. There's a few changes that need to be made. On the open space, the open space thing is the peach.
Peach.
Yep. And we are, we had meant to last time, we talked about adding the words "maintenance, restoration," along with "acquisition and preservation," and we, it didn't make it in, so we'd like to add it in now. So that's the sheet.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So in our packet, Tom, there was also another addition about just clarifying that it would begin in 20, December 31st, 20, well, it would begin January 1st, 2020, until December 31st, 2039. Is that in?
Yep, so, so the, the motion includes all the amendments that are in the packet, these are additional amendments.
Okay, no, that's great, and I wanted to make sure restoration and maintenance are in there as well.
In there, okay. We also had a couple corrections to the vaping issue, and one was to clarify in the ballot title that, to add the word tobacco, so it's a tax on tobacco vaping products, just to be super clear with people. And then we had an extra "the" in there that needs to be struck in the, I guess, section 6 dash 4, 0.5 dash 2B. Okay, so that's the motion.
I will second it.
Great.
We have to make a decision on D.
We are making a decision on all those things.
Yeah, I think we have.
It's in, it's in there, it's okay.
Okay, so D, the order of the ballot, there's really no...
Discretion.
Yeah, no discretion there. And, I guess, I just want to speak to that. There's several items that we're setting on the ballot. One of them has to do with vaping, and there was a lot of debate on that, and I think we arrived in a good place. I, we don't do this lightly, and I, I know we have some small businesses here that are going to be caught in this transition to a safer future for our youth, and we, I want to acknowledge that. But I think that's a, it's a very important public health decision that we're moving forward, and I have every reason to think that others will join with us, and eventually the state. So hopefully that will address the larger black market issues. I want to thank our compatriots for working out the middle-income down payment assistance strategy, which is also going on the ballot. And then finally, we've talked about open space, but, and Long's Gardens, but I agree, that was a wonderful evening the other night, when we heard from the community loud and clear. And I'm, I'm glad, we know that that need isn't going to get smaller, and it's an important asset to our community in so many ways. So, for all those reasons, I think it's a, it's a good ballot we are setting for the fall.
Can I make one comment?
Yep.
We heard from a member of the public tonight about why we aren't doing more to make existing structures affordable. And if you want to take a look at what we're referring to the ballot tonight, one of the programs will be all about middle-income ownership affordability and permanent affordability over time. So one of the items coming forward for approval is a no increase in taxes, Middle Income Down Payment Assistance Program. And so that is aimed exactly at existing homes in Boulder, and making them permanently affordable.
Anybody else want to speak?
No, but I thank everybody and their consideration, and I thank Mary for bringing this up, and I won't be here, but I will be here in spirit, and hope we can move forward looking at core services, library, transportation.
Well, just to be clear, Lisa, you're just finishing your term on council, you're not going too far.
Yeah.
That sounded a little final.
Yeah, really. Okay, we have a motion, any more discussion?
Okay, roll call vote, we start with Councilmember Brockett.
Aye.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Morzell.
Yes.
Nagel.
Aye.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yates.
Aye.
Young.
Yes, but I won't forget that we're going to take a deep dive into the budget.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you all for that.
Your first public hearing is items related to the annexation and initial zoning of the Knollwood area.
Wait a minute, we're looting our quorum. That's all right.
So Chris Messjock will kick this one off.
Good evening, council. Chris Messjock, interim planning director, assistant city manager, and I'm here with Kathleen King, senior planner, who's been the project manager for this project. Tonight, we're honored to present the Knollwood annexation. It's been a long journey on this one, and I'd like to acknowledge the several Knollwood Metro District board members that are here, some of them have moved, as well as their legal counsel, who has been working with us on this project. With that, I'll turn it over to Kathleen.
Hello, Kathleen King, from planning. Thanks for having us.
Grab that microphone and tilt it out, there you go.
Hello? And so I'm going to present the ordinance and the associated resolutions tonight, and answer any questions you might have. Just a reminder that this area is located on the western edge of the city, south of Mapleton. The annexation area includes the Knollwood Metropolitan District, as well as 150 Green Rock Drive. The city received a petition for annexation by election in June of last year, and the goal of the annexation is to connect Knollwood properties to city water. And so as a reminder, the annexation by election process was a bit different from some of the more typical annexations that the city has done recently. So, so far, we've completed all of the required steps leading up to annexation, including confirming that the district's petition was complete, and in compliance with state statutes, as well as the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, setting the terms and conditions of the annexation, identifying the initial zoning for the area, which is residential estate. We then petitioned the district court to hold an election. That election took place on July 30th, and the vote passed with 87.5% of voters in favor of annexation. And then tonight would mark the, the final step in the annexation process, so council is considering, on second reading, the annexation ordinance and these two resolutions. So these are the three items that I'll speak to outlined here. The first item is the ordinance. So this ordinance will annex the district properties and 150 Green Rock Drive to the city of Boulder. The area will be zoned as residential estate, and if the ordinance is accepted tonight, the annexation will be effective in 30 days. I know at first reading, there were some questions about whether Knollwood residents would be eligible for municipal elections in November, and we've checked on that, and the answer is yes. The next item for consideration is Resolution 1261. So this will designate council as the approving authority for the district. The current authority is the Board of County Commissioners, and items that, that council would approve would be any changes to the statement of purposes or service plan for the district. So that comes up in the next resolution. So this third item is a resolution to approve the district's second amended statement of purposes. This resolution limits the district's powers following annexation to providing water services until the construction project is complete and Knollwood residents are connected to city water, providing the financing for this project, also providing the financing for fees associated with the annexation, such as the water plant investment fees, financing and contracting for snow removal in Knollwood, and complying with and enforcing the terms of the intergovernmental agreement between the district and the city. So, that's really it, and, and we can answer any questions you might have.
Can you, I was just going to say, maybe just clarify who's paying for the improvements. I think we know that, but it's just useful.
Sure. The Knollwood Metropolitan District is paying for public improvements.
To come into the system.
That's right.
Cindy?
So, I have a question at the end of all the paper, was a letter to us from Tila Duane? And how is, how is that, where is that? She says that she's registering an objection to being included in the annexation, because she's already gone through some process, apparently.
Sure, so we received a letter, I think, last week from Tila, and she resides adjacent to the district, but owns an outlot that is within the Knollwood Metropolitan District. That outlot has no structures on it, there are no impervious surfaces, and so she would not be subject to the stormwater plant investment fees that the city would charge. As a member of the district, she will be subject to the mill levy, and that's not, that doesn't change from what she pays today.
So in other words, there won't be any change to her, her disposition, as it were, in terms of cost to her for this small piece, for this outlot? This is page 218 of our packet.
The city will not impose charges.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so just to double clarify, so then the, the mill levy for the district is continuing until it's dissolved, right? And all, all residents or members will pay that, but the additional charge for the stormwater or, and there, there would be no other additional charges that, that she's the property owner would be subject to?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, it's correct. The property is not a developable property, and the majority of it is in the Sunshine Creek floodplain anyway, so there's no... Creek floodplain anyway, so there's no city charges related to any other utility.
Great, and, because it's from, I think from her letter, it sounded like she was expecting to be charged for the stormwater fees, is my memory, but I, hopefully you've cleared that up with her.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So she's been notified, in other words?
Yes, the city attorney's office spoke with her last week.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's turn to public hearing. We have one person signed up, Barry.
Barry, 2265 Knollwood Drive. Been treasurer of the Knollwood District for 11 years already. And the residents of Knollwood are looking forward to our upcoming partnership with the city in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement and the amended statement of purpose that all parties have signed. There are a lot of conditions and terms in there, and I think you have that. We especially look forward to being able to use Boulder water. That was probably the primary reason driving this whole effort. I also want to thank all the city employees who helped us during the 18-month annexation process, including the city clerk's office during our 12-hour election. If you read, read the 142-page council memo, you will notice my signature was on most of the documents. So there's, I personally am looking forward to the annexation. However, this was the easy part, these first 18 months, and bringing all the residents along to doing this process. The hard part now will be the construction process and making sure it all works and that all parties live up to the agreements that we've signed. And thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad this has finally reached resolution.
Can I add one little thing, just to clarify? Yes, the mill levy, we've already established a mill levy for the payment and have been collecting already for this fiscal year. And it will go, we're looking to a 20-year process for the payment of the, all the improvements that are going to be made, because it's going to come to approximately $3 million that our residents are going to end up having to pay for the redo of the water system, as well as the complete redo of the streets. So there are, it's not just a little public improvements, it's, they're significant improvements.
Wow, okay, thank you. With that, we're going to close the public hearing. Bob?
I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
I'll just read it a little bit.
I have, I have a clue about what it is.
Okay. I move that we adopt ordinance number 8348 to annex approximately 28.67 acres of land, generally including the Knollwood subdivisions and properties at 150 Green Rock Drive and 285 Knollwood Drive, with an initial zoning designation of REE. I also move that we adopt resolution number 1261 and 1262.
Second.
Any one, any discussion?
Welcome to Boulder.
Okay. And thank you. I think it's a good public health and public safety measure as well. Mary. And did we find out if they'll be able to vote?
Yes.
Oh, we did? Okay.
We're counting on it.
Mary, what we decided was that these, Knollwood will be able to vote, ponderosa vote, because ponderosa is.
Yeah, I read that.
Okay.
Just because of the timing issue.
Okay, roll call vote, beginning with council member Carlisle.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Morzell.
Yes.
Nagel.
She's gone.
Weaver.
Aye.
Young.
Yes.
Skip me.
I skip Yates.
Aye.
Brockett.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Aye, welcome to Boulder.
Welcome to Boulder. Okay, we have another quick one.
Okay, your second public hearing is the Forest Glen Eco Pass General Improvement District, motion to adopt resolution 62. I don't know who's starting this one.
Oh, I'll.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight, council. My name is Allison Crump, I'm the Neighborhood Eco Pass Coordinator for the City of Boulder with Transportation Go Boulder.
Your, mic's not.
Mic is.
This evening, I'll be presenting a proposal to annex households into the Forest Glen General Improvement District. This GID was solely created to, for the purpose of funding neighborhood ecopasses for the residents of the neighborhood. We will be recommending a move of approval to include the properties. Now, I'll provide first a quick background on the Neighborhood Eco Pass. This is an RTD program, and it's one of three ecopass programs that RTD offers, the Business Pass, the University Eco Pass, and the Neighborhood Eco Pass. All RTD residents are eligible to form a neighborhood. While most of them do exist within the city of Boulder, there are a few Neighborhood Eco Pass programs in Boulder County and the city of Denver. Within the city of Boulder, we have a City of Boulder program for Neighborhood Eco passes. And what makes that really unique is the fact that we are a liaison between RTD and coordinators. We have 45 neighborhoods that are Neighborhood Eco Pass neighborhoods within the city, and we have volunteer coordinators for each of those. So we are liaison communicating between RTD and those coordinators. A huge impact of the Neighborhood Eco Pass program within the city is the modal shift it creates towards transit. It's been shown that residents who have ecopasses are six times more likely to take transit than if they did not have an eco pass. So this is a huge tool we have for creating modal shift and supporting our TMP and climate change goals. Sorry, climate commitment goals. Another huge part of the City of Boulder program is that we do provide a subsidy to neighborhoods that are involved in the program. The City of Boulder provides a 50% subsidy for neighborhoods who enter into the program their first year to support starting their program. In subsequent years, we provide a 33% to 38% subsidy, depending on affordable housing in the neighborhood. For the 2019 year, this totaled $300,000 for all City of Boulder neighborhoods. Like I mentioned before, we have 45 neighborhoods, and this supports 7,000 households within the city of Boulder. So this has a very wide range, especially for residents that are not supplied an eco pass by their employer or through the university. Just to give you a quick background, in 2017, which is the latest utilization data RTD has provided, Boulder and Nico pass holders took 270,000 local trips, 65,000 regional trips, and 20,000 airport trips. RTD does not have the ability to provide data for the total number of residents with active Nico passes, but we do have that information for the eligible households. Now, moving on to the Forest Glen General Improvement District neighborhood. This was created in 2001, and the neighbors voted for this to become a general improvement district for the sole purpose of supporting the Neighborhood Eco Pass for each of its residents through property taxes. This was the only neighborhood, this was the first neighborhood, and it remains the only neighborhood that supports the Neighborhood Eco Pass solely for that purpose. Other general improvement districts like Boulder Junction have incorporated this, but that is structured differently. Again, this is the sole purpose of this GID. Since 2001, 13 additional homes have been built that are adjacent to the general improvement district, you'll see in the top right corner there. These, these residents have requested to join the general improvement district. For the first three years, the developer was required to provide Neighborhood Eco Pass funding as part of their transportation demand management site review. Once that funding was expired, then the residents did request to join the general improvement district, which is what brings us here today. And this is a benefit to the additional households, as each resident there will receive a Neighborhood Eco Pass, each resident of the household. So every person in each household who supplied a petition would receive a Neighborhood Eco Pass. And the next steps for, for this annexation is that the residents would receive their Neighborhood Eco Pass, and staff would notify the necessary parties in order for the property taxes to be assessed, and we would support the neighbors in receiving their Neighborhood Eco Pass, and also with other programmatic transit support. So with that, staff requests council consideration of this matter and action in the form of the following motion. Motion to adjourn as the Boulder City Council and convene as the Board of Directors of Forest Glen Eco Pass General Improvement District. Motion to adopt resolution 62 granting petitions to include property to the district. And motion to adjourn as the Board of Directors of Forest Glen General, Forest Glen Eco Pass General Improvement District and reconvene as the Boulder City Council. So we should also mention here that you are the Board of Directors for this general improvement district, so that's why we have that additional language there.
Excellent.
And we will be here to address any clarifying questions.
Does anybody have clarifying questions? I would thank you for providing that extra background on the neighborhood, yes? Appreciate that. Shall we open the public hearing? Great. Agreed, we have one speaker? Joan.
Does this, is this on?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, I'm Joan Goddard, I live at 3975 Broadway, which is in the Spring Leaf neighborhood. And I was going to tell you a story, but it's getting late, and I have to catch the skip to get home.
Probably understand.
So I just wanted to say that we appreciate you guys considering and letting us be annexed into the GID. I used to live in the GID before I moved over to Spring Leaf, and all of us in Spring Leaf are looking forward to being part of the GID in the future. Thank you.
It's a really great model. Thank you. Closing the public hearing, Erin.
I was hoping to make a motion.
Yes.
I wanted to make a motion of exactly what Allison said just a minute ago, since she did it so well.
Excellent. Do you like to speak to it?
This is in my, my part of town, I'm a huge fan of ecopasses and really glad to see this one expanding, so, thanks, thanks Joan for coming.
Well, I'd also like to say it's really exciting, Spring Leaf is a relatively new neighborhood, and so it's very exciting that they want it to annex, and I think this is just a great, this general improvement district model is a great model, and we might want to see if there's other communities in Boulder who want to go this path. Yeah, maybe a community-wide eco pass. Yeah, well, that would be nice.
And thank you to Joan for all of her effort with this, I appreciate, she spoke with all of her neighbors, so.
Oh, very good work. Hey, we all have our strengths. So, all of those in favor? The vote is unanimous. Thank you all, thank you for your work. Oh, about that?
Yeah, about the, just the eco pass in general. So as we all probably know, RTD made utilization the measure by which people would be charged for their ecopasses. And so the Nico pass neighborhoods have been struggling with how they're going to be able to do that. So I was wondering if we, if staff has some plans, or if there's anything that they're thinking about, if we might be able to get an update through an information item.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that information to you.
I'll just mention, as you go to work, Mary, to that point, I had a meeting with our RTD representative, Lynn Geisinger, and some concerned Nico administrators, and they, they really are struggling, and, but I know that Go Boulder is also working with them on their problems, so an update would be welcome, yeah.
Oh, we got the thumbs up from the transportation staff in the back of the room. Excellent. Okay.
Hey, your next public hearing is motion to accept the open space in Mountain Parks Master Plan.
Well, good evening, council. Dan Burke, interim director of Open Space Mountain Parks, and this is a culmination of an 18-month journey. We're super excited to be in front of you tonight. I'm going to turn things over to our staff in just about 30 seconds or so, but I just want to make a couple of comments, and basically acknowledge that the open space, or Boulder's open space and mountain park lands are diverse, dramatic, and awe-inspiring, and based on the fact that we have over 6 million visitors to our system each year, I have a feeling that there are tens of thousands of people who would agree with that description. Everyone in the room tonight takes our shared responsibility to stewardship this wonderful system to heart. And really, it's through the master planning process that we talked about our collective vision that we have, and the collective future, and a future that should be based on creativity and optimism. We have learned through this process from each other. We have learned about what we all value and how we should best go about to honor those values. And we have built on past plans in order to create what I believe is to be a unified and very exciting future for the open space department. A product of meaningful consultation with community members, open space board of trustees, planning board, city council members, and open space staff, the master plan focuses our energy, funding, and expertise on a clear collective vision for the next decade and beyond. And it also does, it also sets manageable expectations for what could, what could be expected based on the fact that every department, including ours, has financial and resource constraints. Over the next year, staff is going, is super eager after this meeting, hopefully, to get started down the path of master plan implementation, and that all begins with annual work planning and a recommendation of annual budget that aligns with and advances the community's vision that is expressed in the master plan document that is before you here tonight. And as Darren is going to relate to you very shortly, both the OSBT and the planning board unanimously recommended the plan to council, and we hope that you too support the plan. So it's with that that I want to thank each and every one of you. I know that you've all added time to this process. I want to especially thank Erin and Molly, or Mary, for serving on our process committee, and for the open space staff in the back. There's just, there's about five or six of us here tonight, but we represent dozens and dozens of staff who put hours and hours into this process, and we've all benefited in doing so. We all have a really clear vision of where we're heading, and there's nothing more exciting for a director than having a unified voice and a unified vision for the department. So I just want to thank the process that the city puts forward in creating these master plans for giving that gift to us. So with that, I want to think, turn things over to Darren and Mark from Open Space Department.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, everybody. Darren Wagner, project manager for the master plan. We are thrilled to be here tonight. I also want to thank our open space board of trustees, we've got four of our five members in the audience tonight, so thank you for the over 300 hours that they have collectively put in over the last couple of years deliberating on both the process and the content of the plan. It's really above and beyond, and we so appreciate it. So tonight, hopefully, we are all aware of our purpose. We are here to build on the inclusive engagement process that we have worked through with our community board and council, and then to request council's acceptance of the master plan. With that, as somewhat of a housekeeping item, the request is also that council approve the adoption of the master plan summary into the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So I'm just going to harp here for just another minute. So it is almost exactly two years since we convened the process committee for the master plan, and individually, members of the committee have committed about 150 hours of their time towards this. And that's really substantial. So Tom and Kurt in the audience, thank you so much, to you as well. Tom, I'm sorry, Erin and Mary, to you as well. I think what we were able to do with your guidance is to create a thorough process, to create a fair, creative process that really worked us through, you know, a challenging first master plan. And I think we've gotten to a place of feeling really happy with, with how that's worked out, and it would not have been the same without you.
I just have to interject real quick. The many incredibly capable hands in open space staff made it for very light work.
Thank you, Erin.
Pleasure.
Thank you. If you remember back, we did have the charge at the very beginning of being a pilot for the city's engagement strategic framework that emerged from the Public Participation Working Group. And so with, oops, excuse me, wrong way. So with the process committee's guidance, we worked through those nine steps that the, that that framework set out. And part of that, if you remember, one of the first few steps is to set out with a foundation of information. And so you may well remember that we put out a 200-page document at the beginning, that system overview report, and that really did just that. It set up the stage for a lot of creative conversations and important conversations about what the future of open space looks like. We then, with ideas even from council, for example, Lisa Beck is, we were preparing the project management plan and asking council's approval. I think you had some ideas about putting together some materials that we could use. We did that, carried through that information as we were out in the field, working throughout our community and trying to reach voices that we don't typically hear from. It resulted in more than 10,000 comments, 1,400 people that we were able to engage with that are typically under, underrepresented in public processes, about 1,300 responded to a statistically valid survey. So really, again, a thorough process that we were able to devise. And, and as Dan mentioned, that it really got us to this place of having an articulated set of values about open space. We heard you earlier say that open space We heard you earlier say that open space is a core community value, and what does that mean? And really, what we saw through this process is that it confirmed the charter purposes for open space and really brought them into the current day to talk about how those are still very relevant today and that those are things that we should focus on for the next decade. So also, as part of that early project management planning process, we, as staff, working with the community board and council, gave ourselves three questions. Here was our task. The first was to answer, what does the future of open space look like? And we did that primarily, starting with the system overview report, as I just mentioned. We also set out to understand what we should focus on for the next decade. And again, with council's approval of the focus areas last summer, we established those five key management themes to do just that. And really, this third question about how we connect past plans to develop a unified set of strategies, that's really what we've been focusing on for the last six months or so, and are really here tonight to make sure that council agrees that we've achieved all three of these questions and sort of achieved our mission, so to speak. So we met with you in June, along with the full open space board of trustees, and worked through your comments on the first draft that was released for the public review in May. And our takeaways from that are as follows. We heard guidance to refine the priorities into three set of tiers, into three tiers, to enhance the data story, to pull through all the work that we'd done in the system overview report. And so we actually doubled the number of data graphs, figures, and maps in this most recent version, to specify the relationship to past plans. So you'll see in relation to every strategy where we've done that, as well as an appendix that pulls all that together. We've clarified the strategy language and supporting text in certain places where we heard, for example, from council, that we needed to sort of decode what we were talking about and put this in plain language so that we all understood what it was we were setting out to do. We added order of magnitude costs to achieve that 10-year master plan vision. We tried to give a better understanding of what implementation will look like, so we called out a separate action plan that gives some examples of how our strategies will play out on the ground. And then we worked to connect and integrate our focus areas and strategies into that integrated vision. We heard some comments about that as well. So when we took the then revised plan to our board of trustees, as well as the planning board, the planning board, as Dan mentioned, did unanimously support the plan, and as part of that confirmed their recommendation that it does align with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and is therefore, in front of council, to agree with that tonight. We did, from the board's standpoint, hear some final guidance in their final deliberations, and primarily what that looked like were a few things, and that was to further clarify what the global climate crisis means to OSMP and what our role is in the larger solution. And to make additional minor refinements to certain strategy handles, as we've been calling them, priorities and supporting text. And then another key piece in terms of formatting is to make sure the acquisitions section is easy to find. That was feeling buried, but is still an important part of our services. And again, with that, we got unanimous approval from both bodies, which we are so very grateful for. And so as a reiteration of what this is, what is the master plan, and to sort of highlight some of the integration that we've done, we're at this place of being able to talk about our priorities in terms of our three tiers, but also in the ways that they all connect with each other. And so, for example, when you think about our addressing some of our high-priority strategies, like managing increasing visitation, or preserving and restoring our important habitat areas, that many of the, many of the work related to that can only happen in concert with other strategies, such as increasing, or enhancing communication with our visitors, increasing our ranger presence and volunteer presence out in the field, updating our approach to signage in ways that clarify where trails are and are not undesignedated, so that we can continue to restore those that, in places where we have sensitive habitat areas, and doing so in an inclusive way, through Spanish language translation or graphics, et cetera. And so really trying to work through the full vision in a way that helps us tie those individual pieces together. And then just to highlight a few of the example implementation actions as it relates to the global climate crisis, which we've tried to make clear in this latest iteration. So for example, some of these are our bread and butter, so to speak. So preserving, restoring, and acquiring important habitat, we've been doing that for about 120 years, but it remains increasingly important in our portfolio of services. And so the ways that we will continue working towards a resilient future is through, for example, prescribed burns, both in our forests and grasslands, stream restoration projects that increase the habitat quality for important species. We've been doing environmental literacy programs for a number of years as well, and that's an important part of helping our visitors and community members understand what it is and why it's important to protect our open spaces. But also enhancing that and looking at ways of building in some climate literacy efforts to further emphasize that message. We also learned a lot in the 2013 flood, and so making sure that as we look to the future of maintaining our trail system and our visitor facilities, that we do that in ways that are resilient, that we are protecting our current investment and making sure that it's sound going forward. And then moving into some newer territory for us, for example, where we are overtly talking about the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from our visitors, from our agricultural operations, from staff operations, as well as, I know you've heard a lot about this carbon farming that we've been doing to increase soil health, where we are looking to treat as many as 6,000 acres in the next decade with composting and subsoil plowing to increase biomass and offset carbon emissions. And so we've tried to make this increasingly clear in terms of what we can do going forward. As Dan said, though, we also are setting realistic expectations. And so we've been working with community board and council, again, to prioritize our strategies. And part of that is in order to help us allocate our available funding to those things that are most important to our community. And so those in the top-tier strategies, they're going to get the most emphasis in terms of staff time and available funding. As we move through any potential futures as it relates to funding, we then continue to scale up that work in accordance with the tiering and the prioritization that we've heard from the community. So with additional funding, we become more able to get closer to achieving that full master plan vision. And so tonight, here we are, asking for your acceptance of the final plan. And you may notice that if you look at the document itself, it's in Word format primarily. We do intend, after council accepts the content, to make that pretty and to develop a set of graphics more like these that we did at the very beginning, where we're getting the message out more clearly and communicating that in easy-to-digest ways, and then working to integrate this into our work plans and into our annual cycles with board and council and planning board in reviewing and accepting our budget going forward. So that's the large overview, and we do have a recommendation for council to consider that, again, accepts the master plan as well as its adoption into the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. With that, wanted to obviously open it up to questions before the public hearing and see if there's anything that staff can clarify for council.
Any questions? Of course you do. So Darren, thank you so much for your presentation. I was wondering, can we see one of those little flyers? That would be very cool. And thank you so much for doing that, and I'm glad they were very helpful.
Yeah, thanks for the idea.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we have plenty more. I only brought a copy, a couple, but yeah.
Are you going to sign them and frame them? Okay, well, why don't we go to the public hearing then? Okay. How many people do we have total?
I think six.
Six, okay.
Five.
Five. So each person gets three minutes. If you can start with your name and address, that would be great.
Hi, good evening. I'm Steve Watts, 600 Block of Tantra Drive. And I'm the Boulder Public Lands Coalition community organizer, and I speak tonight on their behalf. The Boulder Public Lands Coalition is formed to improve the quality of life in Boulder by partnering to enhance access and increase the protection of public lands, give a unified voice to passive recreationists, including cyclists, dog walkers, equestrians, hikers, nature enthusiasts, trail runners, and others in Boulder, and importantly, connecting outdoor recreation to health and well-being. One of the ways that the BPLC seeks to fulfill the mission is by collaborating with government officials and land managers, environmental organizations, businesses, and individuals on the stewardship projects. The first of these community events was a joint effort by BPLC and CU South. The Scooping of the Pooh, held at the popular Boulder Recreation Area on National Trails Day, June 1st, 2019, was successful in bringing BPLC members and 25 community participants together for the common good. In August, just two weeks ago, BPLC members continued work started in 2018 rehabbing segments of the Dowdy Draw Trail. Our next volunteer opportunity to form trail maintenance with BPLC is scheduled for October. In our first show of solidarity, BPLC members in July signed a joint letter of support for Boulder's OSMP Master Plan with these four caveats. Bob's thinking, there's always caveats, right? But we thought these were very reasonable, and we advocated for new acquisitions that are strategically important to fulfill OSMP charter provisions, decision-making based on sound science and best practices, allowing additional passive recreational access on public lands currently closed, and spreading use amongst low visitation areas, and encouraging outdoor recreation for the health and well-being of our community. An ad hoc coalition of outdoor recreation groups has existed for the last 20 years to weigh in on master plans, trail study areas, et cetera, in Boulder. In 2018, Open Boulder Foundation, a local nonprofit, agreed to provide resources to help BPLC organize. Our founding eight members signed the charter agreement in the summer of 2019, and the following members are in alignment and urge you to approve the OSMP Master Plan. Those are the Boulder Area Trails Coalition, Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance, Boulder Trail Runners, Colorado Mountain Club, Community Cycles, Friends Interested in Dogs and Open Space, Open Boulder Foundation, and Wellwise LLC. And please check our website, boulderpubliclands.org, for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen. Is Helen here? Adam Twellick.
Good evening, council. I'm going to keep this short. So I've read the open space master plan, and my only concern is, while it has priorities that are very clear and laid out, it doesn't have a lot of measurable goals to go along with those priorities, which concerns me because we don't know when we've met a priority and can move on to the next one. So I would suggest just maybe getting a little more clarification on exactly what you're looking for with each priority, so when we're sort of done with one, or one is on autopilot, we can move on to the next set, and then the next tier, and then the following tier. So that's my only feedback on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Leslie.
Hi, my name is Leslie Hitchcock Cushman, 13450 North 75th Street, Longmont. Good evening, and thank you all of you. I know how much work this master plan has been, and then those late-night sessions by the board on the couple of different issues that they've weighed in on this year. I appreciate so much. So the Cushman Ditch is the first water right, this is just on the ditch thing real quick, I hadn't planned to say it, is the first water right off of St. Brain. It's also the oldest historic structure in this county and the first legal precedent, first in time. The Cushmans and the Allens and the Beckwists were the prevailing parties. And then Abel Cushman, who came in 1858, he and three of his buddies had started the Northern Colorado Agriculture Society, but they also said, you know, fellas, there ought to be a fair around here, too. So they put up their own money and bought the ground and started the Boulder County Fair 150 years ago this year. And there were seven, seventh-generation Cushmans in the 4H livestock sale this year. And the fair board paid for the buckles this year. They were beautiful to commemorate the 150th, but I think those Cushman, I mean, they swept the goat barn, the pig barn. Tanner, they got 13 of those buckles. But Tanner had, right after fair last year, got diagnosed with Ewing sarcoma. He got a titanium elbow, did the whole year of chemo, and came back and won grand champion steer. And he's just pioneer tough. I am so proud of all of them. But last year, when, or a couple of years back, when I came to address you guys about the ag plan, I'd said, I'd kind of picked on a few quotes, and I'd left this one out, but I kind of, thinking back, think it was the most important. Ron Stewart said that the success of this program is due entirely to the willingness of, during the 40th anniversary, said this, these families' willingness to convert these properties to open space. It's their leap of faith and their desire to keep their families and their lands in agriculture. And they were able to coop some of the equity or value of those, but not as much as they would have had they converted them to cul-de-sac-infested neighborhoods, but, and it wasn't necessarily a deal, but maybe a promise that their families would be able to maintain their foothold here. And they threw in the fifth generation, their next generation, as part of the deal. And now we're at the, coming towards the end of those guys' career, well, not the end of their career, they don't die till they fall off the tractor, but it's failing. And I'm sorry I don't have more time, because...
Can you tell us what you think of the plan and if there's something missing or that you would add to it, to that end?
I don't think there's anything missing, and I'm proud of the board for recommending that the prairie dog conflict be moved up to tier one. And I have actually spoken to at least one council member about a pretty good idea I had for maybe helping work on that problem other, I mean, different than going to Rocky Flats with them. And I've talked to some other community members, kind of like village chiefs, who like the idea, too. And I have things to further talk about at some point with you all, but I would like to see that kept at a tier-one priority. And as far as funding for it, it's in the lease mechanism existing that on, that it falls to the tenant's side of the balance sheet to be responsible for weeds, and no disrespect, it's identified as pests. But these guys do not want to kill all the prairie dogs. They want some lethal control. When it's exceeded, it's what we've defined in the grassland management plan. We need to come up with some way to control that, because it's unchecked right now.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you all of you.
Ellen.
Ellen Delamere, 525 Mapleton. At the first version of this master plan, I defined it as a non-plan, and I couldn't find enough meat in it. Now, Dan dropped a bomb on us at the council meeting when he announced the $40 million of trail backlog. And then the next night, open space followed through, asking a lot of questions about cost in order to come up with a thing. So the next version had costs, and I produced a little spreadsheet similar to the one I've given you now, and passed it past Dan and asked if he could verify my numbers. So this is the latest version of the thing, and you'll notice there's a pile of numbers in red, where we went from 10 to 20 million to 10 to 40 million. So this brings some big numbers available. So trying to understand what we're getting for these numbers is the challenge. I've concentrated on the trail backlog, and I've been working with Dan and his staff over the last couple of years to try and understand some of the trail issues. But right now, there's 30 miles of red trails, so recently, I committed to walk them, and I invite any members of council to join me and walk these red trails and come to your own opinion of what needs to be fixed, how urgent it needs to be fixed, and/or whether we can ignore it and let things go. So initially, the good news is I found some red areas that aren't red, in my opinion. But unfortunately, there's some green areas that should be red, particularly in the mud, from the mud viewpoint. So I think we're at the stage where I'm not quite sure when you We know all about the .15% that's been approved. My concern is, should it really be .15%? Or should we maybe even go in for .5%? I don't think any of us know what the real cost of implementing all these different tiers that are involved. Tier three is about two-thirds of the money in total. So obviously, Dan is going to start off with Tier One and try and chip his way down while ever he's got money available. But it needs, I think, a lot more work doing before we can be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. This is very thought-provoking. Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing. Did staff want to respond to anything related to what you just heard?
Only if council has questions. Happy to answer, though.
Okay, I was going to ask a question of, oh, go ahead, you go.
I have a question.
Yep.
The woman who was here and spoke during an open comment, or public comment, about the Wonderland Lake, Friends of Wonderland Lake, apparently didn't stay for this, but I'm wondering if you heard her speak and if there's any response to this.
Sure. So we are, and we spoke to our Board of Trustees and Planning Board about a somewhat sort of similar issue as it relates to trails and facilities on open space. And I think what we, just in terms of little context, that we know we have the charter as well as the 2005 visitor master plan that define the activities that we support, and that's where we start. So even as basic as it seems, a trail is a facility in some ways, and we have, you know, a legacy of historic facilities in our mountain parks, as well as aging facilities throughout the system that are in need of repair. And so the master plan as a whole does prioritize taking care of what we have, the maintenance component of addressing the trail maintenance backlog, as well as our existing facilities, while not precluding the need to enhance those facilities in certain strategic areas, but with no geographic specificity about that, because it's a master plan. It's our first, at the system-wide level, pulling together all charter purposes in one plan. We did not get into geographic specificity at this point.
So this is something, then, that one would think that she would go back to the Open Space Board of Trustees, or the group would go back to them and speak to them about this?
Yeah, absolutely, Cindy. And I think as council advised us and guided when Dan came forward a little while ago, that we would reengage the community and start the process over at Wonderland Lake. And that is a continuing process to work with them. Hopefully, by spring of 2020, we'll have reached a lot of agreement, collaboration, where we'll be able to come back to the board and also update council.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yep. So I want to follow up on that. So as you know, there was, for many years, decades, a sign calling it the Wonderland Lake Sanctuary, and mysteriously, that sign disappeared in December. And I live up there, and I walk there quite a bit, and I get a lot of questions, where is the sign, and when is it coming back? And I think I also met with Ms. Robbins and some other community members, and I recognize that the master plan is not geographically specific, but I think that opening put a lot of people in, it made them have concerns that they never had had before. And building structures up there, you know, having waiting areas in cyanobacteria is not the best things you want for dogs or for children. I think as weather continues or temperatures continue to warm, we're going to see more events like that. And so I think there does need to be, and I know you guys, I forget what it's called, IPS, or, I know that's on your calendar and that that's coming back, but I think it would be wise to maybe open up that communication sooner than later. And I know there's quite a few people, and I can send a more detailed email out tomorrow, that are very concerned about this plan and what's happening with it. So I'll just leave it there. But it would be good if you could allay people's concerns. Never before have we seen paved waiting structures and built structures for shade when open space should be putting trees. I have a bunch of trees I can give you guys. But anyway, I think it really struck a chord in people's fears of what could happen, and raised some concerns that open space is moving more and more towards being a park. I know that's not what the master plan says or what the intention is, but I think there needs to be a really clear line between our open space and mountain parks department and what our parks and recreation department is and does.
So I want to jump in with a topic, and I first want to commend you for, well, I think we don't have a lot of questions, so we're going to just start diving in with comments. So for a stellar master plan, I especially appreciate you tackling the slew of issues around climate, around soil health, around the ag and conflicts, and carbon farming and restoration. And I think those are sort of all emerging issues that need attention. And I guess, could you speak to folks interested in those issues, what the next steps are, where they would engage in terms of the action, as you figure out the action plan? Can you spell that out a little bit?
Absolutely. So we see this master plan as all are intended to do as informing our annual and longer-term work plans. And so part of that process is that we will continue to flesh out what those next steps will be over the next several years, and work with our Board of Trustees early in spring of next year, ahead of the annual budget cycle, to work through what those are, and so that that can inform, then, the subsequent budget requests that come through OSBT Planning Board and Council. So that's sort of a broad sketch in terms of the mechanics of how staff need to reconcile capacity, available funding, and sequence out these pieces and projects. At that point, we'll have more clarity about, you know, again, with the board's input, about exactly the sequence that will move through implementation. And so it really, we're looking, as part of that process, to also have conversations with the board to understand the best approaches for planning in the future, so, you know, that we make sure that we're working through planning modules that are efficient and can get, you know, fair engagement with the public and give them opportunities to weigh in when they need to. So there's a lot that we're going to be working on with the board to confirm that. At that point, then, there'll be a number of opportunities through the individual projects to engage with those, starting after that.
Yeah, I mean, that was a very, but, so, if people, that sounds like a lot of planning for a lot of years, but you guys are, you guys are doing stuff on the ground while this is going on, so I...
We have a lot, a lot of what is also in the master plan gets its arms around the existing programs and efforts that we already have in place. So, for example, around our environmental literacy programs, our volunteer programs, trail volunteer programs, for example, those are all ongoing. And so a lot of the strategies in the master plan talk about enhancing those and looking for opportunities to increase access to those, you know, those ways of connecting, for example, through the Junior Ranger Program. We tend to turn away a lot of applicants, so how, as available funding comes online, can we increase those opportunities? So there'll be a lot of, you know, again, as capacity allows, there'll be enhancements to our existing work, and then some of our strategies that require more groundwork first will take someplace.
So specific to the restoration efforts, could you speak to that?
So certainly, we have a number of volunteer opportunities, for example, where we work with volunteers, and Mark, feel free to...
I was thinking mostly on ag lands.
On ag lands. So that's actually a new component that we're trying to grow into. We've certainly done individual programs throughout, but the more recognition through the master plan process that we've gotten as staff about the importance of soil health and the importance of engaging with diverse backgrounds, with youth, that there are more opportunities, for example, to grow our Junior Ranger into that arena, or to offer more volunteer programs in that arena.
Zan, if I could add, too, in terms of communicating to the public, a key part of our master plan process over the next 10 years is how do we track and report out on successes? So it's not only looking forward to, here are the projects that we're anticipating for 2020, per se, and here is the budget that goes along with them, but looking back, here's what we accomplished in regards to our master plan in 2020. So we will be developing sort of a reporting out process for the community, so they'll get to learn and follow our process, our progress annually through progress reports on individual strategies. So reporting out will be a really key communication tool as well, as far as letting community members know where we're making progress on certain projects, and what, and most of these projects are ongoing. And so there'll be opportunities to share that and possibly even share where there's levels of involvement, opportunities.
Great. I think for the comment about measurable objectives, that is a great approach.
Yes.
Lisa.
Darren, I wanted to ask you about just this public engagement process. And as you noted, this was the first full-fledged nine-step program. And I guess, having gone through that, and I guess this is a question for both Erin and Mary, as well as Tom and Kurt, I guess I'm curious, having been involved in the public participation working group, and that was a citizen recommendation or a resident recommendation, I would like to know from you, you know, what additional input you would want, what suggestions you might make in terms of improving that process? Did it go too fast? Did it go too slow? I don't have an opinion, but it would be really good now, since you've been through this process, to report back, as a gentleman pointed out, and having measurable objectives. And are there ways that we might want to improve, or were some of the steps redundant? So I'm just curious in getting that back. You don't have to answer right now, but I think that would be very helpful feedback, because I think a lot of departments and processes are, you know, are looking at you guys, and you've been through this.
And so, there's no angry mobs, that's a first.
Well, and that's great. I do have three other things, but I can say them or ask.
Well, could I just say something to that? One of the things that we talked about at one of our last process committee meetings was about having a report out on the process, right, and working with Sarah Huntley in the Communications Department on doing that. Because for somebody who was deep into it, I felt like it was an absolute Goldilocks process. It wasn't too fast, it wasn't too slow, you reached not too many people, it was like, it was kind of perfect. So I look forward to that kind of case study. I would hope we get a case study out of that. The only thing I'd say is, after going through the full nine-step process, I found myself cured of my addiction to process.
Oh, that's good. That's good.
Congratulations.
But you still like open space.
I do, very much.
If I could just add to Erin's comments, and it was actually the detailed development of the first time of the process, and then one of the impressive things about it was how disciplined it was. And I think that that's been a shortcoming of a lot of processes, where it's not, we don't open an engagement window and close it and move on to the next one. And I think that that was one of the biggest benefits, that they were very clear about when the engagement window was opening and when it was closing. And then if you didn't get to engage that window, your next opportunity was the next one, but it wasn't about what the first engagement was about. So, and I think that takes some real discipline.
Yeah, no, that's great, that's great. Sam wants in on this.
Well, I'd just point out that Appendix A is kind of a report out on the, on the public engagement process, how it went, and, you know, what kind of breadth and depth it had. So there is some of that that's already in the document, talking about that. And that's a place, at least for other departments to start, I would think, is looking at that and saying, okay, and then coming to you with questions. But I think it's good it got captured right away, so it didn't become information that was in somebody's head.
Just to add that, of, you know, it's a pretty extensive exhaustive effort as well, and so not every project, you know, it's scalability. Certain scales goes with certain projects. We felt with the master plan process, this worked absolutely perfect. Obviously, a smaller-scale project, you'd want to scale it down based on the number of, the resources you have available within your project or your department to carry it out, because it's pretty extensive.
Yeah, yeah. Do you know what? We perhaps were remiss in not inviting you up to say something.
Just since you were surveying the process committee, I just wanted to add my two cents. I think, as Tom Isaacson, Chair of the Open Space Board and member of the Process Committee, one thing that I think we learned that was very important for this process, which ran counter to what we were hearing from the consultants, was the importance of having the plan go through a number of public drafts. I think their initial vision was, well, you just sort of put out a draft, and then you have a hearing at the Open Space Board and make some changes, and you're done. And with a plan that has this many elements, each one of which is fairly complicated, I think that would not have been at all the right way to go. And I think we benefited a lot from going through several iterations that went to the board for comments, back to staff, and seeing, trying to put all of those comments in at once would have been heroic and horrendous. And to actually do it the way we did, which is sort of a slower build, taking each draft and kind of building it up, and then seeing the pieces come together, and having the public have the opportunity to weigh in as the document grew, I think that worked out much better than the alternative. And for similarly complicated processes is something that I recommend.
Thank you. Sorry, if I could just add, from a staff perspective, as Mary pointed out, the windows of engagement. The discipline in that allowed staff to come back to the Process Committee and say, did we capture the right public comment? Did we do enough in our process to move us to the next step? And then the Process Committee was able to get in those breathing spaces, give us guidance, and allow staff time to collect their thoughts to move into the next process. And I think we all really appreciate the guidance of the Process Committee as part of this process. It's sort of critical to staff to get that guidance.
So, did you, I was just going to go on, but if you had something to say?
I was going to say something about, I think the statistically valid surveys are a really, really useful tool. I mean, it was supported in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. It really helped us, I think, to kind of narrow in on community attitudes towards growth and development and, you know, typologies. I think it was also very useful to do a survey around the open space, because it showed, you know, what we probably all suspected, but now we have numbers on, which is how popular the programs are with the public. So that was my only comment, was I thought that tool, you know, when we're doing big planning projects, I think we should always remember to bring the surveys into those projects.
Well, and I would just add to that, in that that helped us, I think, move forward with this proposed 20-year 0.15 tax extension for open space. So I think if the survey had come back with lower percentage, maybe we wouldn't have gone forward. But I think because this was statistically valid surveys, it really informed our decisions as decision-makers in terms of what we should do in moving forward. So I just want to comment on this. This is fantastic, and I'm really excited to see this. And can I have one?
You can have more than that, yes.
Okay. So thank you for doing that, and I just want to support the whole metrics and being able to make sure that we can come back and measure what are those successes and what are the failures? What didn't work? It's not always going to be something that's successful, so to be as honest as possible and to track that would be very critical. And then I would hope, with respect to prairie dogs, that we move forward, as we have discussed with, I have no problem with them being in Tier One, but I think we need to complete the prairie dog working group recommendations, and I think that's what's on the table right now. Is that correct, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think that's very important. Just, again, it's a process, and this group worked two years to work on that. So I think following it through and the recommendations is critical to our success. Thank you.
Okay. How about a motion? How about a motion? Who's on it?
I'll make a motion.
Oh. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I will move.
Right there, you can find it. It's on the screen.
Oh, thank you. I will move to accept the open space and mountain parks master plan and adopt the proposed amendment to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Open Space and Mountain Parks Master Plan summary.
Say it.
And I will make one comment beside, thank you, everybody, for outstanding work and stuff. But this is the first time that we've gotten an open space, mountain parks, master plan into our Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And that is not any small feat, and I really appreciate everybody's effort. And let's go open space. Thank you. And it's, I'm very excited to be supporting this. And it is a beautiful document, even though it's in Word. I know you want to put a little more work in it, but it's a very useful document, and I do hope that once you've done all your magic with it, that you will have it always posted front and center on the open space, mountain parks webpage.
Okay.
I'm not sure who got the second.
I'm not sure either.
Erin?
I got it.
Erin got it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Erin.
Okay, well, I have to gush a little bit. The master plan is such a, such a well-put-together document, and the content is just exceptional. And it was such a pleasure working with all of you over the last two years, just a real, real pleasure. It made the hours go by quickly. And to Zan's point, you'll notice the big missing piece tonight is the angry mob. Dozens of people signed up to talk about how upset they are about this piece, or that piece, or the other piece, and which most major open space initiatives have had in the past. And in addition to staff's amazing work, I think particularly the breadth of the outreach over the last couple of years, and the discipline of the outreach, I think, is why we're seeing that. So, and the, just the number of people who are reached, the number of people who are not normally reached, I was just so impressed by. So thank you so much to all of you who worked on this so hard. And just again, to call out the Open Space Board Trustees members, Tom Isaacson, who was on the Process Committee, Kurt Brown, who we haven't heard from, was at every meeting, Karen Holweg was at every meeting, even from before she was an Open Space Board Trustee. So thank you for that. And I see Dave Kunz back there as well. Thanks for your work on this. So I'm just very, very happy to be here tonight. Thank you.
So I want to echo everything. Yeah. And real quickly, I want to say that Sarah Huntley was at all.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
The meetings as well, so she knows how it went. But I want to thank these guys and all of the open space staff, because the outreach was really truly amazing. And they tried small things throughout the process that I think made a big difference. And that kind of attention to the small things, I just, I think was, made all the difference. So thank you.
So I also just want to acknowledge all of the good and hard work that has gone into this. I know I talk to people who watch the open space Board of Trustees meetings on their, I guess, for lack of better things to do, right? When they're home.
It's a great program.
And it is a great program. No commercials, right? So, and people remark on how thorough and dedicated the board is, the trustees are, and I really just want to call that out to those persons who are here, and to the newest member who's probably off doing something fun. But I really think, and also the person, I'm blanking on her name right now.
How?
Who helped also put this together, yes.
Andrea Billick?
Yes. Andrea Billick, yes.
Or Emeritus, Emerita.
Emer, yes. So, and the other thing I'd like to say is what, as a council member, what a learning experience this was too, and how much I appreciated being able to do things like get onto the land for the irrigated ag parts of it, to look at the carbon sequestration, hear about that and how that was done firsthand. I mean, these were really great experiences, and I hope they continue for the community, as I'm sure they will, when we get this tax in place and through. So thank you all.
Sam.
So, I mean, I think this is a wonderful document. You've all done a great job, and you're deserving of all the praise that you're getting. I want to specifically call out the community connection, education, and inclusion components of this. I think that is a really important piece, as some historical documents that have been circulated point out, that has not always been the conservation community's strongest point. There's history through the 90s when there's, you know, the Sierra Club was having a lot of internal fighting. And so I think this is the right place to be on that. You know, our attitude as we're preserving our lands needs to take into account the people who were there before the European settlers came. And I know that, Dan, you've done that in our meetings with tribal, recognized tribal groups, and also bringing other people from the community who do not as commonly get onto these lands is really important at showing their value to everyone. You know, this digital age, where we're all sucked into our computers and our phones and everything, it's going to take more outreach than it ever has before to get the next generations wanting to be on these lands. So I just want to thank you for including that, and I think that's a really important piece of the whole kind of how we implement this plan. Let's vote.
Oh, wait, okay. I'm going to guess for a second and just say, also, along with the staff and the board and council, I guess, there's a lot of members, members in the public, lessees, who also play very important roles in these conversations, and there's this sort of faithful core that have been a part of this as well, so I thank them for their efforts. And really looking forward to implementation, because you get gold stars for the process, this plan looks great, and now I got to implement it. And that's where the rubber hits the road, and I'm glad, I already mentioned, the reporting out on progress, I think, will be key, and keeping people engaged, and, you know, as we actually bring it to life. So with that, shall we vote?
A show of hands, Scott.
All those in favor? Tis unanimous.
Woo-hoo.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, we're allowed to clap.
Then just tell us who in the party is.
No worries. We will.
Now comes the part.
Let's just keep.
So we're done, right?
Absolutely. Yes.
We're just, we are. I think we should ask questions. I'm going to get to the presentation that we're talking about. Let's start asking questions.
Wait, what's going to come off of it?
Well, I think we need to discuss the 25% office in VR in particular, so EMS, I don't think it's a big deal.
Wait, 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 we talked.
Yeah, yeah. But how.
So let's not come off, but you mean.
You might need to come.
I think we've got to get real creative.
Can we do that tonight?
Yeah, but I don't think we have to finish tonight, but I think we want to put some more meat on the bones, and.
Well, it's good.
Yeah. So I think.
Give some direction.
Yeah, I think we're here for an hour and a half. But I have got to pee, so.
Great. Yeah. It's just, yeah, it goes. That's probably that, and the, it's probably the most difficult thing.
We'll have a quorum back soon, I'm sure.
Take your time. You're good.
You're good, Brian.
Yeah, press inquiry.
I said, I responded.
Okay.
What's that?
Be in the news.
Yeah.
They'll ask us questions.
But I mean.
Yes.
Hmm? Go. Me too. Now it just has to pass. Yep.
It's good.
Yeah, I guess.
Four is a quorum. Two is seven, eight, six, nine, zero. Four is a quorum.
Four is?
Is it? Well, it doesn't really matter. You can operate in absence of a quorum unless someone suggests the absence of a quorum. That's a lawyer's answer.
Okay, we're there. Chris Nesczek will present this matter, and then kick it off and hand it over to the team.
Great, thank you, Jane.
Sorry, we're hydrating well up here. That's all I got to say.
Yes, thank you for doing so.
Yes.
So we're here tonight to talk about the, really, the first phase of the use table and standards project that's focused on the opportunity zone. Carl Geiler and Andrew Collins are code amendment specialists, are, I'm going to present this item. Feel free to dive in and ask questions along the way. This is, can be kind of dense stuff, so feel free to ask questions along the way. And then Charles Farrow and myself are here to help support and answer questions as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Carl.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, council members. As Chris stated, we're going to be talking about the use standards and table project, component of which focuses on the opportunity zone. So we had had a discussion with council regarding these changes back on April 2nd, as well as a study session on May 28th. At the inception of this particular portion of the project, earlier this year, city council requested that staff conduct a targeted focus analysis on the use table with the goal of trying to create better alignment with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan policies that apply to the area. So that's the intent of the first ordinance that we've brought to you tonight for consideration. The second ordinance would lift the restrictions that were created by moratorium that was adopted in December of last year, it amended in January and February, with the exception that the moratorium would stay in place in the RH4 and RM1 zoning districts to restrict any demolitions of existing multifamily dwelling units in those zones. So really quickly, Andrew's going to be talking about the project background of the use standards and table project, moving into the opportunity zone background and basically the structure of the proposed changes, talking about the limited use categories. And then I'm going to pick up and talk more about some of the follow-up items that we had talked about with council back in May, and what changes were made, and what's reflected within the ordinances. So, and then we'll follow, we'll conclude with the staff recommendations and next steps. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew.
Great. Thanks, Carl. Good evening, council. So we first want to provide a little bit of background and context on the larger use table and standards project, and how this, the opportunity zone ordinances kind of fit within that context. So at the very highest level, we have the BVCP, which provides overarching policy guidance and goals for the city's future on a variety of topics, including the land use, which then helps inform the development standards and zoning requirements of Title IX, which is the city's land use code. So land use code regulates development in terms of the form and bulk standards, which includes setbacks in building height, intensity standards, which is density and floor area, as well as development standards such as parking and landscaping, and then process requirements, which includes permitting processes and application reviews. It also regulates use standards, which is the primary scope for both the use standards and table project, and also what's proposed in the opportunity zone ordinances. So these are simply the allowed land uses for each zoning district, which may be allowed or prohibited. And it's also the associated standards and conditions for each of those uses. The project was first identified by the Planning Board and City Council as a work plan priority item in 2018, and this was for the overall use standards and table project. The Planning Board established a subcommittee of three of their members last summer, and they established the overall project scope, why and purpose statements. They've had eight meetings thus far as well, most recently in June. So the why statement is simply that the use table and standards may be out of alignment with the intent of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, goals and policies, and not be achieving the desired development and community outcomes. The purpose, therefore, is to bring the use table and standards of the code into greater alignment with the BVCP. Terms of the scope for the use standards and table project, it includes Chapter 96 use standards, which is the use table itself, as well as any additional specific use standards of that chapter. Also includes ancillary sections of the code, such as definitions. Importantly, it does not include form, bulk, or intensity chapters, and this carries through to the opportunity zone proposal as well. And then the proposed changes to the use table would apply citywide. So really quickly on the screen, you can see an example of what the use table actually looks like. It lists the zoning districts across the top.
Andrew?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to emphasize one point. The last slide, you said the use table changes will apply across the city. That was always the intention of this project, was to take a look at the different zone districts, the use tables, and to see if we were going to get what we want. You know, for example, Class A office space was previously allowed at a high level of intensity in BC1 and BC2 zones, and we elevated that and made that change. So there are inconsistencies like that throughout the use tables still, because it's been 20 years since we touched them. So the, from the beginning of this project, it was always intended that we look across the whole city and make changes that would not, I mean, the opportunity zone came later. And so I just wanted to emphasize that for our community, that this was a project that many people who had been on the Planning Board thought needed done, because we just thought it was time for an update, and the opportunity zone came in later. And so what it did was it promoted certain zone districts to a higher priority. And so the reason we've broken the project into two phases is, the first phase is the zone districts that got promoted because they're included in the opportunity zone. The second phase is for issues that require more analysis, like housing and industrial zones. We were careful 20 years ago to proceed conservatively, and then we have, you know, if we're going to look at that in Phase Two, it'll be up to a new council. But we have phased this project. So anyway, just a little background.
Great, thanks. So just an example of what the use table looks like in the code. Again, there's zoning districts across the top, the land use is listed on the leftmost column. The table lists whether the uses, for example, here duplexes would be either allowed, an A, demarcation, prohibited, which is a asterisk. It could be a conditionally allowed use, which is a C, as well as a use review, which involves more use review criteria, and is a discretionary view process that may require plain, plain board review and approval and a call-up. So the subcommittee, again, which has met eight times, has two overarching goals. Number one is to streamline and update the use table itself to make it more readily understandable and legible. And secondly, again, to align the table and standards to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. They've also had the opportunity to review potential changes related to the opportunity zone of the ordinances before you tonight. They have been in general support of the limited use category in some of the consolidation efforts to help simplify the table, and also been in general support of the use standard changes with some divergent opinions on certain allowances such as efficiency living Separified is kind of the background context of where the opportunity zone fits within the use table and standards project. So going into the opportunity zone moratorium itself, council did adopt an emergency moratorium ordinance in February, which suspended the acceptance of applications for development review projects and building permits within Census Tract 122.03. This stemmed from concern that the federal program could incentivize development projects that would be inconsistent with the adopted Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. As such, council requested staff provide a narrow-focused zoning analysis of the use standards of the zoning districts that fell within the opportunity zone prior to the removal of the moratorium. And then again, this plugged into the ongoing use table and standards project work. So the Census Tract and the opportunity zone is shown here in blue. It is bounded to the west by 28th Street, to the north by Dagnall Highway, to the west by 55th Street and Airport Road, and to the south by Arapahoe Avenue. The zoning districts within the opportunity zone are varied and include industrial zones, business zones, residential medium and high zones, mobile home zoning, mixed-use zoning, and public and ag zoning. In April, staff presented an initial analysis to council and got feedback and recommendations on targeted changes. Council at that time was supportive of a new limited use category and requested further discussion on several topics. At the follow-up May council study session, staff presented several options and received direction from council. So the Census Tract and the Opportunity Zone is shown here in blue. It is bounded to the west by 28th Street, to the north by Dagnall Highway, to the west by 55th Street and Airport Road, and to the south by Arapahoe Avenue. The zoning districts within the Opportunity Zone are varied and include industrial zones, business zones, residential medium and high zones, mobile home zoning, mixed-use zoning, and public and ag zoning. In April, staff presented an initial analysis to council and got feedback and recommendations on targeted changes. Council at that time was supportive of a new limited use category and requested further discussion on several topics. At the follow-up May council study session, staff presented several options and received direction from council on several topics, including efficiency living units, single-family dwelling units in high-density residential zones, residential uses in business zones, restaurants and industrial zones, office uses in both residential and business zones, and then the preservation of existing market rate affordable residential uses within the Opportunity Zone itself. So based upon this feedback, staff has dropped the proposed ordinances before you tonight, and the planning board had a chance to consider them in July and recommended approval of their proposed ordinances, with the exception of altering the existing limitations that require a use review for ELUs, and that vote was in favor of 5-0 of the members who were present. So overall, the members who were present, they were generally all support for the proposed changes, with the exception of ELUs. Three members were in favor of the current ordinance proposal to remove the current 20% ELU threshold that triggers a use review requirement. So ordinance is proposing to remove that and simply make it an allowed use in those respective zones. Two members, however, were not in favor of removing that existing use review trigger. And so after discussion, they agreed to pass a unanimous vote recommending approval without the ELUs. Terms of public outreach, there were eight open and noticed Use Table Subcommittee meetings thus far. We've had the Opportunity Zone moratorium public hearings this winter, three code amendment open houses during this winter and spring, the council matters items discussion, study sessions, the planning board public hearing in July. We've also met with members and representatives of Plan Boulder, the Chamber of Commerce, and Better Boulder, and made some adjustments based upon their feedback from the framework of the guidance from council, as well as updates to the planning newsletters and project webpages.
Just a quick question here on public outreach. Was there any direct outreach to the property owners that are affected by the changes in regulation?
There was no direct mailing, no.
Okay, because, anyway, so there's a lot of property owners affected by these regulations, but I guess we've been getting emails from them, a few of them, that they hadn't heard about this.
So we'll move on to the proposed changes and first focus on the new limited use category, and then we can pause for questions if that works for council, and then go into the more detailed changes with Carl coming up. So the new limited use category creates a new designation between an allowed use and a conditional use. This would be an allowed use by right that may have one or two special land use attributes, such as a square footage maximum or a locational characteristic, and this fits within the logic that already exists. For example, financial institutions are required or limited on their ground floor percentage of their occupation. This also helps us to streamline the Use Table by consolidating multiple line items in the table of the same use that may have one or two differences in terms of allowable square footages. For instance, we can also convert the existing, there's a GM and N designations in the table, which have other requirements. Those can all be consolidated or converted, I should say, into a new limited use category, with their limitations listed elsewhere in the code. And again, avoid, this helps us to avoid having, to add new letters or additional items into the table itself every time we have a nuanced regulation we want to institute. So really quickly, how this kind of plays out in this example on the screen, we have art or craft studio space listed twice in the table, one for 2,000 square feet or less, one for greater than 2,000 square feet. And so we're proposing to consolidate those, collapse them down to one category, simply arts or crafts, arts or craft studio space, and a list limitation in a new section of the code, which in this case would be L6, which simply states that it's an allowed use by right for 2,000 square feet or less, otherwise it can be approved via use review. So we are proposing 17 different limited uses in the proposal. The first type is simply conversions. This is converting the existing GM and N designations directly into limited uses. Also, L5 is converting the existing specific use standard of office uses in the BCS zone to a use limitation. This is L5. The second type of limited uses we have are consolidations. This is the example we showed with the arts and craft studio space. So simply consolidating the existing regulations in the table itself to help streamline it and make it simpler to read, and then putting those regulations in a separate table in that section of the code. And this is the bulk of the proposed limited uses. The third type, these are new limitations that are substantive changes, highlighted in green. Also, they correspond to the attachment F in your packet, which has everything in green, which is substantive. So these are L15, 16, and 17. These are intended to help accomplish some of council's goals as they relate to the jobs, housing imbalance. So just at a high level, L15 is new limitations for detached dwelling units for high-density residential zones and mixed-use zones. L16 is new limitations for residential uses in the business regional zones, and L17 is new limitations for office uses in the business zones. And we can go into those more detail coming up with Carl in the second part of this. We want to just pause here and see if there's any questions on the limited use structure.
So, questions about, but not the, not the three changes, but not the three, yeah, but not the 15, 16, and 17?
Just the structural, yeah, changes.
Questions? Sam?
I think it's a good change. Makes it easier to read. We will need to return to the later ones.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about more of the substantive changes that Andrew touched upon. So in this case, there are some follow-up items from the May 28th study session that we wanted to talk a little bit more about. So the first is efficiency living units, the use review threshold that's in the code, detached dwelling units in high-density and mixed-use zones, residential uses in the business regional zones, office uses in the business zones, and then office uses in the residential zones. So some of the guiding policies that we looked at as part of this analysis are listed up on the slide. Turning to the actual moratorium ordinances, the primary focus has been basically three things, as stated in those ordinances. And again, our goal was to do targeted focus changes to the Use Tables that would address increasing housing capacity in the city, reducing the non-residential capacity to offset the jobs, housing imbalance, and also look at ways of maintaining the potential for retail uses in the city and also enable some additional opportunities for retail through zoning So again, as Andrew stated, the more substantive changes are reflected in attachment F, and we also have that up on the dais that shows the changes in green. So the first of which relates to efficiency living units. Basically, an efficiency living unit is a unit that's no greater than 475 square feet. The current code considers two ELUs, one dwelling unit for the purposes of density. The current code has a threshold that says in certain zones that if you, if more than 20% of the ELUs are part of a project, that it would require a use review. So we brought this before council as something to consider changing in the, in the respect that we, we've heard from planning board and council and members of the community that there's a desire to get more smaller units and that this could potentially be a barrier to that. So we propose that that use review threshold be removed in those zones where it already is either allowed or by use review. It's not expanding the scope of it beyond that. So we talked about this on May 28th. Council was somewhat mixed on it, thinking that there could be some changes to the threshold or maybe even permanently affordable requirements, but the majority of the council at that time had stated that they agreed that we should move forward with just removing that threshold and making it allowable. One thing that we should note is, again, the site review process is still there in situations where you have a project over a certain square footage or a certain number of units, it would be evaluated through site review. So that's how it's reflected in the current ordinance. It would basically remove those use review requirements, make it an allowable use, and this is done to increase the housing capacity to get at that goal. This was something that was, was focused on by planning board at their, their July 25th discussion, and was basically the biggest point of disagreement from the planning board. There were concerns about a proliferation of additional smaller units in the city that might need further discretionary review. So the planning board basically removed that component from their recommendation, and then they, they recommended 5-0 to approve the changes without the ELU piece.
Yeah, should we just stop and ask questions? Yes, ask away.
So thank you, Carl. Just so that I understand this, so somebody could come in and say, in my housing development project, I'd like to do 100% ELUs?
They could. It, depending on the actual size of the project, the floor area, the number of units, it may require site review, but this difference would be, would just pull away that use review requirement.
So, I guess a question I have is, and would any of those have an affordability requirement?
There is no affordability requirement proposed.
Okay.
Other than the built-in inclusionary zoning requirements, correct.
Right. So, I guess I'm curious, did the planning board talk about community benefits in, in this particular ELUs?
I don't believe they touched upon that. I think they talked a little bit about the, the threshold, you know, perhaps the threshold changed, you know, like 50%, but they didn't get into actually requiring onsite affordables.
So one concern I have, if I, can I put out?
Well, hang on a second. Do, does, the Use Table doesn't, does it generally address affordability?
Not normally. I mean, I think where we would, if that were an outcome, it would likely become like a conditional use, where criteria would be added, and there'd be a requirement saying over a certain amount would require permanent affordability. So that is, that's certainly an option.
So could you, can I just put out a scenario? So say, okay, you could do something like 40% ELUs, or are they the same thing as studio apartments, or do they have like bedrooms and?
I mean, they're normally one-bedroom units. They're not termed studio apartments and.
And, and so could you say something like, okay, we would have 40%, but we would like, which would, and let's say you have 100 units at this place. So that would be, if I understand it right, would that be 80, since you get two for one?
Well, it depends on the zoning district. So the zoning district says you have a max number of units.
Right.
So if it said 40 is your max, you could technically ask up for up to 80.
So like if there, it's a high-density housing situation. One, one concern I have is that we don't get all dormitories, and it seems to me that we have a need for a mixture of housing types, and so somewhere in there, instead of 100%, I would be more comfortable with something less than 50%, just so that you get a mix of this housing types with multiple bedrooms as well as the ELUs. And, you know, in addition to the inclusionary housing, I'd like to see something that says it would need to be a community benefit, or there would be an affordable component imposed on, on this.
So we're just going to toss out some stuff because? Then we're going to a public hearing.
Is it just questions right now?
It's mostly just questions. I think to the extent that we'd like, since this is, I think on a couple of these where there's a lot of thinking out there swirling around about ways to approach it, it might be useful, just to put out stuff that we might want to hear comments on.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to do.
Is there anything else on ELUs?
I have a quick question. Are the zoning districts or ELUs require the, the use review at higher than 20%? Are they mostly by the university? Are they all over the city? Are they close to low-density residential? Could we get an idea of?
It's mostly in the high-density residential zones. The MU3 zone, which is along East Pearl, the MU4 zone, which is Boulder Junction, the transitional business zones, which are like along Broadway, north and south of downtown, for instance, downtown, the BMS zones, as well as the BR zones, which is like 29th Street and the Village. All over the city.
Okay, but not in single-family residential neighborhoods?
Uh, no.
Yep, good.
Carl, do I remember in the site review criteria, something about a variety of housing types? So if you were in site review and you came in with 100% ELUs, probably wouldn't meet that criterion, would it?
I think what we would look at is kind of the context that it's in, you know, if the, if the area has a diversity of housing types, that might warrant, you know, an appropriate project, but yeah, we would, that would be a consideration.
It is one of the things that we specifically asked for, is a mixture of housing types.
Correct.
Sam?
So coming back to Lisa's question about how you count efficiency units for purposes of percentages, is saying that 20% of your dwelling units can be efficiency ELUs, is that really saying that 40% of the unit count? If we were to count each ELU as one unit?
The two-to-one piece is purely just for the density calculation. For the purposes of the Use Table, it would be a one-to-one unit count to determine whether it trips that threshold or not.
I see. Then I'd be willing to discuss a higher limit, as long as we know what we're discussing. So just to put out there for comments, I could see adjusting it, but not going to 100% personally.
Or not going to removing the use review requirement? Is that what you?
Making it allowed use up to a percent, a higher percentage than 20%?
That's right. And there's, there's L categories as well in there that we, you know, different zone districts are going to have different restrictions.
Okay, food for thought, yep.
I have a question on these as well. Who are they being built for, given that we had several letters talking about Boulder's 2014 in commuters survey, one letter about this one, and it's 2015 Missing Middle Survey Report that rentals are not the top priority for the people we say we want to build housing for? So my question is, who are these being built for? And if they're in different areas throughout the city, has there been any projection done if they are predominantly these ELUs, how much density that would put in to those spaces?
There's been no calculations as to what the density would be with these particular changes. I mean, again, it's, it would still have to follow the density that's in the code now. We're not proposing to increase that intensity.
And has any, have any of those, have those studies been done so that I can just look at the map and I can say, oh, there's one right there, and it looks like X amount roughly?
No.
I mean, I realize that someone has to come forward and say, I'm going to develop it to that, but sort of the maximum allowable density?
I mean, it would follow the same maximum density projections that were done as part of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan update. I mean, that, it's not being increased. It just, it's just removing a process requirement that currently exists.
For the site review?
For use review.
If it goes beyond a certain amount?
Correct.
And only in certain zone districts, right? So if I'm looking, so I'm on the second page.
Second page.
Down at the bottom, efficiency living units outside of the University Hill, there are some that are being changed. But if I look, Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, you've got an allowed going to an L16 in the BRs, and then M and G are going to limited uses as well.
On the following page, page three, that's where you see the changes with the use reviews being lifted in those other respective zones that Carl mentioned, top of page three.
Right, well, you're eliminating that whole line, right? So the places, those are places where there used to be use reviews, because I guess currently there were some zones where there was no use review for over 20%.
That's right.
Right, MU1.
MU1 and MU2.
And four and.
So there were, there were some zones, like the MU4, you had to go through use review from where you'll use MU1 and 2, you didn't. This is part of what we're cleaning up, because I don't really, not sure why that was the case, but, but it would be changing it so that the current staff proposal is to not require use review in any of those.
Correct.
But if there was, if there was appetite, if there was interest on council, like I'm hearing from some of my colleagues, to retain a threshold for the use review. to retain a threshold for the use review, we probably would only want it in the zones that previously had a threshold for use review.
That's probably right.
Not all the zones, because a number of the zones didn't have a threshold before.
All the A.
Yeah, all the As, the ones that had the As before. So, when we come back to figure this out, that's, we should keep that in mind.
Yeah, and Cindy, I'll just point out that in the current state of affairs, the places where these are allowed are typically the higher-density zones, the RH and the MU's. So, this change would allow them in some other additional zone districts, but mostly things that are also high-density. So, the not in, I mean, the lowest density that you can see a use review in is RMX2, which is North Boulder, near where Holiday is, I believe.
Holiday is RMX2, much of it.
Right.
Okay, so, and just so that we pace ourselves tonight, we're going, I think, we're going to do a little problem solving. We're going to hear from the public, and it's very well maybe that we continue this topic to another night. So, just to, so we have a chance to think creatively about what planning board said, what people are thinking, and then, you know, put it back out there for people to give us feedback on. Okay, so is that good enough for this one for now?
Yep.
Right, okay.
All right. So, the next topic is detached dwelling units, single-family units in the high-density residential and mixed-use zones. This was identified by staff as, you know, maybe something we need to tweak in the code. There are currently allowable uses in the high-density residential zones. There were a use review use in the MU zones. So, we raised the question to council about whether they should, if we're trying to get a increased housing capacity, and really, you know, get high-density in these zones, whether they should be prohibited, or maybe required by use review. And the feedback we got from council was, maybe we need to be more flexible for the existing single-family units, but put a use review on any new construction with new criteria, and that's exactly what we've done. So, there is a change in the code that makes them basically a limited use, that we're calling L15 in the RH and MU zones. It would basically say that any existing single-family dwelling that existed by the time this ordinance went to first reading on August 6th, it's a by-right use. They can expand it, change it as they could today. It's just anything after that date would have to go through a use review, and there's new criteria that are proposed in the ordinance.
So, a quick question on that. That seems like a fairly clever way to do that, because it's not making things non-conforming, right? And so, you're saying it's by-right, it's existing, they can renovate without any of the non-conforming use review kinds of stuff.
Well, isn't that what it says?
That is, but I'm saying it's clever, and we might be, we might come back to that kind of concept for some of the things we're looking at later, because I think it's the non-conformance that has got people very concerned in the BR and the BMS, you know, about businesses. And so, the way that you have finessed this issue might be something that we want to come back and think about.
Can you just specify then what expanded per non-conforming use standards means? If it doesn't, it's not non-conforming, but it can be, it has to.
It's a by-right.
It's a by-right, you just have to meet these standards.
It has to have been done before we started. So, in the RH zones, which are intended to be high-density residential, if there's a single-family home in an RH zone that was before August, whatever day it would be put in, and that, it's not even non-conforming. It stays as a by-right use.
Okay, I just don't understand what the expanded per non-conforming use standards means, if it's not non-conforming.
Typically, if you have a use that becomes a non-conforming use, and then if that person or owner wanted to expand that, or renovate the use or whatever, they would have to go through a non-conforming use review. So, it's just like a regular use review, except it caps how much you can expand.
But it's not the houses that were built before. It's not the grandfathered homes.
That would not apply in this case for existing detached dwellings.
Okay, as you've specified in here.
I just don't understand how it's written then. You can expand existing ones per non-conforming use standards. Isn't that meaning, doesn't that mean it's a non-conforming use then? Am I?
No, I think it's a good question.
I don't, it just seems to be undoing what you just.
I think that might be a misstatement on the slide. It would be a by, based on the language in the ordinance, it would be a by-right use, if in existence on August.
Okay, so that's, that's why I'm confused, because that's not right.
Sorry about that.
Yep.
So, it does prompt a question in my mind. So, it's not, it's not non-conforming, because this house is sitting there. Somebody wants to make a change to it. At what point in time does that trigger anything? Or can they do anything that they want with that house?
They would just, they'd be able to renovate it, change it as they could under the previous regulations, as long as they can demonstrate that it was in existence prior to this.
But they couldn't demo it and build a new one, though, right?
Yeah, well, if you demo it and build a new one, then you're subject to the use review.
When does it, when do we cross the line to demo? I mean, is it, is there a rule on that, like 50%, 90%?
There is no stipulation, but I think it'd be a judgment call on, you know, as part of a building permit.
Okay, good.
So, if that existing single house in high-density, would it be able to come in for an ADU?
No, because it, not in an RH zone. ADUs are in the RL and RE and RR.
RE, RR, okay. Okay, so, other than it's not written like we mean it, we got it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so basically, the whole idea is preserve existing, but not build more single-family housing in high-density residential.
Correct.
Okay, that still seems to make sense, okay.
So, another topic we talked about was residential uses in the business regional zones. So, the reason staff had identified this was based on the changes that were made to the BC zones relative to getting residential off the ground floor and incentivizing the retail. So, we posed the question about whether that same restriction should apply in the BR zones, and the feedback we got was, maybe we need to take a different approach in this particular zone in trying to incentivize retail only on major streets, but be more flexible about what happens on the interior of sites and in areas that are not on major streets. So, this is where we've come up with a change that would be a limited use as L16, and it basically says that if you're, if you have a building facing a major street, and we already have Appendix A in the code that identifies major streets, you'd have to have retail of a depth of 30 feet, you know, so like, that basically would face that street, incentivized for retail. And then, beyond that, they could put residential uses on the inside of the site without any kind of special review.
So, but this is just in BR, correct? So, this is just in the Boulder Valley Regional Center? Isn't that where?
That's right, yeah.
So, this will come up again. I think we need to consider how big BR is, because I think BR goes all the way to Folsom and 30th, and so you've got a whole bunch of different typologies in there. And I'm not sure that this really serves us well as a single large zone. It seems to me like we might want it to be two or three smaller zones, some of which are the typology of 29th Street, some of which are the typology of what's, you know, down the street and further west. So, we won't have to address that now. I just want to make that comment. I think this is fine as far as it goes, but I'm not so sure. We need to think about how it's going to work everywhere, because we think about just on 28th and 30th at the mall, and you can kind of see that. But what happens when you go to the Water Street complex? You know, does that still make sense?
Yeah, bearing in mind that we do have an upcoming code change for the BVRC to kind of look at design and retail and housing, those kind of things further. So, it could be, could be something that's explored as part of that as well.
Okay, I have Aaron and Bob waiting on this.
I just wanted to ask, what's the work plan item? What's it called?
We had that tabulated to start later this year, going into next year, you know, depending on our resources and this project and.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, those were excellent points, Sam, thank you. And was there someplace in our packet where that major street definition is contained? I don't remember seeing that.
It's already in the code, so Appendix A has a map that shows where the major streets are. So, like 30th and Arapahoe and.
Appendix A of?
Of the land use code.
Can you point us to where we can find that? Because, maybe in a minute, you can look it up, because I'd like to go just look at that street list. I think that, because I don't remember seeing it, that'd be helpful to. And the other one was, so, if we, if we do do this, and then, for some reason, it doesn't work in one particular development layer, they have kind of a weird setup or something, is there a use review setup for not doing it, or what would be the ability to?
A variance?
There isn't a variance proposed as part of this. Was, is there an otherwise by use review? Yeah, it would be a use review, if it doesn't meet this provision.
Okay, and that's good to know. And where do we find that in the, in the?
It's in the language for L16.
Okay, great, thank you. And we've got the map you passed around, so that's helpful. But if we also can get a sense of how to find that, that'd be helpful, too.
Yeah, I have Bob, and then Lisa.
I see there's an exemption for affordable housing. How is affordable housing defined?
If it's something, if it's onsite permanently affordable housing, meeting the IH program, they would be able to locate in these areas.
So, that could also include a deed-restricted middle-income house? Or are we talking with 60%? Am I, I just wanted to put the definition as?
Yeah, if it includes a deed restriction as part of the IH process, it would be exempt from this.
And do you mean any part of a development?
It means that they could locate within that 30-foot area, instead of it being retail.
Okay, so if they have the deed restricted on the third floor, it doesn't count. But if they want to put deed restricted?
Yeah, on the ground floor.
Okay, so, yep. So, I have a question kind of off of Aaron's and off of Sam's. And some of these BRs are pretty large parcels, and they don't have major streets in them right now, but I would hope we wouldn't allow them to develop without adding some streets, so that you have a framework, a grid. So, is that contemplated? Or how would you address that, so that we get a good urban form, and not just topsy-turvy and stuff happening within one large lot?
I mean, I think the focus of this change was to rely on what's in the code now, and basically preserving those existing kind of furnages that have retail along them, that are on 30th, 28th Street, Canyons, you know, Arapahoe.
Right, and I know we're on BR, and I'll bring this up when we get to BC, which I know we've already dealt with, and maybe it's not going to come up. But I do have concerns for where, like, Diagonal Plaza is. That's a very, I don't know how many acres that is. It's like 20, 20. Who said that? Oh, so, it's, it's like 26 acres, I think, something like that. And, and so, anyway, I would hope that if a development plan comes forward with that, that we would be, would require some grid, street grid, to be put in place so that we have these streets, so that.
I mean, I think that moves beyond kind of just use table type, because that's more like area planning, like identifying where the roads go and.
Yeah. Okay, I'll just leave it where it is. I, okay, so, are we good on this one? Are there more questions, any thoughts? We're feeling this one kind of makes sense, okay.
All right, so the next one is office uses in business zone. Zones was discussed on April 2nd and May 28th, where staff looked at the jobs housing imbalance, and how do we get it, trying to reduce the non-residential capacity in the city? And obviously, the BR zones and a lot of the business zones currently allow office uses without any kind of special review. We raised this as an issue. We propose a restriction that would, would be similar to like the existing M and N requirements that are in the use table, that restrict the percentage of uses within a building. So, in this case, we're proposing a new L17 that would limit office square footage to 25% of a building, and to incentivize onsite affordable units, the L17 provision would permit up to 50% of a building to be office if there's permanently affordable units proposed. So, one thing we want to make clear is that because offices are desirable in the University Hill area, these regulations would not apply to that area. And another thing we wanted to point out is, we have heard a lot of concerns from the business community on this. So, we do have some other ideas of things that could be done to address this. The percentage could obviously be changed, you know, council could increase the percentage to 50% and maybe up to 75% could be permitted with permanently affordable onsite. Another thing that we've been looking at, too, is looking at maybe like a minimum, or actually like a maximum square footage that could be used that would basically reduce the amount of non-conformities throughout the city. So, one thing we looked at is, looking at the BR zones, if you maxed out the FAR to the 2.0 that's permitted there, and took a quarter of that on a property that was like the median, which is roughly an acre in the BR zones, you'd get to about 20,000 square feet of floor area. So, one thing we've been contemplating is, the L17 provision could be changed to say, up to 20,000 square feet of floor area, or 25%, whichever is greater. So, at least that would get at like the larger office projects that could be of concern, but it would still enable some smaller-scale projects to go on without being non-conforming. That's something we wanted to hear back from council on. We also wanted to point out that there's a small correction that is made for L17 that includes computer design and development facilities. That's in the use table as an L17 use, but wasn't listed in the code language. We just wanted to make it clear that that's computer design and development facilities are being added. We also wanted to make it clear that if these uses were rendered non-conforming, that they would be allowed up to a 10% expansion under the current proposal, and that's also on the blue sheet on the DIES.
Okay, we have some questions for you, Mary and then Bob. Wait, Mary then Aaron.
So, Carl addressed my question in his description.
Wait, sorry, oh, that?
It's been addressed.
Okay, Aaron.
So, thanks, thanks for that, Carl. So, speaking of the particular uses that count towards office, I noticed that addiction recovery facilities was one of the included in the definition of office. Why would, why would that count as an office use?
I think it was already in the code. It was already lumped together with those other uses and other zones, so we just carried that.
So, it's sort of a historical thing, and I noticed that also, like, medical, like, patient-doctor office kind of thing.
That's right.
I guess is a kind of office. But anyway, it just might be a point of discussion if we wanted to include addiction recovery facilities in the uses that we wanted, people are interested in limiting. The, thanks for that information on the size threshold. That's intriguing about maybe having a minimum size or a maximum size, but it could be just office. Because I think one of the concerns that I have with this is that you can no longer build an office building in our regional business zone, so maybe there's a minimum. That's, I think that's worth talking about. But what about doing something like the, the single-family home provision that you put in that says that existing ones aren't non-conforming? So, could we do the same thing here?
We, we thought about that. I think our concern was if we allowed existing uses to be not non-conforming, that it would effectively create a premium for those uses. So, those, those uses, if they're not, could be expanded by right, might actually expand significantly, because they don't have that restriction on them. And we didn't want to create a loophole in the code that might further offset the jobs housing imbalance. So, we didn't take the same approach for this.
That's an interesting point. So, but with a non-conforming use, you're allowed up to 10% increase, but you have to go through a use review for any increase, or even a major renovation, isn't that correct? to go through a use review for any increase or even a major renovation, isn't that correct?
That's right.
Could we, say, create something where your expansion capability was limited, but it would be by right up to that, that limit? So that you don't have that whole?
I think you could.
And then you wouldn't have the whole hassle.
Similar to the square footage thing, you could say it can go through a use review to expand a certain amount.
Because I think a lot of the concerns we're hearing from folks is, is the amount of hassle in terms of both time and money involved in the use review process, which is, I think, why people don't want to be non-conforming. So, so I guess there's some options here, like, we could, we could build in some different approaches to this, so.
Okay, yep.
I can't remember what this is in the memo. Have you guys tried to do a count of how many buildings would be non-conforming as, as this is written?
We looked at number of properties, and I think in, like, the BR zones, I think it's like about 1,000 properties could be impacted by this.
Okay. You don't know how many buildings, actual buildings?
Not the, not the number of buildings.
Yeah.
All right, so, some creativity on this one, to massage it. Okay. Anything else, else, Sam?
I mean, I agree with Aaron, that we need to do something that's date-specific, perhaps, so that we don't have a bunch of non-conforming buildings. We may have to think about limits to alterations and expansion, but I really do think that that's probably the biggest point of concern, and so my mind went to the Water Street Office Tower. I mean, that's what, eight or 10 stories tall, and that would be non-conforming under this, I would expect, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, I think we want to be real careful about, about that. I don't want a lot of additional office really anywhere, but I also don't want to make current office non-conforming, that doesn't seem very fair. So, anyway, we'll need to come back to it.
Okay. Okay, moving on.
All right, so the next one is office uses in residential zones was raised as a topic. Currently, under the code, in some zones, one can ask for a use review to have a non-residential use. In those zones, staff had proposed to address or get at the jobs housing imbalance, that perhaps that, the amount that you could ask for in the residential zones be, be limited. So what we're proposing is a new category called U4, that would just say that only up to a quarter of the floor area on the properties could be non-residential use, but the rest would have to be residential. And again, this is similar to the, the last one, where it puts a limitation in a way to encourage more residential uses, because obviously there's policies that speak to increasing the, the housing capacity of the city. So, U4 is proposed in here. We also wanted to make it clear that when we talked about this with council on May 28th, there were concerns about the amount of non-residential uses in the RMX1 zone, so the, the ordinance in the, in Attachment A would actually prohibit any future use reviews in that zone based on the comments. So we wanted to make that clear, so.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So, are coffee shops or sandwich shops offices, or are they retail?
Well, they would be retail.
Okay, then I'll just leave my question until later. Aaron.
And when you say in RMX1, no, no more use reviews, you mean for new office uses, or, but would existing non-conforming ones still be able to do expansions through use review?
They, they would be able to function under their current use review, but they would not be able to expand.
Not even up to that 10% allowed for a non-conforming use?
No, because it puts a, a cap on it, unless we were to change that U4 provision to allow the, the expansion similar to the office uses.
Because I did just, it seems like I'm potentially fine with not allowing new office use in RMX1, but it seems like to lock down 100% the existing ones without allowing them any opportunity for flexibility seems a little harsh.
Okay.
So, the last two topics are things we talked about before. The first is the restaurants in the industrial zones, and the council will likely remember that we had recommended that this be deferred to the East Boulder subcommittee planning process, to learn better about the need and what kind of changes might, we might look at to enable more restaurants in the industrial zones in unison with other changes to the industrial zone that get identified with that process. So there's no changes to restaurants as part of this code change. We also indicated that there was nothing through the use table that enabled us to preserve existing multifamily units in the opportunity zone, so we're, that this is getting at the second ordinance that would lift the restrictions and keep the moratorium in place for demolitions.
Mary? We have questions on that.
You have a question, not specifically on that, but we've, one of the concerns that we've been hearing about is small businesses and the potential loss of small businesses. Was there any consideration given to that as you went through all this?
I think that just the consideration that we tried to loosen up some of the, the retail provisions in, in these zones to kind of encourage, you know, preservation of those uses, but we don't, we didn't find a mechanism through the use table to preserve existing local businesses.
Okay, thank you.
So, in here, though, there is a suggestion of convenience retail in the industrial zones, correct?
That's right.
So, so we, we are taking steps to do a little more availability of convenience stores in, you know, where 40,000 people work in that area, but I agree with the, the thinking deeply about the restaurants as part of the subcommunity plan. That's pretty interesting, because you want to talk about housing, restaurants, and the whole nine yards there, so that probably makes sense.
So that's the bulk of the presentation, so this.
Wait, we have two more people, Aaron and then Lisa.
Well, I was gonna ask about 8347, did you have more on that?
I'm sorry, say again.
I was gonna ask about 8347, did you have more on that?
No, just other than, it just, it would have to be adopted in unison with the other ordinance, that's the only thing we had in it.
Wait, what would be?
Sorry, but the, the one about continuing the moratorium on demolition of multifamily units in the?
Okay.
Opportunity zone. So just want to ask about that, the, the, as I, as I read the 8347, the restriction that would continue would be purely on the demolition of multifamily units in those opportunity zone districts, correct?
That's right.
Great, and right now, you have the, still, but you didn't change the expiration date of the moratorium, right? So it's still June 2020?
That's right.
So I would put that up for discussion. I, I support the continuing of prevention of demolition of multifamily units, but we probably don't have, June 2020 probably doesn't give us enough time to put in place other policies to restrict or prevent those, so.
One thing I might add is, there was a question about the number of units in, in the opportunity zone area, in the RH4 zones and RM1 zones versus other zones. So 60% of the units would fall under this provision. The other 40% are basically existing mobile homes that are in that area that are already protected under that zoning, and then the other units are really the ones that are in Boulder Junction, which are kind of relatively new units that have come online.
Thank you, that's helpful. Okay.
A question.
So does Lisa. So Lisa, then Mary.
Okay, so.
A couple of things, with respect to just this particular one, restaurants in industrial zone, if I look at my packet, it says that staff recommend it not to remove the major streets restriction at this time as to avoid any unintentional consequences. And this has to do with restaurants in industrial zones. They can be internal to the site, but not along the major street?
I mean, there's a number of criteria, but I think the biggest barrier is that they can't be located on a major street, which I think dissuades a lot of restaurant owners from wanting to locate. So it's meant to kind of be internal to sites, to be known to the, you know, local workers there.
Right, but if you're a restaurant owner, you want to make and sell food, and.
Right, so we're just not tackling that right now.
Part of the East Boulder Subcommittee Plan.
Right, but isn't there other, okay, okay, and then I'll make another comment, and that has to do with affordable commercial, and would that be at all an opportunity to do something in the use tables with affordability with respect to commercial or retail?
I mean, same as the, the comment on the local businesses, we didn't find a, a mechanism through the use table to, to preserve them. We, we hear these comments, so it is helping to inform, like, when we move into other code changes that we're going to look at in the future that relate to the industrial zones and the BVRC, future phases of the community benefit project.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask you something about the RH4 zone, and not so much the moratorium, I'm fine with what Aaron is, is, I don't know if you've proposed it, but suggesting, and some of those buildings in the RH4 have unconform, non-conforming office buildings in there that are on relatively large tracts of land. If we extended this moratorium onto the RH4, and let's say there's a large, we heard from a property owner or a representative of Geological Society of America, and I'll fully disclose, I'm a 40-year member of this group, but they have a, a building there that they, that is all office uses, and I do know that they have talked about internally being able to subdivide and maybe do some infill, some residential infill. Would that moratorium prevent, would a moratorium, as suggested by Aaron, would that prevent them from subdividing and building new, not existing residential?
No, because the, the restriction wouldn't prevent the demolition of, or renovation of an existing office building, and in effect, it's getting kind of the city what it wants to see in that zone by converting to residential.
Okay.
And I'd just say, Lisa, that was the, when I was asking about, does it only prevent demolition of multifamily?
Right, right.
I think it was to that point.
And I just wanted to.
Those geologists could still do something interesting.
Yeah, yeah, and I.
We all love geologists.
Yep, we all love geologists. We're gonna speed this up, we got 14 people waiting to speak. Mary.
So just to be clear, tonight, we're looking at the use tables and lifting of the moratorium at the opportunity zone, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so, if we wanted to, could we tonight give direction to, for those instances where there was no way to prevent something through the use tables? Could we provide some sort of guidance to develop an ordinance or something that would accomplish that?
Sure.
That's, okay, so, just wanted to put that out there before the hearing, so.
And just to put a little more meat on that, a little more tofu. Tofu, the idea of trying to get a little more of public benefit out of the opportunity zone, is that what specifically, like?
And, and that. What I'm saying is, yeah, to, like, for instance, protect the small local businesses.
Okay, well, I also am interested in the flip side, which is, hey, after all of this, is there a way to get something useful out of an opportunity zone that we wanted to have happen? And if we put the, you know, we get the right public benefit in place that we want something to have happen. So anyhow, that's also another topic I think we should chew on.
Yeah, just to amplify that, we have an estimate of how much additional developer profit will come as a result of this. I mean, we had a nice analysis sent by Hal Holstein, and that's what he does for a living, among other things, so if they're gonna, developers are going to be making four points extra rate of return, how do we share in that with them? And so I think it's a perfectly good question to say, is it a slightly higher linkage fee if it's commercial? Is it slightly higher affordable housing level, five points more affordable housing? So that we get, pardon me, 25% low-income housing and 5% middle income? So I, I mean, I think I would like to direct staff to think about it, to figure out if there's a way to make a rational linkage so that we aren't wiping out all of the OZ profit that people still are incentivized to, to develop there, but we get more of what we want. And so, Dan, wished I had put this out on hotline today, I didn't have time, sorry, but I do think that there would be some way to adjust the affordable housing components, because I think where we're going to go with community benefit first, if we stick to our plan, is we're going to define it as affordable housing in the site plan review criteria. And so this is just like starting out and saying, you know, can we make that requirement in the opportunity zone as an overlay? And then eventually we'll get to the community benefit, and we'll make it part of the site plan review criteria, but we could even have this apply to by right projects that are going to happen there. So I just want to put that out there.
And so then, the question would be, presumably, some people who might do something in the opportunity zone will not be using any opportunity zone funding mechanisms, right? Like we've heard from Mace Rich, the owner of 29th Street, who says that mechanism is not available to them, but they might do some expansions. So is there any way to tie increased community benefit requirements to utilization of that funding mechanism?
I don't know the answer to that, I might have to defer.
It might be more of a question for Tom.
I don't know either. But we will certainly look at.
Something to look into.
Okay, how about we leave it there? We have people signed up to talk to us, and with apologies, but hopefully this has been informative to all of us. We have 14 people? Okay, technically you have three minutes, but you get bonus points if you use two. All right, and if you can start with your name and address, that'd be great.
Sarah Silver, I'm a resident of Boulder, and I'm here just representing myself, and you all finished on exactly the place I'm starting. So thanks so much to the staff for all the work you've pressed into a very small amount of time, but following the publication on Sunday of some damning New York Times articles, I'd like to suggest that the proposed use table revisions are not totally adequate to the task of generating meaningful value for the city. While code revisions should result in a better jobs housing balance, those same code changes do nothing to generate for the city a fair share of the vast wealth the opportunity zone tax breaks will create for opportunity zone investors. My recommendation, a series of standalone fees that opportunity zone investors and developers must pay to the city above and beyond existing fees. The financial benefits of the opportunity zone financial scheme should accrue to Boulder as well as to those wealthy investors and developers. I suggest the city council consider large-scale dedicated fees for housing, open space, health and human services, transit and transportation, libraries, and all the other currently underfunded budget items that we spoke about earlier today, and I encourage that we not lift the moratorium until those fees are defined and approved. The fees I, I propose should be applied to new developments in the opportunity zone. I urge you to think big. The amount of money the opportunity zone funds are going to make, thanks to Boulder's reputation, are significant, and Boulder should benefit beyond development from, from this financial windfall. If the city attorney says that fees must be applied across the city, then this could be a strong argument for applying an overlay zone to the opportunity zone that limits the use table revisions to the opportunity zone, as well as limits these fees to new development in the opportunity zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a question?
Oh, we have a question, we have a question.
Oh, you have a question?
I have a question. Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
So, just a quick question about what, what I heard you say is that you have a concern about applying the use tables across the, the changes in the use tables here, which are limited to the zones in the opportunity zone. You have a concern, concern about applying it throughout the city. Could you share what those concerns are, please?
So unless things have changed since the planning board meeting, it was our, my understanding that the proposed use table revisions apply across the city. I don't think that's changed. My own personal view is that the changes should only apply to the opportunity zone for the following reasons. The federal government essentially created a new zone for us through the opportunity zone, and we were forced. zone, and we were forced to respond to that new zoning district in order to try to get from this tax incentive what is best for the city. And it just doesn't seem to me to make sense to apply those changes across the city if we weren't going to pursue that initially. So maybe the L1 through 14 should apply across the city, but perhaps not the L15, 16, 17, because those do seem to be sort of specific, specifically designed with the opportunity zone in mind.
But if we were going to pursue that across the city from the beginning, what, what is your opposition then?
I'm not sure we were. So to Sam's point earlier, that the original use table revision process was an attempt to sort of streamline and update the use tables. And then we attached onto it the opportunity zone challenge because it was the tool available. If, so if from my, this is my perspective, that we use the available tool, but in doing so, we are proposing changes across the city that we might not otherwise have proposed. That's, that's really what it comes down to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not sure we agree, but that's helpful. Thank you. Jordan. And then if Evan could be ready.
There you are. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Bunch. I'm an associate at Holland &amp; Hart. I am here representing Mace Rich, who is the owner of the 29th Street Mall. And on behalf of Mace Rich, I would like to voice our support for removing the moratorium, except for the existing demolition on multi-family housing, but also to express our concern about the L17 change regarding the max of 25% of office space in the business zones. And I do want to take a moment to thank the council for recognizing earlier in your comments that there are concerns with creating so many non-conforming uses out of existing office space. That is a large concern of ours, and I appreciate the council recognizing that. To a point that was made earlier, I do want to also express our concern that there was no outreach to the property owners that were affected by this, specifically Mace, Mace Rich is, or the 29th Street Mall is the single largest sales tax revenue generator in the city of Boulder. They account for about 7%. And there was no outreach to them to get their input on these changes, and it would have been helpful if we could have been involved earlier in the process. I know the chamber is going to speak in a minute, and I don't want to step on the topics they're going to cover, but I do want to note that we are in agreement with the comments they'll make, that we don't feel the impacts of the L17 change have been studied effective or sufficiently. As you noted, there's not yet even an idea about how many buildings this will affect, how many non-conforming uses this will create. We think that's something that needs to be studied and really thought through before this goes into effect. As Ms. Honia from Mace Rich will speak to in a moment, this creates a significant barrier to Mace Rich and re-tenanting office uses. Having office uses at the property is very important to the health and growth of the mall. That mix of uses is what allows the mall to thrive. There was a lot of work that went into the development plan that govern-
Go ahead and finish your-
And there was a lot of work that went into the development plan that governs 29th Street. There are significant restrictions and processes that they need to go through in order to re-tenant any space, and those should govern the 29th Street rather than an overall change that touches the entire BVRC.
Okay, we have some questions for you.
Yes.
Bob?
Thanks, Jordan. You also heard us, I think, kind of kicking, spitballing some ideas on how to maybe address this. Did anything that you heard up here, or do you have some ideas of your own about how we might address what we're trying to address, but still leave a little flexibility?
I liked all of the ideas that, that I heard. I think that's something we would have to look specifically at what the square footage calculations are at 29th Street in order to weigh in on, on those numbers. One of the things that we thought might be helpful would be to push this particular item to phase two of the use review, or the use table review, which is going to happen next year, because I believe that's when you all are going to look at the definitions of the different office uses. So this might be appropriate to deal with at that time rather than, than now. Or one of the, the ideas that we like, that I heard not support for, would be to limit this to just new, new development, not to existing, existing buildings. That would be our-
Just a follow-up question. If we kick this to phase two, you'd be okay with the moratorium staying in place?
We would prefer it not stay in place, no. At least-
But as between the two, as between the two.
As between the two, I think we would prefer, oh, that's a tough one. The concern that we have, that actually Councilman Brockett spoke to, is that Mace Rich cannot take advantage of any opportunity zone funds. There are REITs, so the, the way that we feel about the moratorium is that it essentially punishes an innocent property, because we cannot, due to the site plan review process that goes on at 29th Street, we can't move in a new tenant without coming to get a building permit, which is not allowed to do under the moratorium, even though there can't be any, any opportunity funds. So I actually would defer that answer to when I speak with the people from Mace Rich who are here, but we'd prefer both if possible.
Thanks, Ms. Bunch. A couple of questions for you. So you're saying like even a tenant finish would require a building permit that you're not allowed to pull right now?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Because these are, you know, retail spaces, they're, they're pretty massive remodels when we do re-tenant a space.
I hadn't realized it was even that restrictive.
Correct.
But so one of the things that we were throwing around up here, which you sort of referenced, was if it were restricted to new construction, and so say, say that, that existing office were made not non-conforming, maybe restricted an amount that you could expand, but not non-conforming, would that allow you to kind of do your monthly day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year kind of stuff?
I believe that we would need to look at what that threshold is for expanding, but that would address a major concern of ours, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Evan, and then Adam.
My name is Evan Freirish. I just live up the hill from here. And so as a member of the public, this process is very confusing, because you're asking us to comment on things like the efficiency living units, when as far as I can tell, in the opportunity zone, because there's restrictions on residential development right now in the opportunity zone, won't make any difference at all. I mean, I guess that's a question to staff. Basically, if you make these changes, given the moratorium in effect, would you even be able to develop any efficiency living units in the opportunity zone? And, but I understand the process. This is sort of, you're looking at it in the opportunity zone, and then you're thinking of applying it in the future. Well, I want you to think of the idea of creating affordable efficiency living units. I'd like, I think already the way the council is thinking is that whenever we increase someone's property rights within the city so that they can get greater housing benefits out of their property, we should look at the affordability components. And you went through that very long exercise regarding accessory dwelling units with the same ideas, and I think that they very much apply in this circumstance as well. Right now, I looked at properties that have sold within the last year, first under 500 feet, 500 square feet, and then above that to see a comparison. So imagine that if you were buying an ELU right now in the city, that's about $500 to $660 a square foot. So we wouldn't call that affordable. We would call that probably a luxury unit, something that has the potential of an executive rental, things like that. Now admittedly, the pool that I was looking at was quite small. So I gave this all to you in writing. So I would hesitate really without doing sort of numbers like you did on the ADUs to make any decision about it. I think there's an opportunity here, but basically-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Adam, and then Peter Mayor.
So I'll keep this easy and fast. I'm going to copy the work of Sarah and Evan who just spoke. I fully agree with what they said. My particular interest, though, is on displacement of existing residents. I'm very, very concerned about what's going to happen once we open up the moratorium. And if we don't, if we're not properly prepared to deal with new buildings going up where existing ones were, I can't say enough about this area, that it is one of the last bastions of not permanent affordability, but just sort of regular affordability in the town. So it's super concerning to me that we're going to, by accident, get rid of the relative affordability that this area provides in order to build something new. Thank you.
Okay, a quick question on you. Do you feel like if we pass that revision of the moratorium that still prevents multi-family demolitions, that we're kind of covered on that, that issue?
Yeah, that's one aspect, for sure. I think that would help, but, you know, things, things change. I don't know how far along you are in this process and what staff might come back with, but I'm concerned. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you.
So just, just to be clear on your concern, your concern that currently not lifting the moratorium on those high-density residential areas along Glenwood, which is, I think, where most of them are, that we may have missed something somewhere?
So my biggest thing is I'm worried about any changes along in the process, and if we raise, or if we lift the moratorium right now, to make sure that those are going to be permanent changes?
That we, that we never lift that even after the opportunity zone opportunities are gone?
Well, to me, again, maintaining the, or the somewhat affordable areas, if there's any chance that along the line they might get replaced with higher-end units, that is a major concern to me.
Okay, thank you.
Peter? And then Amanda.
So I'm Peter Mayor, co-chair of Plan Boulder. I'm pooling tonight with Lisa Spalding and Alan Feinberg, and I am speaking on behalf of Plan Boulder tonight. So, hope everybody saw this. This is the must-read New York Times from just this Sunday. It says, "The opportunity zones represent a, quote, 'once-in-a-generation bonanza for elite investors, increasing profits by 70% for some." Boulder citizens and councils didn't ask for this Trumpian opportunity, but since it has been thrust upon us, it is our duty to make sure that in Boulder, we capture this once-in-a-generation bonanza for public benefit and to the maximum extent possible. So in December 2018, Plan Boulder recommended that the city enact a moratorium on the opportunity zone to ensure the development be consistent with community values, specifically affordable housing, mitigating the jobs and housing imbalance, and that goes to the commercial and office development, and preserving neighborhoods and small businesses. How can Boulder further our community values while exacting a fair share of the financial windfall from the investment by qualified opportunity funds for the benefit, benefit of the community? Well, Crystal Gray sent you a copy of an article on the Oz from the American Association of Planners from just this June 2019, which contains the following passage. "In places where the real estate market is already strong, e.g. Boulder, localities can adopt and strengthen their regulatory exaction programs such as inclusionary zoning, linkage fees, and hiring and wage standards. Such action will not only help localities maximize the exaction packages, but also encourage developers to turn their attention to alternative investment opportunities that might not have been considered otherwise. Plan Boulder recommends maintaining the moratorium until Boulder has done its due diligence to ensure that the Oz investment will increase affordability. If council lifts the moratorium before demanding that meaningful portion of the financial gains are dedicated to housing that is permanently affordable, and also to affordable commercial and industrial and retail space for small business owners, it will be too late. It's not enough just to limit the losses by preserving the market, market rate affordable housing." So the unlimited expansion of ELUs is one of the most controversial proposals. The planning board did not include it in its recommendation, although, though the vote was three to two, and one member who voted for it agreed that the ELU change was debatable. Plan recommends that council amend the regulation, counting ELUs as half-dwelling units and begin counting them as full dwelling units to reduce the serious problems with parking and other aspects. Increasing the allowable number of ELUs in a project should be a bonus, not an entitlement. If a significant percentage of ELUs are not permanently affordable, they will not reduce in commuting. The other controversial issue before you is the immediate citywide application of land use changes adopted in the opportunity zone. The planning board voted against this proposal, and Plan Boulder agrees with their decision. New regulations should be adopted citywide only after the use standards and table project is complete, and any changes coming out of the East Boulder SubcommUNITY Plan have been incorporated. This will allow us time to see how the new regulations are working within the opportunity zone. Finally, Plan recommends that city can consider creation of an overlay zone across the Oz to enable Boulder to capture meaningful financial benefits from the opportunity zone investment. An overlay zone would also provide a testing ground for the establishment of performance goal, requiring that no development or redevelopment result in a net loss of market rate affordable residential or commercial space. I'm out of time. Thank you all very much.
Tim?
So Peter, what is Plan's recommendation on how we figure out who's using opportunity zone funding?
In terms of how do you figure out who is actually taking advantage of the opportunity zone?
Correct. Given, given the current structure of the legal system in, in Colorado and the United States-
I don't know that we've discussed that particular issue, but I understand that, why it's so critical to know.
Yeah, because, you know, for instance, some will and some won't use opportunity zone funding, and we don't want to penalize the ones who don't.
Who don't, sure.
So anyway-
Is there no disclosure requirements or ability to-
I'd suggest you help us think that through, because I doubt we're going to finish up tonight, so.
Thank you.
Amanda. And as Kate can be ready, is Kate here? Okay, great.
It's late, and I don't know that I have much more to say than has already been said. Amanda Bickel, 1339 Hawthorne. I just, it does make sense to me that you maintain the moratorium on development in the opportunity zone until you've figured out how to extract appropriate community benefit from the windfall to developers. Many of us here really wish to ensure that we maintain economic diversity in the community. You've done work attempting to do that. It appears to me that the opportunity zone provides a really interesting opportunity for doing this, potentially. Let's not blow it. So I would just, you know, I think it's a shame that so much of the period that was available during the moratorium so far was spent working on the use tables. I recognize that may be a useful activity, but there's clearly a whole bunch of other stuff we can do that you all have made reference to already. I think that's great, so I would just encourage you, maintain the moratorium, and let's work as quickly as possible to kind of figure out how to extract those community benefits from this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, and then Leora.
Good evening, good evening. I'm Kate Honi with Mace Rich, and I'm representing 29th Street tonight. I wanted to express our support in lifting the opportunity zone moratorium and our opposition to the proposed 25% office maximum. Mace Rich did not receive any direct mailings about the proposal under consideration this evening, and surprisingly, Mace Rich was not involved in any of the focus groups, which we understand were convened to discuss this proposal. This is surprising, given that 29th Street Mall is the single largest tax generator in Boulder. It generates about 7% of the city's sales tax revenue. 29th Street Mall can only generate this tax revenue if it's occupied by tenants. Our ability to re-tenant vacant spaces is hindered by the moratorium and will be hindered by the proposed 25% office maximum. If the 25% office maximum is imposed, then several of our buildings could immediately become non-conforming. In this case, every time we re-tenant a space, we will need to go through use review. Currently, we already have to wait approximately two to four months to obtain a building permit needed to re-tenant a space. Because of the site review requirements, most of our tenants need to go through some development review process. If we now also have to go through a use review, each re-tenanting will likely take an additional two to four months on top of building review permit, review. Most tenants cannot absorb that time delay. We believe that if pass, if this passes, we will have a difficult time finding new tenants for any vacant space. The businesses that currently operate at 29th Street align with the city of Boulder's goals. For example, our tenants include Zayo, which is a broadband company, and Yui Solar, which is a renewable energy company. These are the types of businesses that Boulder wants to attract and who would be harmed by these certain policies. To help us thrive, please help us thrive by lifting the moratorium and not implementing the 25% office maximum. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Leora, and then Corina. And you're with James and Emily?
Lee.
Already. You have four minutes.
I have how many minutes?
Four.
Four. Okay. I was here in December, along with a lot of other people. We were extremely happy the moratorium was put into place. I thought, great, what city staff is gonna do is they're gonna do a full report on their opportunity zone, not basically just an extraordinarily technical use table, which is very sanitized, as it doesn't look at displacement, doesn't project how many businesses will probably get displaced, how many thousands of people may get displaced, the families, the types of families, what buildings are most likely to get demolished. I was extremely optimistic. I come back, I start, I read this 300, 400, 500-page document, there's, all it says is what you said tonight, which is, "We do not have a mechanism, we do not have a mechanism to instate affordable housing. We do not have a mechanism to help small businesses stay open. We do not have a mechanism to accept, to prevent the displacement of people, except some sort of demolition ban, which, we're not talking until probably 2030 or 2036. I don't know. We have an attorney here. The attorney may support it, may not support it." And getting to the attorney, the problem I understood about the zone overlay is raised by Tom Carr. I understand that some members of council actually were supportive of increasing inclusionary affordable housing percentages, were supportive of increasing linkage fees, were supportive of possibly increasing impact fees, but they heard from Tom Carr, this is what I was told, I never saw his opinion, that this is not possible. So, the eight months were spent looking at tables. Now, for those of you who don't know the problem with the opportunity zone, it's that you come in, you have to buy a property, you have, I think it's 30 months, to invest a certain amount of money. To reach that minimum amount, it depends how much money you spent on the property. Depending on how much money you spent on the property, that dictates how much money you have to now invest in it. To reach that level of investment, you normally have to demolish the existing structure, build a brand-new structure, much more expensive, much more expensive housing, much more expensive commercial. That is what it's incentivizing. That's why the New York Times and a bunch of other publications are saying this is simply a tool to make the richest segment of society much, much richer. So, what we're looking at is a tool for gentrification, and we've wasted eight months, and you're about to raise the moratorium without a single thought to displacement. It's killing me, honestly. I have not been sleeping well this last week. Maybe you don't believe it, but for me, this is the number-one thing that's been concerning me now for weeks and weeks and weeks, and I wish it would concern you to the same extent. Now, if our dear attorney doesn't, can't come up with a solution, get outside opinions. Spend time, don't lift the moratorium, find solutions. I'm not even talking about trying to scratch back some of the profit from the richest people. I'm talking about actually trying to preserve and protect the small businesses there. I go to the industrial zone, I don't want to see that entire industrial zone emptied of all the workshops, the small startups, all the small businesses there. Has anybody talked to them? Has anybody realized the extreme, how tempting it is to buy those properties and demolish them and start over? What are we gonna do without those people? And just finally, the other day, just yesterday, I heard a business owner there, a tenant, say, "Oh, I'm not coming in. I don't want my landlord to know I'm coming in." So, you don't even hear from some of the tenants. Their landlords are about to make bank, they don't want them talking here. So, you have to go to them. You have to ask them, "What can we do for you?" So, you don't all leave Boulder. But anyway, I'm just, I'll save you the last 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Corina. And then Elon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Corina Julka.
You can pull that microphone down. There you go.
My name is Corina Julka, and I'm here because I think the opportunity zone program doesn't really feed in Boulder. It won't provide any relief to the community as it should be intended to be. This program, originally created with intention to ease the increase of the demanding affordable housing, will actually do the opposite. Hundreds of people will be facing displacement, and if it's true that the moratorium will protect high-density properties, we'll still have people that rent spaces for little businesses, and they also need to be protected. I think that the only way we can protect everyone in Boulder from the tax-free break incentive for developers is to reevaluate why, in the first place, a project like this, the opportunity zone, was giving a green light in Boulder. Dear councils, with all due respect, I would like the moratorium to remain while a group of outside experts suggests solutions for the opportunity zone project. Thank you. I, myself, I live in the 2995 Glenwood, and it's one of the apartments, probably one of the least expensive, that, for two-bedroom apartment in Boulder. And I would really, it makes me really sad that maybe, you know, in a few years, we'll have to leave Boulder. I really love Boulder, and I think you guys also love Boulder, and I'm optimistic. I think that things are gonna get better, and I'll just think about this opportunity zone project and do what you think is right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corina. Yeah, thank you for coming. Okay, Elon.
The council has put a lot of weight on the demolition ban. They're relying on that to help protect existing communities. I know from the area I live in, many times somebody wants to demolish a house, but they don't really demolish it because of regulations, so they pretend that it's just an improvement. And in effect, it gets demolished, the house, but they leave one wall or something. So, I'm saying that if you have a demolition ban, the developer is still out with you, and they will have a big improvement, and people will be displaced, but technically there won't be a demolition. So, to rely on the demolition ban won't get you very far. Now, I heard one or two of you ask, Sam Weaver asked Peter Mayer for input. Those guys, they don't ask anybody for input. You give them a task, they do the work their own, they know better than everybody here. They don't waste their time asking us. Now, since you're employing them, I think you should do something about it. I heard you, when, a few months ago, when we came here, you all instructed them to look for solutions through the use table. They're telling you the use table is not the solution, doesn't have, it's a tool, but it's not the right tool. So, start from scratch. Put the use table aside, there's no urgency. Find, look for other tools, and again, if they don't come with the tools, ask around. You ask, Peter Mayer, ask, you know, public, you know, go into a, what's it called, a, when you purchase entire public...
Crowdsourcing.
Well, I can't remember the term. Many people are getting very rich with opportunity zone, and the New York Times is trying to investigate who, well, they're showing that Trump is benefiting from it. The opportunity zone in Boulder was foisted upon you. It's worth your time and resource, in my view, to figure out who's actually benefiting, who owns the land, who purchased some land before it became an opportunity zone, there's public interest in that. And please, first, solve the problem of securing the residents of people living in the opportunity zone, and only then lift the moratorium. Okay? First things first. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxine? And if Andrea could be ready.
I'm here tonight to ask you to not lift the eight-month moratorium. Euphemistically called the opportunity zone, the question here is the opportunity for whom? These are some of my primary concerns. This is a federal law enacted under the Trump administration to supposedly help distressed communities. However, nothing in the ordinance that you want to pass here in Boulder improves the situation of small businesses and its residents of the opportunity zone. On the contrary, the tax-free status conferred on the opportunity zone on capital gains is designed to cause redevelopment across, and this is happening across the U.S., and this program is already causing gentrification and providing more opportunity for those who already have more than enough opportunity, and that is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea, and then Lynn?
Good evening. Andrea Menegale here to speak on behalf of the Boulder Chamber, 2440 Pearl Street. First of all, I want to acknowledge the extensive work that's been done by staff and council to look at what we can see being addressed, what kind of, you know, expectations we can have in the opportunity zones and zones across the city. I want to also thank the council members tonight for acknowledging some of the concerns we've raised thus far, and also staff for acknowledging those concerns as well. We've written to you every step of the way, since the opportunity zone had been implemented, to, still writing today, to continually bring the feedback that we're hearing and input we're getting from our members. As addressed here tonight, one of the most significant concerns we still have is this limit on 25% of a building in the business zones for office uses. We understand what you're trying to do, we just don't know if this is the way to go about addressing that concern that some have expressed. If this element of the ordinance is passed forward, you're gonna immediately create new, non-conforming uses in existing buildings throughout Boulder, and the economic impacts of that action to this day have not yet been studied. So, we ask for information to really try to understand what the magnitude is of that decision. We gave you those numbers that we got from staff today, and it looks like that in some way, shape, or form, 22,000 properties are gonna be affected by changes in the opportunity zones. There's gonna be several thousand, so we don't really know the accurate number of the implications of what happens within the opportunity zone, how it's gonna affect other properties. So, we ask that you don't underestimate the impact that going to use review could have on some of these folks. It does disincentivize those that have existing buildings, opportunities to redevelop those older properties that house many of our small businesses here in Boulder. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Andrea. Lynn? And then if Martha could be ready.
Lynn Segal, Boulder. Yeah, those 22,000, that's exactly what we need. There's gotta be correction here in Boulder. This is not sustainable. All of your sales tax revenue is not gonna begin to cover all the expenses of the open spaces we heard about tonight, 300 million for the real plan. All these impacts, efficiency, this is on steroids. Efficiency living units are not efficiency living units. Those mean one parking space per person, as we discussed with Steve Pomerantz on the Hill with $200,000 parking places for the Hill Hotel. The model you want is Marpa House, and you let that slip away. You could have bought Marpa House. You gotta replace what, the Marpa House concept. Now, it's gonna go through landmarks, then we'll see what those developers do, because they've got constraints. You need to put constraints on this opportunity zone. You need to sue the heck out of the federal government for putting this on us unfairly, without coming before the city council. Not okay. Moratorium, complete moratorium, nothing that's different than the rest of Boulder. You know, we've got area plans, we've got the 30,000-foot view here, and now we have Washington, D.C. in Boulder, Trump Town here. Is that what we want here? Haven't we got decades' worth of unaffordable housing? And what are we doing about it? What's happening? This is not getting better.
Thanks, Lynn. Martha? And then Renee.
My name is Martha Larson, and I'm glad to have an opportunity to also stress my own support for your continuing the moratorium on the opportunity zone, so that you can really take a broader view of how it's gonna affect the average citizen. I'm a working poor person. Two years ago, I did a lot of door-knocking for the people that were elected to this council, hoping to help increase affordable housing and to promote opportunities to retain our small businesses here in Boulder. And I believe the city staff made a good faith effort, but again, that we were looking at minute details and not how this opportunity zone will, in fact, possibly create a community benefit. So, I support the council stepping back and taking a broader view of what could you put in place that might really, as a prior person mentioned, linkage fees, like all the things that have been mentioned, taking that broader view to figure out how you can retain this as a place that has a diversity of residents, including people that are servicing your stores and your retail and restaurants. And I have an MBA. I never thought I'd wind up being a working poor person, but I have, and I wasn't aware of this opportunity zone at all. I'm sorry that it wasn't on my radar, but as soon as it became on my radar, I've heard all the national reporting on opportunity zones, and frankly, how little community benefit they provide, how they are a tool for gentrification. My understanding is 90 citizens gave input into this, and I just want to urge that we seek broader community input, that we make the broader community aware that, I don't really know how it came here, it sounds like it may have been forced on the council, it is a federal program, but I think we have a right as a community to take the steps to figure out what impact is this gonna have in our community? How can we make sure that if it does go forward in our community, that there is community benefit? That the things that I have heard tonight, I still hear the desire for affordable housing, to retain small businesses.
Ma'am?
I don't think lifting the moratorium right now is gonna accomplish that, or just approving these table use changes will accomplish that.
Renee?
Hi, Renee Hamel, 5000 Butte Street, Vista Village, in the opportunity zone. I'm here to echo what others say about why not to lift the moratorium at this time. I echo the sentiment that it deserves a lot more consideration about how to allow development in the opportunity zone that promotes affordable housing and other public benefits and avoids all these potential problems we've heard about. I also don't know, you know, how this could affect the mobile home zone. I know that that's protected zoning, but could someone come in with a ton of money and buy my park and redevelop it as a higher-end park? I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but it's something I would be concerned about. Another reason for us to keep the moratorium in place. And then even the fact that these two ordinances under consideration are designed to go together gives me great pause. It sounds like the use table needs a lot more consideration from all the questions I've heard. I don't think you guys are really ready to vote on it tonight, at least I hope not. And then the other opportunity zone ordinance wouldn't really fly, I think. And I didn't prepare my comments in advance too much, so I'm sorry if I'm stumbling here. But I do hear with some sympathy what the Mace Ridge representatives have to say, and I think it would be great if there was some way to, you know, keep the moratorium in place and develop some other kind of ordinance that, you know, allows for, you know, tenant finish and, you know, those kinds of things that are needed to keep these, you know, important properties functioning. So, thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you for staying here so late. Okay, so with that, we're gonna close the public comment. Thank you all. So, it's 10:46. I think it would be useful if we, well, we have to continue the meeting, but provide a bit of guidance to staff on a few of these key items, and then continue it. Does that sound like we got a little more gas in our tank? Yeah, but I would also want to have the opportunity to write in. Right, right, right. I think we'll do this, okay. Okay, so, motion to continue this meeting? Still moved? All those in favor? It is unanimous, and I guess I should say a little more solar on our panels to do a little more talking. I had some thoughts about how we might, but...
I have some questions.
Okay.
So, to Mr. Swetlick's testimony in regards to leaving the moratorium on the residential... So, to Mr. Swetlick's testimony in regards to leaving the moratorium on the residential areas, essentially, I think what he was saying is to leave it in perpetuity, is that something that we can do?
Yes, you could make a development regulation that banned demolition, though you'd obviously have to think that through and have some exceptions.
That would be great.
In that specific area?
Yeah.
Or for the duration of the opportunity, okay.
You could do a development regulation that's permanent, if that was something you want. But again, I'd urge you to think through how you'd do that and the restrictions, and give us a little time to work on it if that's what you want to do, Mary.
Thank you. And then to another testimony regarding saying that keeping the moratorium in place for those residential areas was not enough, that rehabilitation could happen and still displace residents, is that something that we, that could happen? Or, yeah, is that something that could happen where they would, where through opportunity zone funding, they would come and rehabilitate buildings?
Anytime you prohibit demolition, you have to define what demolition means. And so I didn't draft this ordinance, so I'd have to look to see how you would work, but clever people can often get around well-intentioned restrictions depending on how you define what demolition means. Is it demolishing everything? So if you leave one wall standing, that's not a demolition? Is it demolishing the majority? Is it demolishing the outside? We have been through this in the landmarks ordinance over time. I'm not sure about this ordinance because I said I didn't write it, but my guess would be there is some truth to that, unless these guys tell me that the ordinance is absolutely rock solid, which is virtually impossible to do. So clever people could generally, I would agree with you, Mary, clever people could find their way around it.
Okay, great, thank you. And then with respect to the testimony about mobile home parks, is that something that could happen where somebody could come in and buy the whole park and then turn it into luxury?
I think under the mobile home zoning, it has to stay manufactured housing.
Right, right, but they could come in and buy it and then replace all of the homes and displace all the people and replace all of the homes with brand-new homes? Is that something that could conceivably happen?
I think conceivably.
But do our mobile home regs prevent arbitrary evictions? I mean, we've done a lot of work on this.
Yeah, there's some protection, that's what I'm trying to, I was trying to think through, is that actually possible? Then Mary used the word conceivable, so it's certainly conceivable, I just, I would have to work through what we have in place to protect them.
Can I just follow up? Yeah, go ahead, but we have a list going here.
So, can I follow up on Mary just for a second? Could we, in the zones that right now we're considering continuing the moratorium, could we put a moratorium on manufactured housing so that they can't get rebought, resold, transactions can't happen? I mean, we've just gone through quite a bit of effort with Orchard Grove, who was sold, and then it was bought by a new out-of-town mobile home landlord, and the water rates went up, some rents went up, and it's become difficult for the people who live there.
Okay.
And so my question is, so you wanted some input?
Well, I know.
So my question is about that. So, Mary, take it back.
And my answer is, that's an excellent question. I think, though, there might be some legal challenges with doing that, and some constitutional problems. Just tell someone they can't alienate their property.
Right.
Big step, and might be considered a taking.
So I think tonight what we want to do is go, hey, we want to figure that out, and create a list of things that are on some sort of, I'm going to go ahead and put it out there, some sort of overlay zone for the opportunity zone to make sure we are getting what we want. So, we have a list, Mary, did you finish?
Yes, I'm...
Because then I have Erin, then I have Cindy. Then I'm going to try to see if, I know we have a long list, I want to see if we can get somewhere tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. So I just wanted, just a quick comment there, a couple of the people in testimony, saying the staff didn't take input, I just want to make it clear, our staff takes input, they've worked really hard, they've done public outreach. There probably could have been some more mailings to property or to other residents, but I just wanted to defend how you conduct yourself and to some of the criticism. After that, I would just say, we can just get questions out on the table, and then...
And this call, good. I would like to give us a little direction. Okay, do people have questions that are raising their hands, please?
I have a question.
Okay, Cindy.
So, and I would also, I mean, I think the staff isn't perfect, but I think they worked really hard on this, and I appreciate the work that's been put in. I mean, it's, talk about a rock and a hard place. So, thank you for that. I'm curious about whether or not Mr. Fryrick talked about the cost-per-square footage of the ELUs, whether there's, I don't know where he got his numbers or how he did that, but I'd be curious in seeing how that pencils out, as we say. And also, I wondered if there is any possibility, there is a possibility, is there a probability of doing an exception for, and I don't know, because I haven't looked at all the zoning within this, but the 29th Street area in terms of this issue of hindering tenant spaces by going through the different kinds of reviews. So that's something that I'm curious at seeing, without undoing the things that we want to not undo. How about that?
Okay, well, that sums it up. Okay, Lisa, what's your question?
Okay, my question is, could we consider in the opportunity zone increasing the commercial linkage fees? So it's, we're just questions. Could we consider including the percentage of inclusionary housing? Could we include a designation of affordable commercial that helps keep small businesses in place? And could we, yeah, and I think Cindy, you asked my question about the cost-per-square foot, I'd like a little more information on the ELUs and if they truly are affordable. Doesn't sound like it.
Okay, Sam?
So, I too want to know what our options are for an overlay zone. I think the L-17 restriction, we have to continue working on is my guess. So if we can do a trick in the BR zone, so I don't know that BMS is going to be much of a problem, and so I would love your opinion on is BMS with the L-17 restriction a problem? Is BT a problem? But we know that BR will be a problem, and so, you know...
We're talking about, tell people what L-17 is, just so.
So L-17 is a limitation restriction which says 25% office space in the three zone districts I just named, Boulder Main Street, Business Regional, sorry, Business Main Street, Business Regional, which is the 29th Street Mall, everything between Folsom and 30th, and Arapahoe, and is it Iris? I don't remember what the northern one is. And then, so I'd just like to see those zone districts addressed separately so that we can, because if BMS is not going to be a real problem with that, or BT, Business Transitional, is going to be much of a problem, I'd like to know that. And then the BR district will be something that I think we're going to have to look at kind of separately and maybe play the trick that Erin suggested, which was done with the date, so that we end up with a lot less non-conforming, or maybe none. And I think those are the major issues.
Yeah, can I just call it? So that, thank you for that. I mean, I would like to see a full exploration of that, you know, the trick as you call it for existing construction. But if we're going to apply something like that, it seems like we may as well apply it in BMS and BT as well. So I agree that there'd be much less of a problem there, but why not?
Right, no, that's a good point, that's a good point. And then, yeah, I think we need to know numbers on ranges of cost for the efficiency living units. I think it's going to be an outstanding question. And I'm really interested in what Mary was asking about protection of the current high-density residential. That is critically important. And so if we leave the moratorium in its current form, I believe that that would stop people from being able to make an application for a site review, or an application for demolition permit, or an application for, you know, a building permit that was significant. I think we've got to make sure that that's as tight as it can possibly be, because I don't want clever people getting around the intention here. So whatever we can do, and I think somebody raised a really good point about market rate affordable commercial space, so there is a lot of that in the opportunity zone, and do we want that going away as well? So another thing that I think we should look at is, you know, places I'm familiar with are between 55th and Foothills and north of Arapahoe, you know, there's a whole cluster around Western Avenue of very creative, interesting businesses, and really all through the opportunity zone. And so I think we need to think about some measure for preserving commercial affordability in places that are naturally commercially affordable. So I would ask what staff's thoughts on that was.
Can I just add to that? And if there isn't something that we can do to create affordable, maintain the affordability, another option might be to, if there is displacement of small businesses, that the displacer would cover moving expenses plus the change in rent for some period of time.
Well, could I add to that? When you get displaced, that's assuming you can find a place you can go to. And so I would, I'm curious in terms of how many of those kind of places are there? I certainly don't want to end up with displacement.
Right. Okay, so we've given you a bunch on the opportunity zone overlay idea and things that we'd like to see encompassed in there, and we're going to want your feedback on that. But we also have a couple of issues under the larger use table. So we've talked a little bit about the office space issue, other than the date, though, you didn't, you talked about, did you have other specific things, guidance for them about solutions to it besides the date?
So there's two dates. There's the date which a building would consider to be by right, you know, previous to that date. Then there's how far we need to extend to the opportunity zone, which is what Erin brought up, sorry, the moratorium, that's going to cover the residential. And so the residential moratorium, I think we need to ask questions about the opportunity zone program design, because there's some period of months in which you have to make a certain amount of investment.
Yeah, yeah, I got that part. I was just, did you want anything else on L-17? Setting aside the opportunity zone stuff, what other guidance do we want to give them on the use table stuff?
Well, I guess I would say, I would look for options that we can discuss, because we don't have to make a final decision.
Right.
But ideas that I think are worth exploring are saying that everything built earlier is by right and could expand up to a certain percent by right, but maybe not past that, you know? And the other one being that maybe you could build a small building, a small new building, and you guys may not like that, but we could at least have a T-Dot for conversation.
It's not office.
Yeah, sure.
It's not.
Or it has a small component of office in it.
Okay, and we also talked about somehow, some people mentioned figuring out a solution to the 29th Street Mall, who can't avail themselves.
Do you mind, Lisa?
No, I don't.
On that question, thanks for bringing that up, Cindy, but I wonder if that might be more of, not just 29th Street, but saying, I mean, if this is going to go on for longer, could we say that something as minor as a tenant finish is allowed? You know, because like when we first, when this moratorium first was put in, we carved out a few things, like you could still do a couple hundred extra...
One clarification is that there's nothing in the moratorium that prevents tenant finishes. The ordinance actually focuses on new floor area.
Yeah.
So it's expansion, it must be expansion.
But there, Mace Ridge is reporting that they're not allowed to do a building permit for a tenant finish right now.
I don't understand how it would hold up a tenant finish.
Yeah, in the current moratorium, the only thing that it would restrict is a conversion of space. So if they have a retail space today and they want to convert it to office, that would require them going through a discretionary review process. That is what currently is prohibited by the moratorium. But if there's a retail space or a restaurant space now, and they want to re-tenant that with the same use, that would be allowed.
Yeah, I think you're talking about mix of adding up.
Just so that I could be, so we can be clear, so if it was a retail store and you wanted to turn it into an office, that would not be allowed, is that correct?
That's correct, because it would need to go through a discretionary review, which is currently not allowed.
Okay.
But also vice versa.
Correct.
Right, so you couldn't take office and turn it into retail either. Maybe you can sit down with the Mace Ridge, give them a call and find out what difficulties...
So...
Yep, we can do that.
I thought they'd started their process sometime before all this, before the odds was dumped on us.
Right. So can I just jump in, just to ask one question? I want to acknowledge staff and all of their hard work, and I think they have done an incredible job. We have heard, and I want to thank you for that, I think it really shows in a lot of the thought that has been put into this. But I do want to raise the issue of the property owners being contacted, and I don't know what we can do, well, I do know, we could send them notices, and I think we know who's in that, those zones, the properties. And one of the things that was interesting tonight, we had this open space in Mountain Parks master plan, and they had gone through the nine-step program, and we didn't have any upset people. And I'm wondering if there's a way to, and I don't want to delay this, but...
I was just going to say...
...incorporate the nine-step program into this process.
Well, okay, we're coming down the home stretch of this council.
I'm done with...
Oh, okay. But, I mean, one thing we might want to think about is on some of these issues is convening a working session.
Working group?
Well, again, we have two months to finish up which portion of this we're going to finish, but one could convene, I mean, Tom's done this around different ordinances, is to have a meeting with different business owners to go, okay, what about this, what about that? And try to shape some of this.
Yeah, and I like that.
Okay, do you want to speak to us, or you just...
Yeah, if you're ready to wrap up, I thought it might be helpful for us to summarize a little bit of what we've heard and just check in on some of that.
Okay.
But if there are other questions or comments, it'd be great to get them...
I think you're going to provoke a few more comments, but why don't you start summing up what you think you've heard, and we'll tell you if we had more.
So I might go ahead and start, and then I'm going to look over to Carl and Andrew and Charles and chime in if I missed anything. First, I think thanks for all of the feedback and the comments, it's helpful and really helpful. Related to the use table changes specifically, I heard things around the moratorium date itself, bring back options related to office, related to ELUs, and related to 29th Street. Related to, then I think the other big focus of the conversation tonight was really around the understanding what the benefit or the community benefit should be related to the opportunity zone program, the financial program itself. That piece was outside and not included in the direction that council gave us prior. So that is, that's a pretty big scope shift. What I'm hearing is that there's interest in exploring that. And so I think what we need to do is probably, as a staff, get together to understand what that looks like, and then bring back some options and recommendations on how to move forward on that, so we can understand what that looks like. So that's the one big thing that I think is new in what was the previous direction given to staff. So I'd like us to huddle a little bit on that before we start just bringing forward proposed solutions, to really understand what's the scope and expectation of that work before we embark on that piece, so...
And can I throw out there, this is a slight shift, but we have talked about it before, is the idea of, yeah, let's figure that piece out, and oh, by the way, hey... is the idea of, yeah, let's figure that piece out, and oh, by the way, hey, the whole reason this ever even started was Diagonal Plaza, and we at one point had talked about, hey, can we actually get something useful out of all this? So I still think we should keep that on the table as still ambition of this whole process is that maybe we can actually get something done that we wanted to have done, in addition to just ensuring we get enough community benefit out of what might more randomly happen there.
So.
I don't know, do people agree on that?
Yeah.
To try to shape that conversation a bit, around Diagonal Plaza?
Yeah. Towards that, I have a question on that. Why has the, why has Bura never done anything towards Diagonal Plaza? I understand they're multiple owners, but nevertheless, it's a blighted area, and it has been, yet nothing is, and.
Is that's council's discretion? We'd have to kick that off?
It is council's discretion. I mean, it's been that way for years, and.
Well, it's time that a council, anyhow, I think we could just start that process.
It doesn't have to be right, the, under this zone.
Okay, Sam?
Maybe it does.
Well, you could just add. No, no, hang on. There's two people waiting.
Okay.
Sorry.
So I was just going to say that, you know, we have a community benefit project coming, right? Where we are going to put community benefit into the site plan review criteria, that's the intention, and define that as affordable housing, right? However that looks. So Chris, when you're huddling, one thing you might think about is, if we left the moratorium in place through the community benefit project, would we be able to do something in a community benefit definition that could apply to both the opportunity zone and everywhere else where we have the hype moratorium? So I, so just think about that, is there a way to use a community benefit Phase One project to have an impact on getting community benefit out of the opportunity zone?
Yeah, we can look at that.
Okay, Erin?
Just real quick, I just, and to pin down whether or not we can change requirements, depending on whether they're using this funding, I think that's a really important question for how we move forward.
Which, which we don't know, which we can't know necessarily.
Well, that's the question for staff, is whether we can find that out, and whether we can apply different standards.
So.
And wait, I have Lisa and then.
Okay. So I did, in our discussion tonight, want to bring up Diagonal Plaza, and I know we've kind of already done B.C., but from my perspective, it's critically important that whatever happens in the Diagonal Plaza be well-planned, and have grided streets, have abundant affordable housing, have abundant affordable commercial, local office space. And I don't know if that requires a area plan, sub-area plan, what it, what it does, or do we get it with some kind of an overlay and move forward from there? But I certainly would not want to let the Diagonal Plaza develop topsy-turvy, given there's like 26 acres in there.
Yeah. Okay, Cindy?
So, one of my concerns, and it's a major one, because I think there's been so much misunderstanding, and I think Chris has pointed to some of that, in that staff hears us say one thing, and then we hear a bunch of other things, and then we go off in another direction, and now we're off in another direction, which I think is a good one. But I would like to incorporate some of the community into making some of these comments. We talked about Tom huddling with business. How do we bring in more community members so that people can give their concerns, both pro, con, whatever, neutral, as we move forward with this, rather than having to be reactive and having a whole lot of people upset about this? So that's one of the things I'd like to explore, is how we can bring more of the community into this process, so people actually get to talk through it with our planning staff as well, moving forward on some of these, and there are people who actually like these use tables.
Yeah.
What's more.
Yeah, who wants to? Okay, so.
Well, I'd just like to put a little bow on the use table piece of this, because I don't think, you know, the idea had been, the use tables were necessary, maybe not sufficient thing that we needed to do. We needed to take a look at them, because we knew that we could be getting stuff we didn't want. And so I think this is still an important project, we teed it up at the retreat, and so I would like to see us finish this. And we can decouple that decision from whether we're ready to raise a moratorium or not. But I really would like to see staff's good work, that's gone into the use tables, the three or four things that we need to finish up, and then move that on down the road, so that will, the new council can be ready for Phase Two if they want to, or whatever else. But many of these suggestions are improvements in the mechanics, and they're tightening. Almost all of them are further restriction on uses, with the notable exception of the efficiency living units. I think everything else is, so I think there's a lot of value in that project.
Neighborhood retail, that was. The neighborhood retail, that was a loosening.
That was a slight loosening, right?
Well, and also the jobs housing balance, I have to commend staff for coming up with some recommendations on how to.
But I guess my point is, I think we're so close on that, that whether we decouple it from the moratorium, I'm fine either way, I want to have the discussion. But I really do think that it would be great to get this wrapped up, because most of this is a big improvement. And you can tell the planning board members, former planning board members on council, really, I think, understand why these, I know they're really super boring, but we need, like this L category is a big help. So I'm sorry to keep going on, but I just don't want to lose sight of the good progress we've made to get here.
Okay, so let's pause and see if people agree with that sentiment. The two big issues are.
Finish.
ELUs and the office space. So we just talked about how we might address those, and then we could, we're pretty dang close to finishing this piece, especially I think if we took the heat off by decoupling it from the moratorium. Oh, okay, not, not for him.
Yeah, exactly, that's not the deal.
Okay, all right, okay, well then, then fine, then let's get on it, we have two months left to get this right.
But just to speak to that, I mean, I agree this is getting close, but it was, I mean, these two things were put together for a reason, and it's part of how we're working more or less together on this stuff. And there's a lot of restrictions in these use table changes, and if they're done by themselves, and then the moratorium goes on indefinitely, I.
And just to clarify for everybody listening, not the moratorium on demolition of.
No, no, totally on board with that, no.
It's the moratorium and all the other.
Link it, moratorium.
Yeah.
So I think what we've heard tonight is a general sentiment to get more community benefit out of it, and so the only reason that I was.
Wait, we're switching to opportunity zones. I just want everybody to follow the conversation.
Well, I mean, that's where the objection came from.
I have one more question on the use tables before we leave that. What we haven't addressed is application only in the opportunity zone or citywide?
Well, I think most of these changes aren't controversial, except for the two.
Right, I'm just, I agree, I'm just asking the question, because it was hanging out there.
Oh, okay, well, let's see if we have some agreement. That generally speaking, this use table stuff was started to be citywide, it applies citywide, and there's only, aside from one and, is it?
Four.
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 One and four, which there's a lot of detail still to be figured out, there's largely agreement, the planning board passed this unanimously, so is that generally the sense where we're headed, yeah? Okay.
To go citywide.
To go citywide, but we have to figure out one and four. Okay, does that still work for you guys? Okay. Anything else on, do you want to speak to us about anything else you heard?
Only other thing that might be helpful, I think, office, what I heard pretty clearly is bring back some of those options of ideas that we had.
Yeah.
On the ELUs, it might be helpful if we could just get a quick pulse of where folks are at, of explore additional options of changing the percentage, or, or nothing at all, no changes to ELUs. I gotta, I'm not sure I, we got a good read on, on where council members are at. So before we go do a bunch of work on options, if, if there really is an interest in changing ELUs at all, that would be helpful to hear.
There was some question about what we know about how affordable they actually are, and I don't know if that's knowable.
The speaker that spoke about that and sent in the analysis based on some sales analysis of what current units that are under 500 square feet are currently selling $4 per square foot. We could try and go do some additional real estate analysis based on that. I think what we're really looking for is, we're looking at changing a land use regulation related to the allowance for how many ELUs, so it'd just be great to get some feedback on, is there interest in changing it, or not changing it at all?
Okay, so.
One question I would have, and I'd need more information, is this whole idea that when it comes to density, we count two of these for one unit? And so that, that brings up some questions. And then, for me, I would be okay going a little bit higher than 20% before a use review was triggered, but I don't think I'm really interested in going much higher than 40%, just because of, I like a mix of uses. And I would like to see if they go up that high, I would like to see a certain percentage of that be affordable.
It's just my input. Okay, no, no, that's cool. Cindy, then Mary, then Erin.
So I am not interested in going above the 20% without triggering the review, and I brought this up last time, because I think there has been such a rush to building rental units in this community, that become very extremely expensive. It's a way of gentrification, regardless of kind of sizing. So, so even if they're smaller units, if the developer can build more, they're more profitable to the person who's doing the development. And that's the thing that causes then their higher prices to pay for the rent, and therefore the gentrification is happening, even though we may think that it's supposed to be helping. So I'd like to see it kept to a lower level, and I'm also concerned with this counting, two is one, and the effects of that.
Mary?
So I'd like to suggest that we go with the planning board consensus conclusion on this one, which was basically, leave it alone.
Leave it as is.
Okay, we got one at 40, one at 20, one at, well, I guess those are two for status quo.
Mary, this was 20.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I got it. So you had status quo.
I will note, the planning board did not have consensus on this, they had a three to two split with a three-person majority wanting to take away the use review requirement, but in order to get the entire package passed unanimously, they dropped it. So it was not, it was not a consensus on that. I just pointed, we had, there were three goals in this project, and one of them was incentivize additional housing, wasn't that the first one? And this is the only thing that really addresses that. So, I mean, this is the only piece, is raising the threshold on ELUs that incentivizes any additional housing, which was theoretically one of the goals. So I would just strongly encourage us to keep on the table at least a raising of the percentage. And just to point out that, that while a small unit may not be cheap, if we're going to look at what is the price of one of these, well, what's the price of one that's twice the size? Because that's what it's sort of being traded off for. So, and so if the one twice the size is cheaper than the small one, well, gosh, we should really get the one twice the size, but it seems very unlikely, so.
Okay, so that's more like in the 40 range?
I mean, 40, 50, yeah, maybe 50.
I could consider going up to 42.
So could I, I don't.
So could I, okay, so that's two for status quo, five for considering 40%. And put it out there for public input.
But it seems kind of arbitrary.
Well, so is 20.
I mean, 20% is arbitrary, isn't it? Okay, what else do you need?
Anything, what else?
I guess I still heard some reservations about the office uses in residential zones. You might want to hear if what's proposed is supportable, or whether we should be looking at other options for that.
Okay.
To me, it's fairly supportable. I mean, it was 25% of the floor area could be office in a residential zone, that makes pretty good sense for somebody with a home office. I mean, that's not, I don't know, Erin, you know, in my, in my home, my home office is not 25% of the floor area, but, you know.
So, I mean, I do actually own office space in a residential zone in the Holiday neighborhood in RMX2, and we did like, or a little bit of, we put a new door in not that long ago, like, I don't know, we might actually have to have applied for a use review if this rule were in effect. So I do, I am personally involved here, but just to say that we might consider the same kind of a rule where things that are previously built could be non-conforming, could not be non-conforming.
That's a good idea.
And would that solve our problem? Because we do, yeah, we don't want huge conversions, but we also like, if people want to work, live in the same place, there's a lot of benefits to that from a climate and commuting standpoint, so. But I, yes, I'm not sure exactly where we draw the line.
Yeah, and just to clarify, my office space is like 700 square feet, it's really small, so people won't think I own a big office building.
Yeah, we were thinking that. Yes?
And then on RMX1, on the proposal to prohibit any future use reviews for office.
So it's Whittier. It's, yeah, I mean, I think I'm okay with that, there's already a fair bit of office in RMX1, just from previous conversions, so it's kind of ambivalent one way or the other.
Yeah, don't look at.
So an example of that is?
In Whittier?
In Whittier.
Yeah, so.
One of the big ones, like the.
No, there's no really big offices, there are homes that have been converted, or they've gone to hotels, or, you know, there are some office building buildings, you know, the square ones, not the old homes, so there's a mix of different things.
And, I'm sorry, and the proposal is to have no?
It would remove the use review option for that zone.
So it would allow more conversions?
No, no, it would prevent them. You couldn't do it at all.
Oh, you couldn't do it, oh, okay.
So, one of the planning board members said that taking away the use review is really taking away the ability for the public to comment, and have some input on these things that are happening, and particularly if it's in residential areas.
Well, if it's forbidden, there's no comment, so it would, it would no longer have use review on office conversions, right?
That's right.
That's the suggestion. So the suggestion is that homes not convert to office in RMX1. Is that, is that right?
And I would just, again, I'm fine with that, but allow the existing buildings to, you know, do a little tiny renovation, so.
So I think we'd like your, your prior to X date, then everything's by right, so we've got at least three, maybe four, that we want to use that on, right? There's L-17, there's offices in the business zone, there's residential units in BR zone, so all of those three, to use the trick of.
Not conforming, not, not.
Not, yeah, they're, they're not, non-conforming, right.
Well, can I just say, with respect to restaurants in industrial sites, and it's not one of these, and I'm going to assume that's going to be picked up in the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan?
It will be.
But I, this has been an issue ever since I first came on council, and restaurants were not allowed at all. And then they were allowed, but couldn't have any signage. And it just seems it's taken 24 years to get to where we are now. And I guess I would like to see the restaurants who are willing to work in those industrial zones, because I think it's a great contribution, to not have all these people driving all over the place. And if it requires a little bit of being on the main street, so that they can supplement their business, I think that's important. And you certainly see that in real communities, so, and I'm not saying we're not a real community, but I just would, that should be relaxed, and I'd really like.
But we're not doing.
I know, I said it's in the East Boulder.
And that's the sort of conversation that we can have. Next week is an update on the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, and so we can talk about that more next week, too.
Okay, is that good enough?
I think that helps us, we're going to have to kind of regroup, we're also going to need to look at calendar and capacity. We're also going to need to look at calendar and capacity, and so let us go do that work, and we'll bring forward some scheduling options to CAC on when we can bring this stuff forward.
Okay, well, that wasn't a heck no.
Actually, that was Chris's version of a heck no.
Are you kidding me?
Suzie, I don't know if we're going to date, but if we, if we are going to tackle AB, which I think could take about a minute, these are the right people to talk about it, so I just was going to swap.
You're trying to skip over...
No, I just was, wanted to flip this, this order, since these guys are on, well, the discussion about large, large lots. This is a procedural discussion.
So I think, well, you think it's just going to take a minute?
Yeah. I was just going to do a straw poll.
Okay, let's do that, because if we have to talk about it...
I don't want to talk about it, I just want to have a straw poll. We either do it now, or we do it on 17. If there's, if there's support to not do it now, then it'd be better to know that now.
Sure.
Okay, Lisa just left, though, and she has a strong opinion.
That's why we're not talking about it. We're just raising our fingers out.
Well...
I have to say a word or two.
Yeah, we can't, I mean, basically it...
Let's put it off, because we still have the reviews to do tonight as well.
Because I think, to just say, basically, the scheduling is to not schedule it this council and let it die, and that's a bigger deal.
Okay, we'll do it first reading, then. But let's just, let me suggest to CAC that you, you build a pause into that, because someone's going to pull it off consent, then, if you don't, so...
Yes. That's fair, that's totally fair. So, okay, evaluations. Oh, committee.
Okay, so I think the memo mostly speaks for itself. Lisa and I were the evaluation committee this year, and so we went through the normal process. We had a, a new consultant this year, so there were some bumps in the road at getting him aligned with what the previous consultant, Jay Butler, had did, so we moved on to the council evaluations. So you have all seen the evaluations, we sent them out to all of you. We did pretty much stick to the schedule that we had been on in previous years. And so the memo, you know, just to cut to the chase, it's the city manager and the city attorney get a two-and-a-half percent merit increase, and the municipal judge gets a 4% merit increase. That's our recommendation. And so we offer this to council as where we think we should go. Lisa, do you want to say something else?
Yeah, we will have a report from the subcommittee, that we will be recommending some changes in, in how we look at things, and I think all of you have been informed about that. So just to be sure, we're going to have a summary meeting, I think, with the consultant and the person from HR, I think it's October 3rd, but please look for a report from the subcommittee in terms of the process and how we go forward from here.
And I guess, I think we're just trying to capture it before we forget, but it will really be up to the next council to take those recommendations and act on them.
The process ones for the next evaluations?
Yes.
Excellent. We owe you both a debt of gratitude for doing the whole process, and you've been doing it for years.
Yeah, I think this is my 12th.
Wow, thank you, Lisa.
Somebody else is going to have to pick this up. Anyhow, I know it's a lot of work, and it's not easy work, so, thank you. Anything else, or should we have a motion? Go ahead.
I could do a motion, that I move that we approve the 2019 performance evaluations and salary adjustments for our city manager, city attorney, and municipal judge.
Second?
If I can say, we are incredibly fortunate to have such extremely skilled staff members here, and thank you for the way that you lead the city organizations in your respective areas. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, and I want to say, thanks for all your hard work. I know that, you know, it's not without controversy, and the community appreciates it, whether they know they do or not, because the management of the staff is such an important thing, and so thank you for the hard work and the time you put in, and let's keep moving forward.
Here, here.
Can I say, thank you, it's a pleasure to work here. I love, as you, most of you know, I love my job. It's an honor and a privilege to work for this community, so thank you very much, and thank you for approving a raise. That's very nice. Thanks.
I agree with that completely. Public service is the highest calling, I believe, and in Boulder, it is especially important that we serve our community well, and the opportunity to do that is something I never thought I'd have in my life, and I'm just so, so appreciative of it. And I love this community, and it's been a pleasure to work with this council, so thanks.
Okay.
No one has signed up to speak?
Okay.
Show of hands, though.
Show of hands. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, one in opposition? Okay, I know you really wanted to have that discussion. Are you okay?
I'm just trying to be efficient.
Okay. I think, I think we've done a fair amount of work tonight.
I think it's going to be a half hour.
So, anything about process that we need to debrief? All right. Two more months, we got a lot to do. How are you holding up?